Good morning, want to call into session the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors meeting for September 6th, 2017. And today's focus will be primarily on budget. We do have a couple other items that are related on the agenda. One it is and one it's kind of separate. We'll get to those in a moment, but want to again thank all those who've joined with us. I know we'll have additional folks as we get into the hearing later this morning, I trust we'll have some other speakers. And we have a number of you who've signed up, so can thank you for being here. We'll have some presentations, and so we won't be getting to the speakers immediately, but we will certainly before the session closes sometime today. So with that flow, I'd ask you please to make some announcements, call the roll to establish a quorum, and we'll get started here.
Okay, good morning. Supervisor Serna, Kennedy, Peters, Frost, Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Great.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, September 8th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices.
Great, thanks for making those announcements. And once again, if you do wish to address the board this morning on any items on the agenda or not on the agenda, I'd ask that you please fill out a speaker request form so we can call upon you when those items come forward. So with that, Mr. Ferguson, would you lead us in the pledge allegiance this morning, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Britt. Again, welcome to all who've joined us. I know we have a full agenda planned here and want to, in just a moment, turn it over to Nav, our county executive, to begin the presentation. We do have a sub-agenda, and I don't know if you may want to run through that as well to Nav when you get started, but the compilation of today's information is a follow-on to our June budget hearings. At the time, we had the approved budget, and obviously we're now moving towards budget adoption and truing up a number of the funds and obviously addressing a number of requests and items that were carried over from June. So with that, then unless there's any questions by my colleagues, we'll turn it over to Mr. Gail, Mr. Ferguson, for some opening comments and talk about the sub-agenda and kind of what the plans are for the order of presentations this morning now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. First item we're going to ask you is item number two on your agenda, which is adopt the IHSS budget. And once you do that, and Rick's promised me that he's going to break his record, it's going to be less than a minute. Second item, then, is our county budget. And what we're going to do is have county exec budget recommendation on what we have for you in front of you for September. One of the requests we have is when we're going to start that item, is that we're going to go a little bit out of order from our presentation, is that we're going to spotlight a couple of items out of the Sheriff's Department. And because they have funeral arrangements to make with the tragedy that they have, they requested for take that item up front. I talked to the chair, we're going to honor that request. That way they can get back to the planning that they need to do. Then we're going to present you the rest of the budget, what our recommendation is. We have two departmental presentations, Health and Human Services, Sherry Heller's going to be presenting that. Then we have Paul and Cindy Kavanaugh going to do the homelessness initiatives. And those are two formal presentations we have. If there's any other questions you have for departments, they're available. And after that, any public comments, and then board deliberation.
Okay, thanks, Deb. Couple of questions related to the order of items, and we do have one other agenda item, item one on there. Do we want to take that item?
We should, you're right, I'd skip.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, number one first, yeah.
Get to that in a moment. And we also have a closed session item that relates to some of the budget recommendations today, so is there any need to have that closed session prior to any final deliberation of the budget, Robin? And if so, then we'll make sure we plan accordingly for that, so.
I don't believe so.
I don't believe so, no. We've coordinated that.
Okay, all right, I just want to be sure, because again, I know some of that's built into obviously what Dr. Heller will be talking about in her recommendation as well.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, well, very good, then. So Rick, you'll stand by just for a second. Let's go ahead and call item number one.
Item number one is approve Phase Two of the restoration of priority freshwater wetlands for endangered species at Consumnis River Preserve, authorize Regional Parks Director to accept Delta Conservancy Proposition One grant, and California Department of Fish and Wildlife's environmental enhancement funding.
Okay, any presentation on this, Mr. Leatherman or Ms. Masaga? Okay, I do have a question, though, so Jeff, you might want to come forward very quickly.
This is a project, obviously, the board's been made aware of, and it's been budgeted for. It's a grant proposal. The question I have as it relates to the restoration of the wetlands is, it's talked about in the staff report, that their Fish and Wildlife Service has no current plans for introducing endangered or threatened species, but that there might be, is suggesting that that could be a possibility in the future. My question is, particularly when we have farming both upstream and downstream of the area, and if you introduce species, oftentimes there are concerns by adjacent landowners and farmers that, with incidental takes potentially, and, you know, irrigation activities for those that are farming or ranching near the preserve, that's not a part of what's before us. But would that require a separate environmental review if the Fish and Wildlife Service were to come at a future date and wanting, for example, use, introduce the giant garter snake into the habitat area there if it didn't naturally occur? Would that require, and then would that require some agreement by this board? Or do they get the entree by virtue of what we do here today, that they go ahead and just do that anyway?
Sure, and yes, you are correct that this project does not anticipate the actual placement of giant garter snakes in the restoration area. It is just a restoration project. And I'll just look over my shoulder to Amber, but I do believe that there is a separate process that is required in introducing giant garter snakes into this area if it was done intentionally, so yes, I'm doing the nod, so.
Okay, because I would just suggest that we do have active farming operations, we have a couple of dairies that are in adjacent areas and so forth that obviously are pretty intense agricultural pursuits. And Horseshoe Lake obviously has existed for some time. I just, again, if we're going to introduce a species that may have naturally occurred there, but, you know, may not be present, I think the survey didn't show it being present here recently, that there be, I want to be assured there's going to be notice to adjacent landowners of that, and that we could have a discussion about safe harbor agreements or whatever might be entailed in that in the event that that was planned by the Fish and Wildlife Service. Because this is state-owned lands, but the county is managing the project, is that correct?
And portion of this is also county-owned land as well.
Portion, a portion of the preserve.
That is correct. And so, you know, that is, our involvement with the Consumnis River Preserve is that connection to our local community, and any activity that would be happening in and around the properties, we would be coordinating that outreach to our local landowners.
Okay, all right, very good. Thanks, Jeff. Okay, did anybody sign up on item one? Does anyone here wish to address item number one on the consent calendar? All right, seen, none, then, thank you, Jeff. Thanks, Amber. All right, I would move the item.
Second.
Move the second, and please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, item number two. Want to call that?
Okay, so your next item is the in-home supportive services public authority. That's what you're acting as, and this is to adopt their fiscal year 2017-18 final budget.
All right, Mr. Simonson, you already set the record, so I don't know how you get any shorter than what you did the last time in June, but nonetheless, Rick, good morning.
See what I can do. Good morning. My name is Rick Simonson from the IHSS Public Authority. The budget before you of $1,776,000 is really unchanged from the budget that was adopted in June, so I simply ask that you approve that. 12 seconds.
Okay. All right, Rick, thank you. Well, stand by, we do have a speaker on this, so, any questions by board members? All right, if not, we'll hold on to time. So I have, is it Brayden Morris or Mori?
Yeah.
Okay, do you want to come forward on this, Brayden? We can, okay. Good morning, Brayden.
Hello, sorry, I was a little bit confused when I came in. The IHSS is number two, but then also the budget, and I wasn't expecting to speak so soon. Anyways, I am a recipient of IHSS benefits. My wife is my IHSS caretaker. My wife quit her career to be my caretaker, which I'm really grateful for, and a lot of people are lucky to have people taking care of them. The problem is $10.80 an hour is what IHSS workers are getting paid. And so that's not nearly enough, obviously, in my opinion. And places like in Oregon, people make $14 an hour, and they have paid vacation, and what that allows people to do is not be on food stamps, you know, not have to collect those Section 8 vouchers. And while people maybe cannot get on board with a $15 minimum wage for jobs like McDonald's and such, I maybe can understand that. These are caretakers. My wife, I'm not like trying to get my wife a raise, it's just this, this is the story that's personal to me. She's the one who gets me out of bed every morning. She's the one who puts me in the shower after I get out of bed. She takes me to the bathroom. She prepares my breakfast, and then takes me to the meetings that I want to go to, and then puts, makes my dinner, and then puts me back in the shower, and takes me to the bathroom again. So it is just so insulting that the wage for this kind of work is $10.80. Now, I'm lucky, I have a lot of support from my parents. I've had some success in other areas, so my wife and I are able to, you know, get by on that. But I know a lot of people who are in poverty and could get out of poverty if they weren't a caretaker, who have college degrees that they could use if they wanted to leave being a caretaker. But they don't do that, because they want to continue to care for their family. And so IHSS is something that needs to give everything that it possibly can get in the budget. If we were able to spend $5 million to tear down homeless camps and just move that to the city, if that's a priority that can be made, I think a huge priority needs to be made for IHSS workers. And I also understand, a lot of it's mandated by the state, you potentially having to pay more than you ever had to before. But anything that you can do to support IHSS workers more, hold a big press conference saying, "The county is so frustrated at their limited funds, that it's 30 cents above minimum wage that people are getting to change diapers, to put people in the shower." And sometimes there's this conservative thing, "Oh, if you want to make more money, then become a nurse, become a doctor, make more money, go to school." That's not the situation. If my wife was to become a nurse to make more money, then I'd be getting taken care of by a stranger. And people want to get taken care of by their loved ones and people they know and trust. So asking those people to get educated and become official nurses or become a doctor, that's not the answer. People need to be rewarded for the work that they're doing, taking care of disabled people and elderly people. It's a very important, very meaningful job. And this, this county should set a precedence. Press releases should be going up all the time, how much you guys are appalled at, how low that wage is, and just standing up and fighting for people. And like I mentioned before, it's not only giving the caretakers more money. It would allow them to get off of food stamps, it would allow them to be less reliant on Section 8, much less likely to become homeless. There's many, many, many reasons why this is a huge neglected area. And I just ask this county not only to give as much as it can in the budget, but to stand up, to have a press conference, to say it's a polling that it's 30 cents above minimum wage. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Brayden. Thank you for being here, you and your wife both, and for offering your comments you did, and we'll certainly take those into account, so, thanks, Brayden. Okay, Rick, anything else? And maybe a clarification, too, the budget that we're approving actually is for the county portion of the authority, but not, not the compensation for the workers as Brayden had pointed out.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's what I was confused on, that's why I was in Brayden.
Okay, okay, thanks, Brayden. Okay, very good. All right, okay, is it, I had no one else? Anybody else wish to speak to the IHHS Public Authority budget this morning? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion on this.
You have it.
Okay, moved and seconded. Chair with second to approve this budget unit, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, and Mr. Gail, before you jump in, we have one off-agenda, and rather than have them all day here, I'm familiar with the issue, so I'm going to go ahead and, and Alice, you're here in the audience, if you want to come forward, so make good use of folks' time, recognize it's not on the agenda, and this relates to park development in the district I represent. So Alice, we'll give you three minutes on this, and appreciate you being here. That way, you're welcome to sit through the entirety of it. I know you've been to these hearings before, but I was going to shortcut that a bit, so.
I really appreciate that. My name is Alice RC. I live in Vineyard. I've been there several years now in the senior housing gated community. And we have an online network, Nextdoor.com, so we speak, there's like 800 neighbors. The issue is, what happened to the park that all of us were promised in our area? And why is it taking like five years? They're building hundreds of homes, they're not having any trouble getting that done, they've even graded before the rain came, and yet we're being told that we're not sure that they can grade the area even before the end of this year. I've also been told that some of the responsibility has sort of been delegated to Lennar, the developer. I don't know if it was to contract on the environmental impact report, or if it had to do with, you know, going out to bid on the grading. Whatever it is, they're not doing their job. And since really ultimately it is you who oversee it, here we are, some of the neighbors are really upset. They really want to get unified, they want to get big about it, they want to get real public about it. I think coming here and giving it to you and trying to get an answer is the best place to begin. So here I am, I'm speaking for lots of other people, and hopefully you can tell us what's happening. We really want to demand that they at least grade by the end of the year, or stop building all those houses.
Okay.
They're able to grade for them, so we figure that they can do it for the park, and we're paying taxes for it. We really would like one to use. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Alice. And along with Alice, we have Mr. Singh, our agenda.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to talk about the same issue that Alice talked about. I live in the same community. She live in Destination, I live in the houses, regular homes. I purchased my home back in 2012, and at the same time, you know, we were promised that there's going to be parks shortly, you know, built very soon, and also a school right next to it. So, you know, my, that was a good thing, because I have, I had a daughter at that time, you know, three years old, and now she's going to be eight years old, end of this year. And I, my son was not even born at that time, and now he's going to be five years old, you know? So it's been a long time, and we are really frustrated, you know, with the development that's going on, and, you know, in the beginning, we were, you know, very happy when, you know, next year, around 2013, the local park district, they contacted the homeowners, and, you know, we had a meeting to discuss the park plan and stuff. So we thought the things are going by the plan, you know, so it's going to be soon until, you know, and they told us on that meeting that, you know, in 2014, they're going to get all the paperwork done, so in 2015, you know, they can start building the park. So 2014 came and went, and then 2015 came and went, then 2016 came and went, now 2017 is almost over. And now, you know, I've been in contact with them, I also went to Lennar, you know, very frustrated, you know, they, sometimes they blame it on you guys for not giving them permits and stuff. Sometimes they say, "Oh, we're not even responsible," and stuff. So, you know, a lot of people, they want to, you know, start picketing or, you know, protesting or stuff. So we want to get the information to you guys, see what's going on, and why it's taking so long. You know, my daughter, she's eight years, she's going to be eight years old, so she's not going to be wanting to go to the park anymore very soon. So, you know, it doesn't, you know, work anything for me, then, even if it builds like five years from now or something, you know, so we want you to guys to, you know, look into that.
Well, thank you. I know that, you know, folks have certainly called my office, and I'll just be real brief here, but thank you and Alice both for being here this morning. I know I've spoken with, or my assistant's spoken with Bob Davidson in Infrastructure Finance, also Southgate Parks. We've been in contact with Ward Winchell, the manager there, and, and again, I've been to community meetings, and either one of you may have attended those in the past, and I've heard the same thing, that it's kind of, you know, delivery was delayed, but it's certainly the property's available, done a park design, and so why don't we do this? I've got both of your sign-in sheets, I know others have called my office, and why don't we get together with Mr. Winchell and Mr. Davidson, and we can either do a community meeting or communicate through the two of you, and we've had a couple others have called my office as well. And I know it's frustrating, if they can get the grading done, then at least they could be prepared to, you know, work throughout the winter time, assuming that everything else was in place. So we got calls last week, and I haven't had a chance yet to, you know, get briefed on exactly what the status is, but I know that people are frustrated. I've heard from the two of you today, but also from others. So let us, let us keep working on it, and we'll, I don't have phone numbers, you don't need to give them over to the speaker, but if you can give the clerk your number, that way we can, we can follow up. Flo, could you take these? And then maybe get, have them get Alice and Mr. Singh's phone numbers, and then we can follow up with them, so.
Thank you, thanks, sir.
Good, thank you very much. Thank you for being here, so. Okay, that was communications, and so with that, Mr. Gail, we will go into the budget presentation, so.
As I indicated on the onset, we're going to start off with the sheriff's item. Britt's going to spotlight a couple of items that are included in the budget, and sheriff's staff, including the under sheriff, are here to answer any questions.
Okay, very good. Good morning, Britt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Britt Ferguson, the county's chief fiscal officer. As Mr. Gail indicated, I will just highlight a couple of sheriff's growth issues that are in the budget at this point. One, obviously, the sheriff has a share of the parkways and unincorporated area cleanup and safety initiative, which your board already endorsed on April, excuse me, on August 23rd. And in addition to that, there is a growth request for a two-year pilot project for focusing on high gunshot areas in the county where there's a large number of gunshots that occur and that are often not reported. This would involve a new technology, or not so new technology, but new technology to the sheriff, that would allow them to triangulate within a three-mile area, a three-square-mile area where those shots occurred. And it also includes an additional four staff, four deputy sheriffs, that would be able to respond immediately to those shots. The idea would be to identify and stop and arrest those people who are, who are, who are using those weapons before they actually shoot somebody, or if they shoot somebody immediately afterwards. So again, it would focus on those areas of the county. It's movable in terms of location, but would focus on those areas of the counties where there are these high gunshot activity. The other area is in a, in a group of technology improvements that we've identified, there is a proposal to replace the current jail case management system for incorrektional health. That system basically will, will no longer be supported. It's about 10 years old. It will no longer be supported after March 31st of 2018. Of course, that's a critical system, as are many of the systems that we've identified, because it's in essentially a, like a hospital facility essentially, and so it's important that that case management system be supported. So those are the, those are really the only growth issues that are identified for the Sheriff's Department in, in the, in the, in the budget recommended for adoption.
Could I ask, Britt and many of others, were the two requests under Sheriff's Department, were they included in the June budget requests?
The, they were included in, they were included in the June budget request.
They were.
They were in the request, they were not funded, yes.
And so why, why, let me go back to the jail data system. If that's so critical, we're going to lose it March 18th of next year, or March of 18, excuse me, then why wouldn't it have been funded in the June budget? If it's that critical?
In June, we only had limited resources, and we were, at that time, it was a request for over, to fund it all at once, rather, this is $150,000, it's part of a three-year lease purchase, basically. We were looking at the full amount, and we were, at the time, the Sheriff's Office was looking at for ways to pay for it over time, and we hoped that that would be, they would be able to accomplish that, and in fact, they were, did find a way to do that. So we were waiting to see if they could work that out, and they did.
Okay. Then one other question, just on the shot spotter. Certainly am familiar, at least generally, with the technology and, you know, how it's being utilized in other jurisdictions, but I don't recall that having any presentation to the board regarding that, and whether it's in this geographic area or other areas of the county. And I guess the question that I have goes to that if it's instituted in a particular area of the county, can you build upon it without having to add more personnel? Or do you have to have folks that monitor, you know, complimentary to the folks that are then in the field? And if so, in order to build on this, if we have other areas in the county where you may have less prevalence of shooting, but you have, you know, same legitimate safety concerns about this? Because again, there was no detailed presentation behind this. I don't know that anybody in the Sheriff's Department's spoken to, at least to this member of the board, and again, I'm not unsupportive of, but I just want to, again, it seemed to me that, again, recognizing there, you know, there's areas in the county where there's a higher prevalence of shooting, and we're trying to counteract that and make it safer. I guess I didn't see it in the, in the June schedule either, or certainly wasn't highlighted, so I guess.
It was not funded, so it was not highlighted, but it was a request.
Surprised, Natoli, in the June budget, that was one of the, if you want, under the unfunded.
Carryovers, the carryovers.
Yeah, we did mention that if we had additional funds come available, that that was an area that we're going to be looking at, based on some of the crime and some of the stuff that we're starting to see in the unincorporated. So that was the presentation. When the sheriff brought this issue up, he, we've been in dialogue for a couple of months, particularly in District One, there's issues we've had in District Two, and I know District Three's had some issues. So that's the thought process behind it, is to pilot it for two years, see if this is effective, which we hope it will be, and then we'll look at expanding and changing the technology. And I think Eric's here that if you need more detailed answers on how it works, he can answer that.
Yeah, I guess it was just to expand, and I was Supervisor Serna's punched up as well. Obviously, it's an area that he's, you know, most of it, Supervisor Kennedy's punched up as well. But I just, I guess I'm curious, so you can build upon it fairly easily, or does it require additional staffing?
It is movable. It is movable.
It's movable.
But there are certain staff that are required to support it, and I think Under Sheriff Manis and Chief Relji can, can, can address that issue.
Okay. And then I'll go to Supervisor Serna and Kennedy. I just, again, maybe you can just touch on that as to, you're going to, you're going to build a foundational system here that then can be moved or expanded? Again, I'll just say, nobody's briefed me on this, and maybe everybody else has been briefed on this, but I'm familiar with the technology, how it works, but.
It can be. Shot spotters and other agencies, referring to Sacramento Police Department, typically in a three-square-mile area, it's a four-position type to keep those officers free to respond to strictly those shots fired type calls. So it could be expanded upon if we chose what we're currently looking at, which is our Zone 6-1, District One, District Two, supervisors mainly. But if we expand it on that area, you could simply add some personnel, maybe not four, but maybe one or two as you continually expand in that area. If you completely abandoned that area and kept that area down where we are, and go up somewhere else in North Highlands or wherever it may be, and break that off in a separate area, that would require a three-square mile, was what they do for a minimum, and another four positions to effectively support that.
So if you wanted to do it in District Three, Four, or Five, you'd have to, you know, basically replicate what we're starting here.
That's correct. That's currently what Sacramento Police Department does, and they're having great success with that, too.
And is the, is the million dollar, is that over two years, spread out two years, or is a million dollars, $1,100,000 each year?
Million a year.
Okay, and so.
For a total of $2 million over two years.
Last question, then, if we fund this, how soon would it be up in operational? You'd be have the staff behind it, and you have to then deploy the technology, so, I mean, is this going to be done by the end of the calendar year, or is it going to be done, I mean, how quickly? Can you bring it up, Eric?
As far as the staffing component, we can implement that fairly quickly. I wasn't in the meeting most recently as far as the technology implementation.
Yeah, the shot spotter technology, from the date the contract's signed, they estimate it takes 60 to 90 days.
Okay, so we could budget appropriately around that, a portion of that for this year?
No, we budget the full amount.
I know.
That way, we, for next year, we don't get into the situation that we got to make up the gap in the, in the funding.
Okay, so we're, we're two months into the fiscal year, we're at least two months months out from the contract being, so we're four months into the year minimum. But you budget for the full amount, so you already have savings accrue, correctly?
Correct.
Okay. All right. That's all questions I had. Mr. Serna, stand by. Mr. Serna, Mr. Kennedy, Ms. Peters.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as, has been referenced a few times in terms of the circumstance in Districts One and Two, unfortunately, we have seen a number of homicides in recent months and years. I can tell you that in District One, in the South Oak Park, Fruit Ridge Pocket area, which is about a square mile of unincorporated area that's surrounded on three sides by the city of incorporated limits of the city of Sacramento, we've actually had, I believe, four homicides within about 700 feet of each other, less than an eighth of a mile from the city border. So there's been some reference to the triangulation in a, a three-mile geography. My question is, given the, given the nature of the boundaries in that part of the county and the part of the district I represent, to what extent have we exhausted conversations with the city of Sacramento, given the fact that in that circumstance, there'd be quite a bit of overlap in the city of Sacramento that is benefit to the city of Sacramento? How sharp are our pencils on the million dollars, given the fact that there would be some benefit to the city? And I know that there's some interest in the city as well to, to advance the technology and, and put it into practice there.
You are correct. We've had, I've been in talks with the Sacramento Police Department and ShotSpotter in joint meetings. Currently, Sacramento Police Department is at looking at almost surrounding the Zone One area and going off. I actually have a map I could put up and show you if you'd like. The area that they're proposing, they're looking at about a four-square-mile thing is what they're looking to do, surrounding us and the county. So we'll be bordered on all sides of pretty much 6-1 and 6-2 of our zones up there. But I do have a map I could show you and kind of outlines the areas if you'd like to see it.
It's okay for tonight's, or today's purposes, unless there's other interest by other board members that want to see the map.
I'd like to see the map.
Sure. While you're doing that, though, I guess, I mean, from what I've, I have been briefed somewhat on the technology, and my understanding is that the, the principal cost involved, it sounds like it's the personnel, the, the staffing that has to come along with it. So I guess the question for me is, and I, maybe it was asked a different way by the Chair just a minute ago, but if it's movable and there's, as you can see from the map, the red being the, does, parts of District One to the north and District Two to the south of Fruit Ridge there that would be affected, and also where you'd have some overlap with the city. If the principal cost is the staffing, is there some economy of scale to it at some point where we, we don't have to necessarily incur such a great cost with the initial application? And can, for instance, can the city of Sacramento have their police officers sharing the monitoring and somehow keep the cost minimal for the county?
We, we did explore those options and talked about it, but Sacramento Police Department, as well as the Sheriff's Department, didn't feel the resources would be appropriate because we could be spending that entire evening up in the city and then having our people away from where we actually need to be in the county, and vice versa. The city could be into our county area and not responding to something that they have a team dedicated to respond to in the city.
Is this map showing the, the, the overlap with parts of the city from what we would deploy, or from what they would deploy?
So, so the blue is what SPD is pretty much committed to, and the green is their expansion area, which they are going to go for. And I think that green and blue combined is about 4.2 miles, I believe. So that is what they are asking for, and you can see that borders us very well in the, in the pockets there. And it's their areas up in that particular geographical location that are some of their problem areas also.
What we don't see is the purple, meaning if you look at the overlap of the blue and the red in both Districts One and Two, that's what's kind of of interest to, to me, is understanding if, let's say we weren't going to do ShotSpotter at all, and the city was going to do it on their own, would, would, based on the fact that you can't customize the geography around odd political boundaries like this, I assume we're getting some benefit too when they deploy it.
That is absolutely correct. So it gives a much more, better triangulation, and we would get, they don't guarantee it, but we would get some so-called hits in the, like, blue areas of SPD, even though if we were the only people contracting, but they don't guarantee the accuracy or anything like that. But in the red area, if it was just us, they do guarantee that we would get those. But there is a direct benefit of those two teams working together. They are solely dedicated. We're proposing solely dedicating it, too. So I see that team working very well together as far as collecting casings, analysis of casings, that type of thing. We both utilize what we call NiBINS, which is a ballistic type thing SPD does, as long as us. So I think we're talking about trying to merge that portion of the intelligence together also. So.
And the, the initial deployment for us would be three deputies to monitor the technology?
It's four deputies.
Four. And would Sac, Sac City have the same?
That is correct. And that's a seven-day, seven-day week coverage.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Less questions, more comments. I, I was briefed by the sheriff back in June, as well as I believe the under Sheriff was in that meeting. And I've been briefed by the county Executive's Office on this. I've also had the opportunity to meet with the, with city staff and have been, and as well as the council member who represents a large portion of that area. And at first, I have to admit, when I looked at the price tag, I was, you know, I had a little sticker shock. But the more that I've looked into this, and the more that I've had the opportunity to talk to City of Sacramento where it's been in place, the more I've seen the data that shows, I mean, we're, it's taking guns off the street, illegal guns off the street. You know, it, it really is showing some great potential, even with the small area that they've been deployed in. They've also committed to having the chief of police, you know, reach out and work with the sheriff and, and the Sheriff's Department to see where we can take advantage of economies of scale and efficiencies, and how we can make sure that we're doing this in a way that makes the most sense. So I'm, I'm confident that, you know, a pilot program is well worth it. We need help down here. I know Supervisor Peters, you've seen a lot of this, a similar thing. And I just think it's a, it's an opportunity for us to take advantage of the fact, this map, thank you for showing it. I said I didn't want to see it, but it's actually quite helpful, to take advantage of the fact that we've got this large area that will be completely covered by this technology. So thank you, gentlemen, for bringing it forward.
Good. All right, Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. I, thank you for that comment, Patrick. I, you're emphasizing District One and Two, but Three, while not to the extent of the others, has a, a lot of problem with this in North Highlands or north of the freeway area, which I first became aware of at community meetings and talking to people who said they lay in bed at night hearing bullets whistle over their fence, you know, instead of crickets, right? And so they're very worried about the stray gunfire, and they certainly have their share of murders. So at, at that time, I talked to pop staff, and they talked about this program. So I'm, I'm definitely in favor of a pilot program on this and that it be able to move around as described. I, I think it's a great way to take guns off the street and, you know, maybe encourage some different kind of behavior. So I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, Sheriff's representatives on any of the budget items? Okay. Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Under Sheriff.
Thank you very much.
For being here.
So, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'll begin by just reminding the board and really more the, the, the audience that the focus of the budget hearings here in September are really the changes from the approved budget that your board approved back in June and provided appropriation authority, really, for the first three months of the fiscal year. So focus here and most of the discussion that I will be providing relate to changes from the June approved budget. So. So to begin with then, the all-funds budget, as, as recommended for adoption, is 4.12 billion dollars, and that includes $5.8 million in supplemental appropriations for the parkways and unincorporated area cleanup and safety initiative that was approved by your board on August 23rd. That total amount is a $98.2 million, or 2.4% increase from the approved budget, and that's the net result of increases and decreases in a number of funds, mainly a $70.5 million increase in special revenue, enterprise and internal service fund appropriations, and that includes over $35 million related to the rebudgeting of capital and other project costs based on changes in project timing or costs, which we often refer to as encumbrance adjustments. The funds with the greatest increases include the transportation fund, about $17.8 million, airport system, about $13.8 million, water resources, about $10.4 million, and capital projects, about $9.5 million. Again, that's almost all mostly capital project related. General fund, $27.7 million, or 1.1% increase in general fund appropriations. Total general fund budget, $2.46 million. And again, that includes $3.5 million in supplemental appropriations for the parkways and unincorporated area cleanup and safety initiative. Talking about general fund resources, general fund revenue, an increase of $32.9 million, and that's really comprised of these things. A $6.5 million increase in fund balance carryforward, which brings the total fund balance available to about $46.5 million. And just for point of reference, that's about a million dollars less than the 2016-17 actual ending balance. So that's the actual and audited ending balance from 1617. $500,000 from the release of TETER reserves. There's less set aside for the TETER plan. An additional $4.8 million in discretionary revenue, and that's due to a number of factors, net factors, including the receipt of $2.9 million in revenue from the sale of 17 acres of land at the former Mather Air Force Base, and that's on our, on the PowerPoint here to talk about in more detail later. An additional $2.57 million in secured and VLF and new property tax. That's based on the July assessed roll, which with that, the total increase in assessed, in secured and VLF property tax, which is our main source of discretionary revenue, is a 6.6% increase from 1617 actual. An $877,000 increase in utility user tax revenue, an $800,000 increase in SWA reimbursements, and that's pretty much a one-time allocation and scheduled to be approved by the SWA Board, and that reflects somewhat higher collections, but, but also significantly delays in the implementation of certain projects that had been approved by the SWA Board in 1617, but ended up not, not getting, going forward as the anticipated schedule. And then that's partly offset by a $2.1 million reduction in supplemental property tax revenue, and that's due to changes in apportionment factor based on a state audit, as well as a court case down in LA County that changed the way that supplemental property taxes were allocated. But even with that, our revenue estimate for six, for 1718 from supplemental property taxes is still about 12% higher than the 1617 actual revenue from that source. And then a $21.1 million increase in federal, state, and other revenue, and that includes about $3.37 million in additional realignment revenue. And then other state revenue includes funding to cover the cost of Cow Works costs and foster care wraparound costs, foster care Title IV E non-waiver revenue, variety of other federal and state revenues. Oops. Wrong one. Okay. So the allocation of the general fund, this is essentially, where does, where does, where does this additional money go? So we've got a total discretionary revenue, fund balance, carryforward of about 11.8 mil, about $11.8 million. And where does that go? That discretionary revenue goes $5.1 million to general reserves. About $4.6 million of that is, in accordance with your board's policy of setting aside 10% of the available balance into general reserves each year. And another 453,000 is basically the fact that you, we canceled TETER reserves because we no longer need it, and your policy calls for placing any unneeded reserves that are canceled also into general reserves. With these adjustments, the general reserve level will stand at $13.6 million. We've set aside, proposed to set aside $3 million, add $3 million to the general fund contingency, bringing that to $4.96 million. This is to cover what we anticipate will be some possibly fairly significant cost increases in some programs that aren't finalized yet, but are reasonably likely to happen. So we propose that increase in the contingency. There's also a $4.6 million reduction in the base net county cost, and that's due primarily to the receipt of additional revenue, realignment revenue, certain other revenue, as well as a, as a, as a reduction in the foster care and general assistance caseloads that were, that we've revised our caseload estimate since we did the June budget. And then there's a $300,000 decrease in discretionary reimbursement, in discretionary reimbursements. That's TETER reimbursement.
Brett, could you give, what are the specifics behind the reduced caseloads then? What are, or is Dr. Heller going to cover those? What are the specifics behind? So what, what's the change from June to?
I think, I think Mr. Light can address that.
Yeah, Supervisor Natale, we took a look at the trends that we've been seeing in our foster care caseloads in the past six to 12 months, and we determined that, we're assuming those trends are going to continue, and so they're lower than what we had budgeted in June. So our Title IV waiver efforts are paying off. A number of the other efforts we've been making for continuum of care reform to, to get the kids out of the system have been effective. So our caseloads are going down a little faster than we'd anticipated.
Okay, so, but, but do you have numbers you could put to those? So is it going from 2,400 to 2,200, or is it from 3,000 to 2,500? What is the?
We, we can provide that to you. We'll get that.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
So with all that is taken into account, that leaves $8.6 million in discretionary resources available to fund net county cost growth. So turning now to realignment, we have revised our estimate of, as you know, realignment revenue comes into realignment trust funds, and then it's transferred to the various programs based on the amount we've allocated, assuming the amount comes in that we anticipated. And then there's potentially money available at the end of the year. And there was money, additional money available at the end of this year. That's a carryover balance of an, not additional revenue. Revenue is actually down, we estimate, from what we originally estimated in June, but additional carryforward balance, which is sort of one-time resources of about $8.7 million. And we have proposed to do, take 3.4 million of that to help adjust, increase base costs, which are occurring in realigned programs. And then we've proposed to retain $5.3 million in the realignment trust fund contingencies, and I'll address that in more detail later on in the, in the presentation. But it's primarily in social services, and it's for the, the IHSS MOE potential increases. Then other state and federal revenue, an increase of $17.7 million. $14.2 million of that will deal with base cost increases. And then $3.5 million is used to fund program growth. One example of that is we got a, Health and Human Services got a grant for additional tobacco education activities. That was about $1.4 million, and there were some other funding for that. So that's, that $3.5 million.
Brett, when you say adjustment to base, explain. So is that additional labor costs? Is it, what, what is the adjustment to base? That's...
So it can be a variety of things. It can depend on the department. Sometimes it goes up, sometimes it go down. There may be other revenues that allow, allow it to go down. But it could be, a, a good example is in aid payments, where if our caseloads go up rather than down, which they did in some cases, if our costs go up, as they have, for example, we know that the costs for a continuum of care reform, there's going to be rate increases. So those would be adjustments to base. So it would be encumbrance carryforwards, or contracts, we thought were going to be spent in one year, but weren't, and we have to re-car, re-carry that forward. Those would be adjustments to base.
Okay. Thanks.
So this is essentially the growth that is proposed now in September in the, in the budget recommended for adoption. And it's a total of $12.1 million. That's funded by the $8.6 million in discretionary revenues that, that I spoke about earlier. It's funded by the $3.3 million in state, federal revenue in health and, health and social services programs. And then there's other revenue, minor amounts of other revenue, about $200,000, which gets us to the $12.1 million. All told, 44 new positions are, are proposed as part of growth requests. 37 in the general fund, seven in other, in other funds. Almost all of those positions are related to the parkways and unincorporated area cleanup program, but there are some other positions as well, as you heard about with the ShotSpotter, for General fund growth, you can see the total cost of the, of the programs being recommended are $14.8 million, but because of reimbursements and funding some through salary savings and other factors, the actual appropriation increase is the 12, is the $12 million that I spoke about, and again, $8.5 million in net county cost. And then these, there's, there's growth requests in a variety of departments that are listed there and are, are laid out in the budget. But really, I think we see these in four major areas for, for the September request. The first is, of course, the parkways and unincorporated areas cleanup and The first is, of course, the parkways and unincorporated areas cleanup and safety initiative. That's $5.7 million, 3.5 million net county cost. Your board is already approved participating in that. The other, we've grouped together about $3.6 million in issues related to foster care, continuum of care reform, children's receiving home issues. That's 2.1 million net county cost. This is to address some critical issues that are occurring out at the children's receiving home, as well as obligations we have to deal with foster care, continuum of care reform, and Dr. Heller will be addressing this in more detail in her presentation. The other is the high gunshot area Shot Spotter program that you've already discussed with the sheriff. And then finally, some critical technology needs, one of which we've already discussed, the correctional health case management system, but we've got about 1.7 million, 1.1 million net county cost, really in, in a number of systems that really are sort of too important to fail, I guess, to borrow, to borrow a term. We've got the correctional health issue. We've got issues with the assessor. They have a, a critical portion of their system that links the assessment system to the property tax billing system that is basically reaching the end of its useful life, and so funding for that is provided there. There's upgrades to the, the system that is used by child protective services that basically is also no longer going to be supported, and basically, the State Department of Social Services has told us we need to put in place this new system. And so that's the other sort of grouping, large grouping of recommendations. So I mentioned the realignment contingency. So we have, we have proposed to retain $5.3 million in the realignment trust funds, and these are estimates. Of course, it's based, we don't know exactly how much we're going to get, but based on what we now estimate, we have carrying over and what we, what we anticipate getting, $5.3 million. $132,000 in protective services, that's sort of left over after we funded some of the critical issues in continuum of care costs, cost increases. But we're saving that. It's one-time revenue because it's basically carryover, and we know there will be significant future continuum of care costs. And again, Dr. Heller may be, I'm sure, talking about that. So that's another reason why we think anything we can save and help fund those, those costs will be beneficial. Public health, we have 745,000 left over. Again, one-time revenue, carryover of fund balance. We know there are going to be costs going forward, and we also know that we're going to lose, this year budget, we're, we reduced our public health realignment growth revenue estimate by $300,000, and we expect that to continue because of the IHSS MOE changes. As part of that provision, the state shifted both mental health and public health realignment revenue, VLF realignment revenue, over to social services to deal with the IHSS MOE change, and so we will lose about 300,000 a year. And so we thought we'd get, try and get a little ahead of that game and set some money aside to, to cover those costs. And then finally, the largest amount, 4.4 million in social services. Again, this is set aside to help cover the costs of the IHSS MOE shift. We don't know yet what, what the full impact of that will be. There are some estimates out now from CSAC. We're more confident in the cost estimates for us, which is about $12 million in 1718 above what we, our costs were in 1617. But they also have some offsetting revenue increases. We're less confident in those numbers, so we're still working on that issue. But in any case, 4.4 million will not be enough to cover the full cost this year, next year, and the succeeding years. As you know, the cost ramp up may be enough to cover our costs this year and maybe even part of next year. We don't know yet, but anything we can do to help cushion that cost as we go forward will obviously benefit the general fund overall. And this leads us to the main policy issue that we've identified here in the, in the, in the recommended budget, and that has to do with the use of discretionary revenue from the sale of Mather properties. And Supervisor Nutoli has raised this issue on a number of occasions. The county, basically by way of background, the county acquired the former Mather Air Force Base under what's called, or most of that land under what's called an economic development conveyance. And what that means is we basically got the land for free, and in return, any revenue from the sale or lease of that property for a period of seven years after the date of the conveyance needed to be reinvested in economic development purposes out at the Mather, at the Mather area. That seven-year period has now ended for most of the parcels, including all of the parcels that would be, the parcels that, the revenue from which is reflected in this budget and any upcoming sales that might occur, with the result that that is really discretionary revenue. And that money, there's about 2.95 million in revenue in the 1718 budget, in the non-departmental revenue budget in the general fund. And we know that, in fact, other properties will eventually be sold out there, not right away, but within the next few years. There's some infrastructure that's going to eventually be put in that will open up sales of that property. And so that, that in turn could generate, we don't know yet, but perhaps as much as an additional $6 million. In addition, we already have an, an interest in, or an agreement with developers out there that in, in the long run may get us a share of the cost of development for residential development that's proposed out there. So there's, there's money that will be coming in. There's also needs out there in terms of costs. We recognize that. And so our recommendation at this point is not to change the budget as we proposed it, but to direct staff to review the need for improvements in services at Mather and potential revenue streams, and report back to the board with the suggested long-term approach to addressing the, the situation on the Mather campus.
Okay, if we could just maybe pause for a second on this. I don't know, Nav, were you going to add something to that?
No, I was just going to mention, as Britt said, our recommendation is that there are future revenue streams coming. We need to have a comprehensive discussion with the board, what your vision is. We haven't had that discussion for 20 years. And whatever the money that the board wants to set aside, we'll set that money aside as a reserve. We're contemplating, the conversation to have with you then, is, is there a reserve for Mather that we start putting money aside for whatever project, infrastructure, any other thing that we need in the former Air Force Base?
I'd just like to weigh in here for, for a moment, because again, we're 24 years post closure next month, and...
Robin?
And I would just like to maintain the pause for just a moment, and that is that as staff's recommendation stands, the, the money allocations is a policy decision for the board. To the extent that then it engages in the Mather issue, we have a conflict with Supervisor Peters that we'll just need to parse out and allow the discussion to go and exclude her as it dives into Mather itself. So as the board makes the policy decision about the, the use of those funds in general fund areas versus in Mather specifically, we can, if we keep that separate, then we can, for the sake of efficiency and participation, have the full board engaged in that conversation until you parse out Mather itself.
Okay, well, we're kind of at that point.
Didn't get that. What do we?
Yeah.
How about now?
Yeah, how about now?
Well, I mean, if, if you're, if you're proposing as, as directed, if, if, and if it's folded into the general fund, the board has full discretion, unconflicted discretion to allocate those funds. If the board is requesting, or if a member is requesting half, or a third, or all, or some portion of it go, be returned into Mather specifically, then the Mather discussion needs to exclude Supervisor Peters.
And that's what I want to talk about, because that was the policy direction years ago. We revisited it as we, as appropriate, but, so...
So if you stay at the high level... Now is a good time to go, and then at another time when there's specific budget direction.
Well, I, I haven't heard yet. I mean, I think you can participate until the board says we want it to go into Mather or, or identifies for the, for the high policy discussion.
I don't understand what you're talking about, so I'm leaving.
Okay.
Okay. And we won't be long, because we're into presentation, but the point that I raised in last year's budget was regarding the sale of a property to the Bell Brothers, which was $243,000 that got built into the general fund. And I raised the issue last October regarding that issue, and here we are, and I've already expressed this to the county executive, to Mr. Ferguson, that I wanted to have this discussion because I think it's imperative that this board, as it's currently constituted, have a full discussion, and I appreciate the fact that we would come back, but in the meantime, it got plugged into the budget, which is, I guess, not irreversible, but it does have impacts because it's been appropriated to the point that Ms. Trevan has made a moment ago in various funds. And two or three years ago, it asked for an assessment, I guess it was done somewhere through general services, of the Mather campus property, but also some adjacent facilities there. And we know we have a proposal to build upon the Veterans Village project, which was a partnership between this county and certainly the city of Ranch Cordova, and has provided some, both permanent supportive housing for veterans, but also has the opportunity for some additional transitional housing, as I understand it, capital side of it. And I guess what I wanted to do before today, and I said this to you in the briefing a couple of weeks ago, was is to have this discussion as a preface before it got built in. And so Nav, you've explained to me as recently as this morning that, yeah, we can come back with a workshop, and I'm not looking to revenues from sale of undeveloped land on the, on Mather South. That's a whole nother issue unto itself that will, you know, commit for this board properly when those transactions occur. We know that this sale to, potential sale to the Veterans Administration for this site, that's been in the works for at least three or four years. And it's on the front portion of the campus. It's in an area that this county has invested heavily in. And again, I see Mr. Leonard here in the audience, and he was, some of the early days when we were doing, building upon the then very recent closure, as I said, we're 24 years post closure, and there's still a lot of work to be done. And part of that, when we have these one-time revenues, whether they be fully discretionary or not, and that's why this is probably the biggest sale that in, in recent times, certainly since the beginning of recession anyway. And I think there are some needs that one need to be assessed, also other items may be considered, and with the backdrop of the budget, though, I think makes a bit of more difficult conversation. And so I guess Nav and Britt, I would ask you, obviously, to report back to the board, but, you know, that's kind of, you know, what we're hearing now, we're looking forward. I get it, there may be future sales of land, there may be, you know, and some of those may be uncovered with different conveyance restrictions or not. But when we look at what we have at that, in the Commerce Center, a lot of that's in the city of Ranch Cordova and their jurisdiction now, but still, the county has a, a market interest and have, over the years, promoted good development, has created jobs, and I think added vitality to the area. But we also have the presence of the community campus, which is a 30-acre complex there. We just, we appropriated $300,000 to remove the bungalows on another, another site. We need to talk about the economic development portion of this, but also investment in properties that we have that otherwise probably won't compete very well with dollars elsewhere in, in the budget. And so for today's purposes, and again, you know, I don't know what action, when we come down to deliberations this afternoon or whenever we get there, what you contemplate. But if budget approval contemplates spending 2.95 million, all the sale proceeds, and then coming back and have a discussion about that in retrospect, that's reverse, in my view. It's reverse, is certainly what I was asking for.
Well, we're contemplating is that we, the money is coming in, it's plugged into the budget. If the board so desires to take certain amount of the proceeds and say, we want to do XYZ, we don't have that project at this point. So what we are, what we would like to get direction is for us to come back, as you've been, you've mentioned, to say that these are different projects that are out there. What kind of money are we willing to commit? Is it 2.9? Is it 3? Is it 4? What's the dollar amount that needs to do some of this reinvestment? And the future policy, we want to make sure that we are aligned with you, is that when these sales come in, it doesn't get into a situation where we have the sale right in front of us, and then we're having the discussion where to put the money, and then the board has a desire to see the totality of the budget coming in. So we're looking for direction to come back to you to say, when Mather money is coming in, is there a percentage that you want to set aside? What kind of projects are you looking at? Is it infrastructure? Is it building? Is it working with Ranch Cordova? We don't have any of that direction. That's what we're looking for.
Okay, again, without going over ground that we covered, but, but it got plugged into the budget without us having that discussion.
Supervisor Nutoli, as you know, it was discretionary. When money comes into our budget, discretionary money gets plugged into our budget. If you desire to have something different done, that's why we're here to have that conversation, is that if you want to unplug the number, just let us know what number would the board want to unplug, and we will put that aside for Mather. As I mentioned, as a Mather reserve, that whenever we come back to you, then we know that the projects that we're looking at, that's the budget you're looking at, and that becomes the package we bring back to you.
So what if I say to you, this is me, and I'm speaking for any of my colleagues up here, I say, you, you hold the 2.9 million plus the 243,000 from last year's sale, and you hold that money until we have the, the policy conversation? So that's about 3.1, almost 3.2 million dollars.
Yeah?
Okay, no, I mean, yeah.
I mean, our budget, as you know, is a dynamic budget. It goes up and down, there's savings, there's other things that come in. If that's what the board's desire is to put aside 3 million for Mather during this fiscal year, we'll find ways to put that money aside.
Well, the reason I ask it that way, Nav, is not to be contentious, but it's to be real about it, to have, to have the conversation that we're going to have, and then this board decides, you know, with the various input that we get, certainly from staff, but from maybe from others as well, as to what we want to do with one-time monies out there, recognizing discretion that's vested in this board, so...
Supervisor Nutoli, as you, we have talked about it, our budget goes up and down every year. There's money that we have in there, and if the desire is to, I'm just using a 3 million for discussion purpose. If you say that's what you want, all the proceeds to stay at Mather, during this fiscal year, we'll make sure that, there's no projects right now, but we'll make sure that 3 million, we'll set a reserve and come back to you and say there's a 3 million reserve. So that piece we can do, but we further would like to get clarification from the board in another setting, is that when we are confronted with questions like that, our rules are, it's discretionary, what you guys tell us is plug in the budget, go forward, and it creates this awkward situation where we plug it in and there's, we need more discussion on it. So that's what we want to get clarification, is that with all these different streams of money coming in, let's look at the whole totality, and what's your all's desire on that? And not that we can revisit, I mean, it could be revisit now, when Mather South proceeds, we could have a different mindset on what we want to do with that money.
Right. No, and, and that's fine. Again, I just, it's just a little awkward here today, and again, we're going to, you know, go down through this, and, and that's been a bit of my frustration. Again, I think that properly those things before, obviously, you know, we're nearly a quarter, quarter century into this thing, and, you know, there's a lot of good things that have happened out there, there's a lot of work that lies ahead, but the sales of land are one-time opportunities to either invest or to help us with other services that certainly folks at Mather, but others enjoying this county via, you know, the county services and programs. So again, I want to have the conversation sooner rather than later. I mean, that was my desire last, last October, and it's not just my desire, obviously, this board, I think, needs to have that opportunity to talk about it, and whether it's with regards to this particular sale, and one that occurred last year, or ones that, you know, lie ahead. I think having good policy direction, certainly for you and for your staff, is, is important, but I also would like to have in the context of what other needs, and whether infrastructure may be, whether it's above ground or below ground, or it's in services and/or other improvements out there that help us continue to build on, I think, the commitment that we made as a, as a county, and I think I've adhered to it, you know, in, in many different ways, to see to that that base is, you know, someday fully converted and, you know, and reinvested in, and that it becomes not, you know, what it is today, but even greater than what it is, and whether it's the airport property, or it's the Commerce Center, or it's housing, or it's, you know, land set aside for Vernal Pole Preserve, or parks, or a whole variety of things, economic development on the west side, that, you know, there's a lot of vacant land there, it's in the airport conveyance. I just think that, you know, we shouldn't lose sight of that, just because we're well into this. This was a long-term project, and this county's been committed to it, and we certainly have received the benefit of job creation as a community, when we got 6,000-some jobs out there, and also the revenue that comes through different streams that support ongoing activities both at Mather, there were surrounding community in the, in the county more broadly. And I just want to be sure we keep that, and to your point, that, yeah.
Yeah, both of those we want to bring, and my commitment is no later than last meeting in October.
Okay.
I just want to make sure the airport piece, I want to make sure I get that in here. We have as robust of a conversation as we need at, at that point.
Okay, so before we close our deliberations, then, I think, maybe be thinking about, at least from my perspective, and again, I don't know whether, you know, my colleagues will agree with me or not, that of roping off the money for purposes of discussion, because I think that, you know, to, to hear that, and then how those may compete against, you know, other things in the budget, and/or the considerations that we would have for one-time use of those monies versus, you know, how they may have been appropriated thus far. So just to have that kind of framed up, that if we were to say $3 million, which county executive, you bring that back to us in October.
I think our answer to that will be we'll adjust our budget accordingly, and as I mentioned, our budget's going to go up and down during the year. Our thought process is when we come back to you, you tell us, based on the needs that we're going to identify, you tell us that it fits 2 million, 3 million, and give us the latitude at that point to carve the money out.
And again, either, and to carve it out, but also then to release it if we chose to do that, so the board understands, you know, whatever we do...
I mean, during the fiscal year, I'm just going to belabor that point. Our budget goes up and down. This is not pitting one against the other one, so if we have direction that that's a priority for this board, that you want to set aside some money, we will work to set that money aside and do whatever necessary legislative action, come back to you and say, this is how we're carving the money out.
Yeah. And I guess I would... And I guess I would suggest, too, that it would be helpful, as a part of that October report, the historical use of dollars, with certainly grant monies we've received, but also the sale proceeds and how those have been invested in the Mather complex, whether infrastructure or otherwise. Again, it doesn't have to, you know, be exhaustive, but I think it needs to be reflective. So I think there's a good, a good idea, because I think it's a good foundation for discussion, and certainly bringing us to the present, and then looking to the future as to how we may or may not want to, you know, appropriate those dollars. So, okay, good. Mr. Cern.
Thank you. I just want to get some clarity from you, Mr. Chair. Are you thinking that you, at the right time, this morning or early afternoon, you would incorporate, or someone would incorporate in a motion to come back next month and get that report back?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Good, thank you. Okay.
So then the concluding slide, not a bullet up here, because it sort of goes unsaid, obviously, is the budget as recommended, as balanced as required by law. It meets many critical needs, though not all. And your board is aware, there was over $30 million probably in unmet growth requests in a variety of areas. So we know there are other needs out there that we were not able to meet, but it does address what we see as the most critical needs. And your board's reserve policy has been followed in terms of augmenting your general reserves. And with that.
Just a couple of comments, as Britt's finishing that. That last point, I just want to spend a couple of moments on that. It was spring of 2016, I believe, Supervisor Cern had called about our reserves. And we did come up with a policy, and we would have wanted more, a higher percentage, but I understand that. But it's, in two years in a row, if this budget passes as we have, we have gotten to basically having almost, not almost, zero reserves to 13 million. And it's going to take some steps for us to get there. It's a slow process, and I think it's something that we, it's something we could use with our rating agencies, to let them know that the commitment that the board has in setting it aside. And as we go in the future, we do want to revisit that policy a little bit, to see if 10% is appropriate, do we look, do we look at a different number, what we need to do. But I just didn't want that point to go through the presentation without acknowledging the board's policy and how for two years we've been following that.
It was a re-establishment of it, right? Following, following the recession?
Yeah. What we had prior to that was a very, I think the words that the rating agencies used was more like a guideline.
So it actually was more, more material?
It was more targeted.
Okay.
It was very targeted, this is what it is. And I think we, as we go forward, we can look at it, make some adjustments. Where we want to be, it's something we need to keep discussing with you, on what's the appropriate level of reserve. And just one soapbox I'll say is that there's a lot of items that, just like we got done talking about Mather and what we went through this summer, it makes our life a lot harder than other jurisdictions that have a savings account. For us to have that, we would have made the discussion more on the policy side, and I feel like as the executive, that we end up having the fiscal versus policy, and the fiscal ends up trumping the policy sometimes. And I think that's the conversation we need to continue having, as we set reserves aside, when is appropriate to use them, when not. So I just wanted to acknowledge the board for giving us that direction. Thank you.
Through the chair, if I may, since you brought up, Mr. Gill, I appreciate the comment. I would, not to go too far afield of what's in front of us specifically today, but when we do have a workshop, or we have a scheduled item to vet that in open session in the future, I would suggest that perhaps as one option, we look at a sliding scale percentage that's tied to revenue, year-over-year revenue change. That way, I think we can maybe have a better governor on the, on the whole process, as per your last comment there, with other competing demands that do pop up before June, after June, but before September.
Yeah.
Other questions about any budget items that were presented, Mr. Ferguson, or anything else?
That was it. If not, it's Sherry.
Yeah, excuse me, just before you, I have one question, an attachment to, Britt, if you could. It was the cancellation of the 3.49 million of the Reserve for Future Pension Obligation Bond debt service, to actually cover that debt. And so was, is that a placeholder year-to-year, or is that something that this year we had to expend it, and what do we do next year?
Yeah. So that money was set aside, originally it was more than the amount that was in that reserve. Originally set aside to, knowing that our debt service costs for pension obligation bonds were going to increase over time. In, in this last year, we did have an increase of about $4 million in general fund costs related to pension obligation bonds, and so we did cancel that. That was part of the June budget. And, you know, at some point, that money will run out, as it is on track to do. And so then any increases in pension obligation bond cost will just be paid out of ongoing increases in revenues.
So one of the things on that pension obligation is, I believe, we're three years out from hitting the peak, and then it starts going down.
Going down.
So the money was set aside in 2000, I want to say five or six, when we had the VLF money come back. And it was, we used a lot of it in nine and 10 to just keep our operations going. So every year, when it goes up, we try to use some of it to offset the increases, but not hit the general fund too much.
But we're going to, but now, basically, we'll have utilized all of it in this budget year. And so any of the increases over the next three years will have to be absorbed through departmental and/or general fund. Because I see cancellation, I took that to be that you were basically saying we're out.
There will still be, there will still be about 700,000 left.
Okay.
Cancellation is a technical term he uses to release it.
Okay. So there's a little, you know, at some juncture, it might be, again, to, because that is an issue that certainly, from time to time, I think, gets attention at different levels of government, certainly just in society generally. But I think, you know, to recognize the point, that in three years, we have peaked out, and that, you know, again, meeting that obligation, this county has adhered to that. But over time, that we'll see that begin to decline, as relates at least to the POBs. It doesn't mean that, you know, pensions otherwise may not have impacts budgetarily. But I think that frame of reference, so at least people are clear from Sacramento County's, you know, standpoint, with our workforce, with our retired workforce, and with the obligations that come with that, you know, where we are. So I would suggest it might be a good idea, at some juncture, to have a presentation to the, to the board about how we sit on that, so.
I think what we'll do is we'll do a whole debt workshop, you haven't heard that, because POBs is going down, but we have some other debt that's in there.
Right.
Our, if you will, just to number out, there's 2030, 2031 is when the county gets to a point that the debt burden starts easing off.
Okay. Well, and the revenue neutrality payments will go away very shortly with some of the cities, you know, in the next, next five years or so, and so.
Correct. We'll present to you the whole debt picture of the county.
Okay. Okay. Next up, Supervisor Frost.
I just wanted to ask, when, when does the pension obligation bond pay off? You said it starts to go down rapidly.
I believe it's 2034, 2035, one of those years. But we can get you that day.
Thank you.
Okay. And, okay, there's no other questions. I just note, too, as we go into Dr. Heller's presentation, that we had the two presentations on the sub-agenda, for those that may have joined us, we'll have the one on Health and Human Services, and also on homeless programs, homelessness initiatives. And then we'll get into public comments, and I have a number of speaker forums. And I would just note, too, now, that there are items that may not be included in either those two. A couple in particular, I think, South County Services, maybe the Splash Program, certainly St. John's has representation here, and there's other advisory bodies that raise issues. So question on that, then you'll be taking notes on those, so as we come back for either board questions, board deliberations, as to, you know, budgetary impacts, or where funds might be available, should the board choose to do whatever we choose to do. So you'll kind of keep track of all those?
Yes, we will.
Okay. Good. Thanks. All right. Good morning, Sherry.
Good morning, all. My name is Sherry Heller. I serve as Director of your Department of Health and Human Services. Like to begin my presentation by briefly summarizing the changes to the DHHS budget that you folks already approved in June for this year's budget. First, there were additions to the Child Protective Services budget to take into account new obligations under the law called Continuum of Care Reform. This is contracted positions as well as staff positions. And the two main thrusts that were approved there are, one, changes to the way we approve resource families, the new term that, we used to say foster families and adoptive families, now it's combined to resource families. And second, the staffing up for child and family teams that are now required more frequently earlier, and for many more children, including, I think it's important to note, to mental health counselors as part of those child and family teams. There was additional funding to support what is known as Avatar, that's the IT infrastructure underlying behavioral health, mental health services. And the new funding was for the billing system that we use to claim federal money and otherwise bill for mental health services, and for operation of our electronic health record in behavioral health services. In primary care, we added 0.4 FTE, that looks so weird, but basically what we were doing is we took a 0.6, added 0.4, and now we have one whole person. And that, that's a good thing.
But that person's happy about that, right?
Yeah, absolutely. We really appreciate it.
Put your arms and legs back on, yeah.
Right. Enormous help in scheduling. And that, and that person, just so you know, is going to be providing counseling for high-risk pregnancies in the Rancho Cordova and Oak Park sites. We added public health nurses specifically for the purpose of monitoring the use of psych, and prescribing of psychotropic meds for children in foster care. We took into account in June, the, the winning of the Dental Transformation Initiative, which will build dental care capacity for children on Medi-Cal, and improve the links between primary care and dental care for those children. And we'll be rolling that out with our partners, with the Managed Care Dental Advisory Committee and the Every Smile Counts Collaborators. And finally, some technology upgrades and support for behavioral health services. Those are workstations, both for mental health and drug and alcohol staff. And some funding provided by the state, so that we could support the state's effort to modernize the child welfare information system that underlines, it's statewide, but we're close, the state likes to fund us to help develop it, we have a stake in making sure it goes well. So those were the things we did, that you did in the spring, and we're very grateful for them. Over the summer, there was some disappointing news, and that is that there were federal funding cuts that support our Nurse Family Partnership Program and the Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Program. These cuts weren't, they weren't really because the federal budget was adopted. What happened is that the state of California had had its funding enhanced for a while by having won some competitive money, and that expired. It's in excess of $1 million lost to us, and the effect is that we have essentially cut the Nurse Family Partnership Program in half. We had two teams of nurses operating, and we now have one. We learned this in July, after the cuts had become effective. The cuts were effective July 1, so we had to act quickly. Our response was to make referrals of the families already enrolled in the program to the Birth and Beyond or Family Resource Centers, because we have that as an alternative to make sure those, and about, I would estimate, maybe 40 families re-enrolled in the Family Resource Center program, as opposed to losing services. About 27 families disenrolled. The remaining team of nurses has 109 clients currently. You know, this is a proven program, we believe in it, it works, we get better pregnancies and healthier children. On the other hand, it is a very, very restrictive program. The rules for it, for example, call out a two-and-a-half-year working with the families, the caseload is very low, 25 clients to one nurse. And we're pleased that we were able to maintain the one team. I want to call out that we did not lay off any nurses to absorb these cuts, we didn't lay anybody off. Instead, we moved the existing public health nurses to vacancies where we, that we had in public health nursing that supports CPS. And I think we've talked before about the important role that public health nursing plays in the Child Protective Services Program.
Oh, Supervisor Cern, and I have a question, too, so.
Yes.
I just wanted to get some clarity on the 27 families that you mentioned, Dr. Heller, that disenrolled. Is that attrition, or is that because of other factors? In other words, did they complete the term of the program?
They were, they were not completed, and these are folks who were referred to Family Resource Centers and did not enroll there. So it's hard to know the reasoning of it. But, but they weren't working with the nurse they had been working with anymore.
Okay. Thank you.
Question I have, this is a program that, you know, through the ups and downs in the budget, and Mr. Gill certainly alluded to that in any given year, but even in the worst of times, we maintained Nurse Family Partnership. It got reconstituted a bit, but, and I guess, a concern that I have, in fact, I noted this even before I saw your slideshow this morning, that recognizing that, you know, no one was laid off, well, I guess that's good for the nurses and the employees, but I'm still concerned that, you know, small caseload is for a reason. You're dealing with situations that are very difficult. I know I've certainly, and maybe other members of the board have done a ride-along in years past, a couple of occasions with our Nurse Family Partners, and I can still recall very clearly, you know, some of the folks that we encountered on my ride-along that I think were at great risk. I mean, you know, teen mothers living in situations that, you know, where they maybe were with a grandmother, in one case, underweight infant. And that nurse was a real connection to, a real lifeline for that infant, but certainly for the young mother with parenting and so forth. And I guess I'm concerned that we didn't have, the money may have gone away, and I know the county, and this goes to this policy decision about, well, we don't backfill. Well, we don't backfill, we don't know about it. If this board wants to have a discussion about, just as we've done in other areas, about whether this and the competing priorities rises to the level that we want to backfill. And I think that in this case, I for one, would have liked to, and I guess we can still do it today, although we've now shifted folks away, we've disenrolled folks, some went to the FRCs, which is great, that's a great program, but it's different than, than this program, to some degree, the intensity of it. And we didn't have any discussion about that. It just happened between June, because of the loss of money. And I guess I would say, Nav, and to you, Dr. Heller, that this, at least in my view, and it may seem like it's inconsequential, but I don't think it's inconsequential. It's certainly consequential to 27 families who disenrolled, who may or may not have had, you know, good outcomes. But beyond that, this has been, through thick and thin, a program that this county has supported, recognizing we've had to cobbler together resources at times, made reductions in it, reconstituted it. And I guess I'm a bit concerned that we're here today, it's already, you know, basically a done deal. And, yeah, we could, we could make a decision about putting some funding back in, but then you got to hire up, and you got to have a team and all that. We didn't have any of that discussion, it just happened. And so I guess I appreciate some response about that.
Well, as Dr. Heller mentioned, I mean, this is a reduction that came from the state, and I guess my best answer is that when state cuts, we cut accordingly with it. We adjust our budgets when they do it. And this is one program, there's myriad of programs that they take funding, give funding, go back and forth. And I...
Well, for example, we see realignment money, one-time money, you could, this could have been bridged over until we got to final budget, and presented us with that decision here today versus having, basically the decision was made, recognizing that direction, we don't backfill. We don't backfill unless we choose to do it. Generally, we don't, but we have in the past, and we've saved physicians, and have found ways to move things around. So I guess, I guess I oppose that. Again, it goes to your, where funding drives policy, or policy drives funding in some cases, or choices that really aren't choices, because it's like, it's on automatic decision-making.
Well, it's based on what the state does to us. I mean, state, we're agents of the state. So the state is the one that gives us the funding, they say, you're going to do this, when they take the funding away. We, we, I don't know better words, we've always stood by that, saying that if the state takes it, we cut accordingly, and if the state gives us money, we implement what they give us the funding for.
Mr. Nottoli, I would simply add, we certainly didn't think of this as inconsequential. We're believers in the effectiveness of the program. But we did take into account some long-term planning, as well as the immediate issue presented. So we know, for example, that our public health nursing program that supports CPS, as well as the Family Resource Centers themselves, are due to take additional cuts next year from first five. And so I acknowledge, I didn't, I didn't put up the flag for a Band-Aid approach, because I was taking into account some of the longer-term issues as well.
So when are we going to have that discussion, then? I recognize the first five. I recognize the first five.
Well, that'll be for the subsequent year budget.
Yeah, I get it, but if, but if the policy stands that money goes away, and you close FRCs or has further reductions on the Nurse Family Partnership, I guess I for one would want to have that discussion. Again, recognizing, you know, that you don't take it lightly. That wasn't my point about saying inconsequential. That wasn't the point. I know you take it seriously, but if it's a service reduction, and a serious service reduction to very at-risk population, you know, of youngsters who may or may not make it through this lifetime, and I guess I just, if there's going to be further reductions that are contemplated for either the loss of funding that's driven by first five, which is a state funding source, or others, then we ought to have that probably before.
Supervisor Natoli, I think as you recall, in June, when we had the first five discussion, they did identify there are some funding reductions coming.
Right, no, I know that.
And that is going to be a conversation we're going to have June of 18, what to do with it. And that's slated for us to come back and talk about it.
So, but the funding loss will be effective June of 18, so are you going to come back to us in the springtime in advance of that, so that we've got some, because again, this gets, you know, against the backdrop of everything else in the budget, you know, and whether it's public safety, public protection, health and human services, I just think some of these things are critical. Anyway, we build, you know, we reinforce that system by adding Family Resource Centers and putting more money into it. And if that money's going to get, come out in a different fashion from a different source, then we ought to talk about that before we begin to disenroll and disassemble the system. That's my point. I mean, if that's what has to be done, this board makes tough decisions all the time, but I just don't want to be on automatic, you know, pilot that, you know, that's what, you know, you do your job because you have to cut the budget, and next thing we know, there's an FRC or two of them that are closed, and more nurses are out the door, or shifted somewhere else.
Supervisor Natoli, if I may, for next year on the first five, we are anticipating those reductions, and there will be sufficient funding in the 17, 18 budget, so we won't have to necessarily ramp down prior to the board having a discussion in budget hearings on what they want to do in response to those reductions. So there won't be any advanced reductions in this fiscal year based on what we anticipate from first five in 18, 19. So if your concern is that we're going to start ramping down or cutting in April or May in anticipation of those cuts, I don't think that will be necessary. There will be sufficient appropriations in DHHS to maintain that until the board can have a budget and policy discussion around that for next year. With regard to the, the public health, or excuse me, the Nurse Family Partnership, I would echo Ms. Heller's comments that we don't take this, we don't take this lightly. This is a very important program. It's been very helpful, very, very, it's helped a lot of people, and it's been a critical piece of CPS. But there's a whole lot of things there right now that are very critical to CPS, and it became a discussion between Ms. Heller and myself on where the priorities lay, and there's some other requests before you to help CPS in its mission and what needs to be accomplished. And, you know, we put those out in front. It was an extremely hard decision. It's an extremely hard decision for you. I acknowledge that, but that says what is before you is our recommendation.
Perhaps one thing we can do to take into account the feedback we're getting is take a look more broadly, Mr. Lake and myself and our team, at the various home visitation programs that we have in place to deal with high-risk pregnancies and children at risk, and lay the Mount Nurse Family Partnership here, Family Resource Centers here, and do some planning that we could share with the board.
I think that would be helpful. Again, my use of inconsequential wasn't that you took it lightly, Paul, or that you, Dr. Heller, or anybody else. It's just that it is consequential, and it's a program that certainly, at least this board member has some familiarity with, and recognizing we make choices, and what else you're going to present to us also presented choices that are difficult ones. I just, again, I echo what I'm saying in that it's important that, you know, before those decisions are made, that at least we not just get noticed, if we have a chance to talk about it in this context and hear from others, and, you know, because, you know, what we're going to do today potentially is going to help folks who are young teens or, you know, adolescents who are troubled, but they got to get past infancy in order to get to that point, and so it is out balance, and I think what you said, Dr. Heller, would be very helpful, and I appreciate, Paul, your comments as well.
Appreciate the feedback. Moving now to the adjustments that the county executive is recommending in your final budget, and the primary one I'm going to talk about is in the context of continuum of care reform. I want to call out the phrase continuum of care because I know that same phrase is sometimes used in the context of homeless programs, and that's not what we're talking about here. For some reason, the phrase is duplicated as a term of art in child welfare. So this is Child Welfare Continuum of Care Reform, which represents a major transformation of services to foster children and youth, and as well as youth on probation. The basic principle is restrictions on the use of group homes, and I think we all share the belief that children should be raised by families in their own homes, and that under the, under the new legislation, this state mandate, the only group homes that will exist are those that provide, that are mental health treatment facilities. So if a child needs mental health treatment, they can go into what's called a short-term residential treatment program for a short time. But then the idea is that after that short time, they will be with foster families or with relatives perhaps, and they will get wraparound mental health services to deal with the impact of the trauma that they've experienced. Most of the 3.6 million that's being recommended in this budget is in fact to deal with these issues, which are new challenges for us as well as county statewide. Some of the challenges as a result of continuum of care reform, some group homes are merging, some are going out of business, some are hiring additional highly-paid mental health staff to become, so that they can become certified as STRTPs. That's a new acronym, meaning Short Term Residential Treatment Program, Mental Health Programs. The rates have not yet been established by the state. They're going to be a lot higher than group home rates have been in the past because of the addition of this mental health staff. And the theory of the legislation is that although the rates are higher, fewer children will be in group homes, and they will stay for a shorter time, and so this is not supposed to cost counties a whole lot of money. Of course, that theory relies on enough resource families or foster families stepping up, and we have to surround those foster families with the appropriate supports and mental health services if this is going to work. That's the kind of thing that this money is for. Of course, the mental health services will also be relevant for reunifying families. It doesn't have to be foster families or adoptive families. It could be families getting back together again where their parents need help. And in any case, children on probation or children in our foster care settings are entitled to mental health services. They need to deal with their traumas as a matter of law. Now, to be clear, and right up front, we have sometimes had difficulties in finding appropriate places for some of these children to live promptly. We have trouble sometimes trying to find a home that will take in a sibling set, for example, when we want to keep brothers and sisters together. And we have trouble sometimes finding prompt placements, places to live for children who have had their first run-ins with the law. Perhaps they, in the old, in old times, we used to have them in a locked facility such as the youth detention facility. This would include children who've been sexually trafficked. And these delays in finding appropriate placements have caused backups at our intake and assessment office. That office is also known as the CPSU, and I can't remember what CPSU stands for, Centralized Placement Support Unit, which is our office, our county office, that exists in leased space on the campus of the Children's Receiving Home. We have tried over the past couple of years to deal with these delays by providing additional support to the Children's Receiving Home so that they can take these children into their shelter operation. So for example, we allowed a rate increase from level 10 to level 12. We didn't just allow, we supported a rate increase because of the difficulty of the children they were taking in. We provided another $280,000 for crisis specialists and youth mentors, and increased hours at the Children's Receiving Hours so that they could take kids into their shelter at all hours. But we haven't solved the problem. It still hasn't been sufficient as we continue to have delays in finding appropriate placements for some youths. So our plan, represented as part of this budget, is to add in the current year some $700,000, that's a portion of the 3.6 that you see represented on the slide, $700,000 to our contract with the Children's Receiving Home effective October 1st, to have them take over care and supervision of the children awaiting placement in appropriate residences. And additionally, in addition to the $700,000 for that care and staffing and so forth, the Children's Receiving Home would have access to some of the rest of the money that's there for mental health services. The mental health services will be then for the, for the resource families' wraparound, for the reunifying families, and for the families, and for the children in the shelter temporarily at the Children's Receiving Home. The CPSU staff, our own staff, would then return to their original function of locating appropriate places for these children to live. So they're doing assessment, and they're doing locating of resource families, relatives, and foster parents as well. And ultimately, to be clear, that's what we need. We need places for children to live and grow and thrive. So although much of what's going on in this budget item is about outing shelter capacity, shelters are just a short-term solution. The long-term solution is places for children to live and grow. Last thing I want to say about the money you see represented there is that about, and I think Mr. Ferguson mentioned this, about 1.5 million of the 3.6 is federal money because the mental health services portion of this money is 50/50 federal and local. So if we put in a dollar general fund, we can draw a dollar of federal money for the mental health services. I want to, just before I move to the other items, say how valuable it was and how much I appreciate the language in Mr. Gill's budget letter to you that said, I mean, he broke this out in his budget letter, this much for Children's Receiving Home, and this much for mental health, and so forth. I've combined it in this slide, but, but the flexibility sense, there's a sentence in the budget letter that says, "The department may move the money among these requests as needed to solve problems," and that flexibility is of enormous use to us, and I'm quite optimistic that we'll be able to address it. And I'm going to move on unless you want to stop and ask questions about this. What do you think? Should I finish the whole thing real fast?
Yeah, go ahead, sure.
The other items, under primary care, there's $5,000, which is an annual fee for a new program to us called CARES, Implement Cardiac Arrest Registry. This is to identify and track cardiac arrest responses. It's sort of a database that tracks patient outcomes and response intervals for first responders, for hospitals, and the idea is to improve the survival rate of people having heart attacks in the pre-hospital period before they get to the hospital. It's clearly highly effective. 20 counties so far are using it, in California, 36 states are using it in part, so we're very optimistic about the impact that this will have. I think you're familiar with the Tobacco Education Grant that we won. We've always relied on the state tobacco tax revenue, but there's significantly increased funding available, and this year we are budgeting to, to implement changes in the law as well as improvements to our program. So the law widened the definition of tobacco products. We are working to make sure that we can deal with how retailers display them and deal with outside, out to secondhand smoking, outdoor restaurant patios and so forth. That's the use of those funds. I want to say just a word about the technology upgrades. I know that there's a huge county-wide effort to get everybody on modern platforms and deal with machines that are out of warranty and that are not adequately protected and supported, the software to make sure that they, that malware can't be inserted, that there's security protections. In our case, the money that we, that Mr. Gill is recommending in this budget is very, very specific. It goes beyond that general program. The state is updating the backbone of CPS, the software that all the social workers use statewide, and that we use to access children's records when we're in the field and in court and in the office. And that program, the new version of it, will not be accessible by anybody in Sacramento County CPS starting this March if we don't do this upgrade. We will essentially be shut down during this fiscal year and have no access to our data on our caseload if we don't do this upgrade this year. So that's, that's not just a responsible public administration upgrade. That's sort of a crisis if we don't do it. I also want to mention...
And the state's got a guaranteed timeline? Is that, they've been known to slip a bit over the years?
That is true. That is absolutely true, but I didn't want to bet on that.
Okay.
I didn't want to bet on the state's failure, and besides, as you heard earl-
Mean it that way.
As you heard earlier, we're providing staff support to their transformation, and the people we're providing are really good and really smart, and they're not, they're not telling me that it's behind. So I think better safe than sorry there. Similarly, we had a HIPAA audit from our own compliance office in the county that said our public health lab was not in compliance with data security, public health data, you know, infectious disease-type data security requirements, because we didn't have a backup server, and our intention is to fix that. That's kind of a one-time-only expenditure. So I thank you for your attention. That's my summary. I'm happy to answer your questions if I can.
Okay. Thanks, Sheri. Questions or comments about anything in the Heller's presentation? Okay. If not, Sheri, you stand by, maybe something later, a little later on, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so we're going to go into, do you want to take public testimony or have the homeless presentation and then take public testimony?
If we could.
Okay, that's fine, sure. Okay, all right, very good. All right, so those that are in audience, stand by. We're going to have one more presentation, this on the homeless programs, Mr. Lake, Ms. Kavanaugh, and then we'll get into public testimony. We have a number of folks signed up, but not a tremendous number, so if you want to speak, get a form in, otherwise we'll call those submitted, so, Dr.?
One of Mr. Chair, members of the board, Paul Lake, Deputy County Executive for Social Services Agency. What we wanted to do today is provide a brief update on our progress since you approved some significant appropriations to our homeless initiatives that we discussed in prior board This slide shows what our shelter was, our shelter system was facing with funding reductions from the federal and state governments. It's important to know that, that the board made some specific actions in June to, to make sure that these reductions did not happen. By way of background, when the Great Recession hit, our shelters faced a significant loss of funding, in fact, almost all of its loss of funding from the general fund to keep those shelters open for the homeless. Through the leadership of the Department of Human Assistance and the board, we were able to keep those open by diverting CalWorks funding to offset the loss of the general fund. However, this year, as things have changed and CalWorks allocations have, CalWorks caseloads statewide have gone down, we are losing that CalWorks money for emergency shelters. The state has invested a lot of CalWorks money in the last few years in diversion programs and in permanent supportive housing, but between those changes and the loss of CalWorks funding this year, we were again faced with having to close our shelters down. But as we show in this chart, that, that risk was 16 beds for our abandoned street shelter operated by VOA, 17 units for the Nextmove operates. And I want to mention the 19 beds in St. John's, we've traditionally contracted those beds, those units as emergency shelter, but in fact, they've evolved into transitional housing beds. The, the board's actions, as you can see, was to provide funding to restore those units by way of the general fund. In the bottom part of the chart, the federal government, as you know, has reduced funding for transitional housing, and Sacramento steps forward in its process to garner continuum of care funding this year, did not include proposals for those transitional beds. And in fact, at VOA, at their operation at Mather, we stood to lose 180 single units of transitional housing and 30 family units, and at Serna Village, they were losing funding for the service component and would have had to close four units. That, all told, this was a potential loss in our emergency shelter and transitional housing of about six, serving about 600 individuals and families per year. But the board's investments restored virtually all of that, again, with the exception of those transitional beds at St. John's. So the board restored 564 of those units, and you should be applauded for that action.
Paul, you said the transitional housing, or beds at St. John's. I think you meant the emergency shelter beds?
Say again?
You said transitional beds at St. John's. I think you meant emergence.
Yes, effectively, those were emergency beds that became transitional beds. So technically, so yes, technically, we still have 19 units less in emergency shelter if we had not, if we had not taken other steps. And I'd like to get to those steps because in addition to saving those that we were potentially losing, the board also added capacity over the summer for more than 750 additional units on top of what you saved. The full-service rehousing shelter that- The full-service rehousing shelter that Cindy Kavanaugh is going to provide some updates to you more than makes up for any loss in capacity to the emergency shelters that we faced. It adds capacity to serve 300 individuals in the, per year. In addition, on the transitional housing, there were two steps taken. We approved a contract for some substance abuse funding out at Mather through the options for recovery program. That added capacity to serve four individuals per year. And pending board approval and a proposal next week, we will be recommending adding 25 additional transitional housing beds through funding that you provided in June. On the permanent housing side, as you know, you approved, setting aside 150 housing choice vouchers to serve as permanent housing for individuals who are homeless. You also approved funding for a flexible supportive housing program that we anticipate will house an additional 100 people in permanent supportive housing units. And you've also approved the county's grant award for the Bringing Families Home Program, which provides permanent supportive housing for families in the child welfare system. So as this chart shows, in addition to saving the capacity that we stood to lose, the board has added additional capacity to serve 754 individuals and families.
Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for the way this chart has been evolving to include the annual column, which I asked for at, I think it was our Parkway hearing. I think that's important for the public to understand because some of this is going to be time limited, so in the course of a year, you're going to have folks, depending on whether it's emergency, transitional, permanent, that will benefit from the shelter and the services provided in that shelter, depending on what that term of service is. However, I would suggest that as the charts continue to evolve, I know I've been approached by a number of my constituents with a reasonable question, which is, okay, fine, you've approved a full-service shelter, you funded it in June, but when do those, when does that capacity actually materialize? So I'd like to suggest that as we continue to rely on reference to these charts, whether it be with our constituents or with the media, that we be very transparent and maybe add a column to indicate when the capacity comes online. And I know that that's going to be a rough estimate in some cases, but for instance, full-service shelter, we've been fairly consistent that it's likely about a year from the summer that it would come online. We still have to figure out siting, whether or not it's going to be something other than just 75 beds at one location, 300, a capacity for 300 annually, of course. But I think that would be the most accurate way to depict-
That's a good suggestion.
Yeah, what this capacity actually is, so that, you know, when we are approached by curious minds about not just what we're doing, but when we're doing it, we have a sound answer.
We will do that. We will do that. And Ms. Kavanaugh will be here, coming up after me, to give a verbal presentation on where we are with that.
Great, thank you.
So this chart kind of totals it all together, and as it shows at the bottom, that the board actions this summer has saved and added shelter and housing capacity to serve almost 1,300 homeless individuals and families each year. I do want to make note that there is one budget change that we're recommending regarding the initiatives. We had anticipated some private funding that was going to be able to contribute to some of our efforts, and we included that as a revenue source in the Department of Human Assistance. We're no longer anticipating that that funding is going to materialize at this point, so we're recommending it be replaced with an increase in net county costs of 200, or excuse me, $810,000.
Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. Real quickly, should that commitment materialize sometime between now and next June? What would be our response to that? How would we account for the $810,000?
So the $810,000, we will do a budget adjustment out of DHA. It will come into Brit's favor account, which is a discretionary revenue, and to be re-appropriated in June budget.
Okay. But if it were to come back sooner than, say, January, February, when there was maybe some mid-year consideration, it would be the subject of a supermajority vote by this board? If we were, if there was a decision point on how to apply that discretionary revenue, would it not?
If you were to increase appropriations during the year, then you would need, that would require a forfeit vote, yes. But generally, what we try and do, unless there's a critical need, we try and wait to the end of the year, because some things come in higher, some things come in lower, and you have to look at the totality of where we are in order to make a decision, not just one, one-
Sure.
-thing that comes in higher.
I understand, thank you.
Could I just do a follow-on to that, though? For today's purposes, we're talking about the initiatives and you've set aside full year funding, but reckon, for some of these, and some have a half-year funding, recognizing that, you know, we may be on track in some respects to what you just said. If we're looking at some considerations today, we can take that into account, though, in our deliberations as relates to changes that we know. For example, when I asked earlier this morning about the ShotSpotter, you know, there's already four months of savings built right into that, even though you funded. Next year, you will have a full year's cost, and I understand you want to, you put it in the category, but same here, and some of these areas here, if we're looking for room to make some adjustments, do we not have the ability to do that?
Yes, of course you do. Our suggestion or advice will be that if there's a dollar amount that you're looking for, is to give us the ability to adjust the budget, rather than us going into each unit budget and try to figure out, is this going to be a six-month, four-month? Because that can create a potential budget problem for us in those units.
Okay. All right. Note for further discussion this afternoon, so. Anne, Ms. Edwards, you want to, did you, were you going to answer a question, or?
Related to that.
Oh, it was? Do you want to add?
So we did account, excuse me, Anne Edwards, Department of Human Assistance. Good morning.
Morning.
We factored in some of the savings already in this $800,000 request, because we were anticipating $1.2 million of private funds. We identified some savings in three different areas already to make up that difference. And the programs, the big programs, were not funded for an entire year, so they, we started, we planned for starting in January. So if we were to start after January, there might be some additional savings, but we've actually captured the savings that we know we're going to have already in this figure.
That accounts for the $390,000 roughly?
Yes, it does.
Okay, good. Thanks, Anne. Thanks for covering. Okay, good. All right, Paul, thanks.
So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Homeless Initiatives to give you an update of where we're at with implementing those homeless initiatives.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Cindy, good morning.
Good morning, Cindy Kavanaugh, County Director of Homeless Initiatives. I'm going to update where we are with each initiative, and in doing that, we'll just do a very quick reminder of what the initiative is, mostly for the audience. Through a series of public workshops in the fall and this year, this board identified two overall strategies and four initiatives. One was to improve the immediate response to the crisis of homelessness, and Initiative One and Two are really relevant to that. The second strategy was to really increase and deliver concrete pathways for folks so that they can leave homelessness to permanent housing. And Initiatives Three and Four are geared towards that, offering services in new ways to a population that we have not been able to reach with existing services, or at least not to the extent we need to. People living mostly on the streets or parkways for long periods of time and who have multiple barriers and challenges to leaving homelessness. So the first initiative is two-part, the Family Emergency Shelter redesign, which also has a transitional family component. Quickly, the redesigned shelter system has several new features in addition to serving through two shelters, the 270 families annually. This is regardless of CalWorks bureaus or barriers, so we can take high-barrier families. We're going to prioritize unsheltered families, but we are also offering for the first time diversion services for non-CalWorks families, so that they do not have to enter homelessness. We're going to emphasize a quick reconnection to housing resources and simplify the shelter entry using the CalWorks bureaus and a bed reservation system. We will, the Department of Human Assistance is doing the bulk of the work for the initiatives, so I do want to mention that. But there are some interesting interdepartmental efforts as well that I'll try to highlight in this to bring additional resources. September 26th, DHA will return with the recommended shelter contracts. They are, we are working on that shelter entry system and developing an information technology platform that will support the bed reservation, but also allow us to report on outcomes to you. The transitional housing is one-family transitional housing program that will offer and emphasize employment and recovery supports to serve 19 families annually. September 12th, DHA will return with the recommended contract. I want to mention also that there are a couple areas that we are pursuing one-time state funding. In this particular arena, there is some community-based transitional housing program funding that we are exploring in a couple of potential places, and that's through the Department of Finance.
So is that coming with the discussion next week, Cindy?
I'm sorry.
Is that coming, is that coming with the discussion next week?
That discussion would come, I don't think it's next week, but we may be able to highlight it then. No, we're not going to be, we're just covering the recommendation then. I think as we explore new funding, we will pursue it and then come back to the board as that, if funding is awarded.
Okay, just one other question, though, then. So what does new funding mean relative to programs, either existing and/or, are you contemplating new programming?
I think we're suggesting that there may be additional resources aligning with the initiatives, and we will pursue that, those. In this case, it's up to, it's 20 million total statewide, it's a little bit of an undersubscribed program, so we saw an opportunity and feel it can fit in with this, either with the family transitional or Initiative Number Two transitional. Initiative Number Two is at Mather Community Campus, discussed earlier. It is continuing the transitional housing and employment programs at the campus to replace the lost HUD funding. The programs as a whole served through Volunteers of America nearly 900 persons, that's all eight programs operated there. That includes individuals, families, veterans, transition-aged youth. The SNAP employment and training funding will be recommended to this board, which was part of the strategy to replace the HUD funding on September 26th. And we're working right now to transition all the moving parts from Sacramento Steps Forward to the county, who will be overseeing the administration of funding in that program ongoing.
Can I ask you a question, then, as relates to Mather Community Campus? Then with regards to what was agreed upon some 20 years ago now relative to the clean and sober and drug testing regimen and so forth, and some of that has been, obviously was given more flexibility because of some, you know, funding duress, but when, now that we're going to have general fund in this and going to find other ways of coming back under the county umbrella, are we, is that going to be back and forth, or what's the discussion going to-
What we have put forward in the past reports, specifically on March 21st, is that we would continue with the coordinated entry and the existing policy so that we can really serve the folks you want to serve. It's a modified policy related to entry and ongoing stability that both, in conversations as we came up with this strategy, we think can work, but we have also committed, as the county, and particularly as we take over administration, to very active conversation and involvement on making sure it is working from all parties' side. So we want to serve, you know, challenged populations, we want reasonable rules, we think that balance is there now, but we have also committed to continual conversation on that.
Could I suggest that when you either, when you're coming back next week or in the end of the month, or some appropriate juncture in the near future, to show how that mirrors what was, you know, the policy direction by this board and kind of what we evolved to and where we're going to be at going forward as it relates to that issue?
Sure.
Thanks.
So we've talked about the full-service rehousing shelter. This is a low-barrier emergency shelter accommodations and rehousing assistance for persons experiencing long-term homelessness who are difficult to serve in a traditional shelter or through services. 75-bed capacity is our goal, but obviously, we have a site search underway and things could morph in terms of what is feasible. We're working with SHRA, the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, and have identified, I will say, a bare bones 840,000, not knowing the site and the needs. This will really cover fairly modest renovation to the accommodation. So I would note that as if there is savings, it may, we may need it in the physical renovations.
Cindy, real quick, so that 840,000, for instance, would not include any kind of lease payment, that's just improvements?
Yes, the CDBG is best suited for the improvements, otherwise it has to come out of the public service portion. We have been working pretty extensively with stakeholders in a variety of settings and with consumers and with other county services to really fully scope the targeting, the services, and the operations of the shelter. We are pursuing, there's another new state opportunity for county welfare departments to, a service that will be really necessary here, which is disability advocacy. So it is a way to help folks who are disabled, who should be receiving disability, navigate that process to then receive the disability so they can pay for housing ongoing. So we're pursuing that funding as well. And we will use that in Initiatives Three and Four, because both populations will benefit from that.
Cindy, I have a question, then, and certainly, I've had conversations with you and Mr. Gill and Mr. Lake in recent weeks. At what juncture, if trying to cite a 75-unit facility becomes, you know, challenging for a variety of reasons, do you come back to this board and have a discussion that, still with the commitment for 75, but maybe it's in two equal portions or some apportionment, again, recognizing there are costs associated with that? At what juncture, again, recognizing kind of the timeframe that we put this on, the board direction, would you contemplate if this task, you know, both site selection, but also then the funding, then the improvements, I think Supervisor Serna's question, that that's just for improvements, but, you know, again, looking at the full scope of what staff work has gone on thus far, how soon would you anticipate that either you're going to be able to settle on a location that, you know, could accommodate all that, or that you'd have to come back to this board to have some additional discussion about that in order to try to deliver? Because, again, one of the things, too, is if we are challenged, I've said this, and I'd say it publicly, is that, you know, if it's not entirety of that, there are certainly some efficiencies that go with, you know, the 75. But doing something, rather than, you know, continue to, you know, churn away to try to, you know, find that perfect fit, so to speak, I mean, quotes, I guess, because, you know, making that all work, and then, but not be able to deliver, you know, early next year, which, you know, begins to compound other situations, and so.
So this is the most fluid of the initiatives, and we appreciate having flexibility to modify with the urgency that we feel to bring something online. With that flexibility and fluidity, we are committed to both working individually as we identify sites within districts and also returning to the board with the site choice. So we do expect, we are, we may be on that best fit at this point in our looking at what we can do, what we can make work, and some things, different opportunities are coming up, so we'll be in communication, but we have committed to come back to this board with the site or sites.
Okay. So you have sufficient flexibility with regards to that, then?
We feel we do, because we are committed to communicating our choices as we- We feel we do, because we are committed to communicating our choices as we go. We are planning on releasing an operator RFP, that's Request for Proposals. We're bifurcating shelter operations and rehousing, really two different sets of skills. The rehousing provider, we are intending to use the same rehousing provider as an Initiative Four. It's kind of an important point because we can begin rehousing almost in a bifurcated way. So as the shelters come online, that rehousing would be associated with that or perhaps more Then the last initiative is the Flexible Supportive Rehousing Program, using whatever it takes to outreach, to engage, and to rehouse folks and provide ongoing services. This is the program that will serve 250 of the most frequent users of county services, specifically behavioral health and the jail system. This will match it with those who are experiencing long-term homelessness or chronic homelessness, and it will create that path to permanent housing through these services and the rehousing services.
Can I interject real quick?
Sure.
So is there any reason, Cindy White, as we continue to hone that outreach tool, that it couldn't be designed to be applied, maybe not all the time, but a good amount of time with the park resource teams?
We've currently budgeted it for the 250, but there is no reason we can't build this infrastructure, if you will, and use it in different ways.
I'm just thinking in terms of, you know, the amount of days a week or amount of days per month, that there would be an intent that the, this new fortified outreach effort could be applied so that at the same time unsanctioned camping enforcement is applied in our parkways, you couldn't have a complement of these outreach workers to really use that as an opportunity to get people to the point of entry that we've now funded and hope to implement.
In our thinking, we are associating it more with the shelter, because that will have an outreach component.
Sure.
Remember, it will have an invitation only, so it has an outreach arm that's county, working with county, DHA, working with law enforcement and Parkway in particular. So that's where we're seeing more of the connection, but we will be learning as we go, and there may be more, the need for more intensive engagement in services.
So for those constituents that have contacted me with some concerns about perhaps what we, what this board has taken action on to augment Parkway funding recently, that it's, it's not intended to be just augmentation for the park resource teams that are simply applying enforcement. It's really a platform, working with the outreach workers relative to the new shelter initiatives, to use that interface with our park rangers to enhance the expression of opportunity for those folks that if they're not going to be on the Parkway, they have ample opportunity to take advantage of a full-service shelter.
To the extent that the 75 beds are not full, there will be ample opportunity, but definitely there is the intent to partner those services with the outreach, with the other kinds of things going on, both in neighborhoods and in the Parkway.
And again, I'm going to remind you, it may be 75 beds, but it's 300 capacity annually because people rotate through.
Correct. So the full service, excuse me, the Flexible Supportive Rehousing Program, number four, we're starting to call it number four, and number three, just for ease, but will have a similar approach, but it's not site, it's shelter-based, and more intensive services and more rehousing. It will connect with the limited allocation housing choice vouchers, which is well underway, and we're working with SHRA, and this board approved. We're also able, and you might recall, when we, when we looked at this program, as we create this infrastructure, new funding is sometimes anxious to pay into a concrete housing pathway that offers services and a pathway to housing. So we're going to marry it with the, or bring along welfare-involved families, child welfare-involved families with the bringing families home. Part of that money goes to rapid rehousing, but part of it needs to go to permanent supportive housing. So there will be some families that participate in this program because of that funding. And so there's a good partnership happening between DHHS and DHA in implementing this together. We're also developing the IT platform, that is, DHA IT is, to have a very deep level of client, of what's happening with clients, really a weekly check-in, and this will also enable us to report on outcomes, we're hoping, much more readily. DHA is intending to release the RFQ in early winter, and will start, is, believes this can be operational in January 2018. With that, that is a summary of where we are with initiatives, and happy to take any questions.
Cindy, I have a question maybe for you or for Paul. In our budget report in Attachment Three, there's, in the CalWorks costs, there's a $2.1 million increase due to what's termed the repeal of the Once in a Lifetime Homeless Assistance Regulation. It was seen to me that in concert with our programs to assist folks who are homeless, a lot of those must probably be families, I would imagine, and could be wrong about that, that if we're looking for that increase for basically assistance for folks who are homeless more than once in a lifetime, which obviously can happen, so probably reflects reality, I guess I'm curious about how we might structure that beyond just some aid payment. Is there no way to then assist folks maybe with, you know, getting into, you know, it may not be supportive housing, maybe in housing that they're sustainable on their own, but I guess I'm curious about that. That's a, that's a big bump.
I'm going to ask Ms. Edwards to respond to that.
As a result of the change in the legislation, we have seen a significant increase of families coming into our DHA offices requesting emergency homeless assistance, and that's what that pool of funds, and that's based on actual experience this past year since the law has changed. And what we do is we give them some emergency assistance, it could be cash, could be a motel voucher, it could be something to catch up their rent so that they're not evicted. So it comes in a variety of, the assistance comes in a variety of forms.
Well, how is it integrated with what else we're doing though? Because again, I think to keep you people from falling into homelessness is great, but, I mean, obviously there's some qualifying requirements, I guess, and so, but if you have cash assistance and if it's, is that done on a monthly basis, or is it?
No, it's one-time assistance, and then we link them up with the CalWorks Housing Support Program to try and get them into permanent housing. So it's not just we give them cash and send them on their way. We give them the assistance so that they're not sleeping outside or in their car that particular evening, and then we hook them up immediately with our staff in the bureaus, social work staff, working in the housing support program to help get them housed.
Do we work with outside providers, partner providers?
We do with, well, no, the Housing Support Program is run by the county, the CalWorks Housing Support Program is run by county staff.
So what avenues do they have available to them, and that, you know, beyond, you know, maybe knowing what's available for a motel voucher, but I mean, again, we have a housing challenge, you know, people call it crisis, and, you know, it may very well be that, but, you know, as far as that ability, I'm just trying to get some sense about coordinating with that, so that beyond, you said one time, so if it's a lifetime, so if they repealed it, so how do they just get one time, that they couldn't come back?
It used to be once in a lifetime, and now they can get it once a year.
Now it's once a year?
Once a year. Used to be once in a lifetime, now they can get it annually. And we do link people up with self-help housing resources, and frankly, I'm excited about the housing assistance provider that we're going to bring on board, because I'm hoping that we can link up with them as well to house these families.
So the $2.1 million is based upon what, the experience over the last year?
Since the law has changed, yes.
Okay, thanks. Okay, any questions for Cindy? All right, if not, thank you, Cindy, thanks, Paul. All right, do you have anything further before we get to public testimony?
That was it.
Okay, very good. All right, then we have four or five speakers on the Health and Human Services and probably 10 or so on homelessness and a couple on other items, so we'll go right into this right now, and...
And then will we break after that?
We can.
Good idea.
Okay, all right, very good.
Glad you thought of it.
I'm glad you suggested it. I'm fine with this, so.
Close session, and...
Yeah, we have a close session. Okay, and then we will return this afternoon for deliberations. Okay, with that then, I'll call the first three speakers, Brenda Dabney, David Ballard, and Roy Alexander. If you had any particular order that folks wanted to go in, I see, that's fine. Brenda, good afternoon, good and morning still.
Thank you and good morning, almost still good morning. My name is Brenda Dabney, I am the Northern California Regional Director of the Children's Law Center of California. I have met with some of you over the last couple of weeks to talk about the children, the foster care system, and the need to really strengthen a lot of the placement and housing services and treatment services that they receive. I'm here today to ask you to consider the request by Child Protective Services for additional mental health treatment services for our very most needy clients that are in, finding themselves in the foster care system, some of whom are at the CPSU or at the Children's Receiving Home, some of them have yet to be removed from their parents as of yet, but you will see them in the next several months. As background, the Children's Law Center is a court-appointed counsel for the almost 2,800 kids who are currently in the foster care system here in Sacramento County. We, as attorneys and investigative social workers, see the impact of the abuse and neglect that our clients experience every day in court, in their homes, in the community, in their school environments. We work with children from a wide range of backgrounds who have experienced initially abuse and neglect from parents, then rejection sometimes from foster parents, instability in the group homes that they're placed in, and then in the most egregious cases predatory conduct by those who would target them as a result of the lack of a caring, nurturing environment that the foster care system is able to provide them with in some cases. With so many complex mental health issues in their lives, it's imperative that appropriate mental health treatment be provided as a part of their way to healing. More than that, under the Medi-Cal program, mental health treatment is an entitlement for these young people, who are the responsibility of Sacramento County. Locating safe and stable placements with the appropriate mental health services must be our number-one priority for these young people. Right now, and I'm sure you'll hear more about this from other speakers, Sacramento County needs to have additional capacity to meet the needs of the mental health required from these, of these children in our county's foster care system. We're sending many of these children to other counties right now, because we don't have enough mental health services to provide the foster youth here in our own county. In fact, you'll hear about many of the current intensive mental health placements here in Sacramento County that are being used for children of other counties. Yolo, Placer, and other places are able to pay for the services, yet our county is not making them a priority to treat our own children that are in foster care. This should not be happening. Children and youth in Sacramento deserve at least the same treatment that children in other counties are receiving. Wraparound, intensive treatment foster care, and other specialized mental health treatments must be made available to our children, and I ask that you vote today to approve the additional funding.
Thanks, Brenda, appreciate your comments. Okay, David, Roy Alexander, then Diana White?
Thank you, members of the board. My name is David Ballard, I'm the CEO of the Children's Receiving Home of Sacramento, and I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for both your consideration and hopefully support of the expanded funding, particularly as it relates to the Children's Receiving Home. We have a close longstanding partnership, as you know, with Sacramento County, and we serve some of the most vulnerable children coming from some of the most vulnerable families at the worst time in their lives. The funding in front of you today will allow us to take care of these kids better with deeper staffing. As Brenda referred to, we've got to work with kids who have significant mental health issues, substance abuse issues, and a lot of other behaviors that they built around themselves to really protect themselves, but they come from a world of hurt and they live in a world of pain, and the money will be well-invested in the future of these children and these families in this community, and I thank you so much for considering that. It is mental health, it is substance abuse, there's just a constellation of factors as these kids are serving, and whatever we can bring to the table to help them, to intervene early, will be monies well-invested and save us a lot of monies poorly spent later on, and I appreciate your consideration of the proposal. Thanks, Dave.
Okay, Roy, Diana, and then Demetrius Stone.
Hello, my name is Roy Alexander. Today I'm speaking on behalf of the Behavioral Health Contractors Association Sacramento County, representing 20 contract agencies and 2,000 employees, citizens of this county. I'll keep my remarks very briefly, you can get on to your break, and we are requesting a reconsideration of a denied proposal to give us a 2% increase in our budget. We recognize that this board has supported us in the last few years with additional funding, however, none of that has translated in contract language to be able to increase pay to staff. We're facing the challenges of increased minimum wage over the years, we are in a very highly competitive field to recruit staff, and the pay gap between our contract associated employees and everybody else in the mental health field is widening dramatically, which creates huge vacancies in positions and a very rapid turnover in staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Roy, for representation on behalf of the other contractors as well, so. Okay, Diana White? She had to leave, okay, Diana had to leave, okay, and then I'd have Demetrius Stone. Demetrius? And I know you submitted a letter on behalf of the Children's Coalition as well, so, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Demetrius Stone, I have the honor of serving as the vice chairperson for the Sacramento County Children's Coalition. Here today to respectfully request to approve the expanded budget for, as it relates to continuum care reform, which really the need for the staffing increases in CPS as well as expanded mental health services and wraparound services. I know you have in front of you Andrew Keller, I know was here last month and provided you with both the letter of support as well as the letter from the Sacramento County Children's Coalition as far as our plans and our report, so I know you have a copy of that already, but I wanted to make sure you had an additional copy in case that got lost somehow from the last meeting. Again, it's really important for the Sacramento County Children's Coalition to support these efforts. As was mentioned by Dr. Heller, Mr. Lake, and Mr. Gill, expanding the wraparound services and mental health services, specifically increasing CPS staffing, really allows the CPSUs to focus on recruitment, retention, and family finding for the most neediest and vulnerable children. The next steps for the Sacramento County Children's Coalition will continue to monitor the CCR efforts in conjunction with Department of Health and Human Research, Department of Health and Human Services, as well as CPS, and we'll do that by creating a formal plan to monitor the issues and fiscal impacts, which we will certainly include in any follow-up reports to the Board of Supervisors. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Demetrius, appreciate you being here today. Okay, that's all I had, our Health and Human Services, anyone else on that category that didn't catch, okay? So then we're going to move to homelessness, and I know a number of folks here on behalf of St. John's, maybe others as well, so I'm just going to call these in order that I received them, but if there was a particular order that, particular St. John's that you wanted to proceed in, I don't know if Michelle, you wanted to lead that off or not, but, so I would have Michelle, then Tim Murphy, and Kevin Peterson, followed by Robert Dugan and Michelle Wong.
Thank you. Tim Murphy had to leave for a prior engagement, so you can take him out of the mix, but we can add in Nicole Brock, who's one of our graduates of the program, so...
Okay, hi, Nicole.
Hi. Thank you for having us. I have a couple slides, so...
By the way, put her face up if you could.
Thank you. I haven't done this one before.
All right.
Okay, as I think all of you know, St. John's operates the largest shelter in the county with a current capacity, the only one focused on women and children. Our current daily capacity is up to 270 women and children with an annual capacity of 1,000 women and children. We believe and we regularly state that there isn't a one-size-fits-all solution for homelessness, that there needs to be multiple pathways for those trying to enter in and exit out of the system. In July this year, we opened a new facility, expanding our capacity by 90 women and children, which... which translates to 450 annually. This new facility is virtually at capacity, and we're actually at an all-time high on our waiting list, which is now over 400 women and children every day. I want to just mention that that new facility was made possible without help from the county. We didn't ask you for help. We went to the Federal Home Loan Bank and got some support. We went to the City of Sacramento, the Buzz Oats Group, HomeAid, there were a lot of different partners in that, and to really benefit the growing problem of homelessness in the county. Next slide. It costs St. John's an average of $14,000 to move someone, an individual, from homelessness to self-sustainability. Patrick, I think it was you who shared with me that Sutter did a study showing that it's about $49,000 to have a homeless individual in the system. If you look at HUD estimates, it's anywhere between $50,000 and $100,000 to have someone in the system for a year, and not only is that $14,000 important for one year, but our program gets them up and out of the system. They're working and they're able to sustain themselves for years beyond. In 2017, our annual operating budget was about $7 million, is about $7 million. For every dollar the county invests in St. John's, it's leveraged by an additional $9 that St. John's raises or earns to support homeless women and children to permanently exit poverty and dependence. When a woman with two children enters St. John's, her monthly income is a public subsidy of $426. When she exits, when she completes our program, her average monthly income does not include a subsidy, and it's $1,850 of earned income that she earns herself. In 2016, 20 women and 46 children were successfully reunited through our program. Given our clean and sober environment and many of our CPS-approved classes, families are reunited much more quickly, and that's a savings of $9,000 per month per family on estimate, at minimum. For 15 years, the County of Sacramento has contracted with St. John's to serve homeless women and children. That contract amount has varied between $730,000 annually and $775,000, with different funding sources backing up that contract. For the past six years, it's been largely funded through CalWorks with a small amount of general fund dollars as of late. 10 years ago, we were a 30-day emergency shelter, serving up to 100 women and children for 30 days with a budget of 1.1 million. Today, we now serve up to 270 clients each day through a 12- to 18-month life transformative program with a $6 million operating budget, and the county's level of support for St. John's is now being suggested to be reduced to zero, and we're wondering why. I'm going to close with this slide. So, the $730,000 impact, the contract that we've held for, as I mentioned, over 15 years, Mr. Lake mentioned that it's 19 units. What you need to understand is that's 19 mothers and about 58 children, so, 48 children, so it's a total of about 60 people. 38 children, I guess, right? So, 30 children. So, it's a total of about 60 people, which translates to 180 annually. It's not just 19 people, it is a lot more people than that, but there's more ramifications. We have a lot of per capita funding that this would jeopardize to the tune of another $767,000, which would result in about a $1.5 million loss. On top of that, I mentioned earlier that the two funding sources that came to the table to open our new facility, one was a Federal Home Loan Bank grant, 15-year forgivable loan, that requires us to operate at a certain capacity in order to maintain that loan and to continue our mission. The City of Sacramento's loan was structured just the same way. So if we drop down by 60 women and children, we're going to be forced to close that new facility, and that will not just result in the loss of 450 people not being served, 450 women and children annually, but the burden to St. John's is about $3 million, and that is something we would not be able to afford to make happen. So, I'm going to invite Nicole Brock, who is a graduate of St. John's program. She went on to start a truck-driving company, and then we pulled her back in when we started doing transportation, and now she is a pretty senior manager with St. John's, and I invited her to come and share a little bit about her story and what she sees happening at St. John's.
Okay, thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
Okay, Nicole, good afternoon.
Good morning, my name's Nicole Brock. I am, as Michelle said, I am now a successful owner of a trucking company, but seven years ago, in 2010, I showed up at St. John's homeless, spoken with a 20-year drug addiction with me. Over that course of 20 years, I had been in many programs that were mostly just housing, you know, just housing us, and when I got to St. John's, the difference there was that they showed me the ways to stay clean and sober. They taught me, my biggest thing and my biggest fight at work is to teach the girls how to budget money and how to, you know, the wants over the needs.
Get your nails done.
Getting your nails done. I tell them, you know, they're like, you know, this was my, what I got after I got out of the program, never in the program, but one of the biggest things that St. John's taught me as a woman was to be independent. I'm happily married. My husband and I both met on the streets while we were both in our addiction, and I learned to rely on him. He had been a truck driver prior to his addiction, and after we got clean the first time, or so we thought, he taught me how to drive a truck, so we were team drivers for five years together, and then addiction came back and took everything that we had built for those five years, take it right back from us, that was prior to coming to the program. So what they taught me as a woman was, I am no longer reliant on my husband, I love him to death, and he pays for the finer things in our relationship, but as far as the household and the priorities, that's all me, that's all comes out of my budget, you know? And so I think that's our biggest thing, is that we need to teach our women that it's okay to have a significant other, but you need to be strong, independent women, and taking care of your family first and foremost, and losing these funds would be detrimental to us, our program, just seeing what happens in the course of the 18 months with our women, and then they come back, you know, years later, and to be successful is just so rewarding.
Very good, Nicole. Well, thank you for sharing your story, and congratulations to you. Thanks, Michelle, thanks, Nicole, stand by. Okay, we have some other speakers in as well, so we have Kevin Peterson, followed by Robert Dugan, followed by Michelle Wong.
Good afternoon, my name's Kevin Peterson. I am on the Board of Directors at St. John's Program for Real Change for about 15 months now. I worked for Kaiser Permanente in South Sacramento and lead the Human Resources function there. Since I joined Kaiser, it's been very important to us to be involved in this community, and homelessness and behavioral health are critical issues that we're addressing as an organization. I heard about St. John's prior to joining Kaiser about three or four years ago through a church in Midtown Sacramento, and it stuck with me because what's different about this program is that it doesn't just provide a house, a roof, and a meal, it provides long-term change for women and children. The story that you just heard Nicole tell, we can tell hundreds of times, because this shelter does change lives. In order to do that, we were asking for your assistance in providing the funding to help us to continue to do that. Lots of facts and figures today about the homeless problem, clearly it's large and it's going to take all of us to get it done, so I'm asking for each of you to consider supporting St. John's, and again, help us continue to change lives in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin, thanks for your leadership as well, so. Okay, Robert, and then Michelle, and then Kevin Ramos, and then Braden Murphy.
I can't say good morning anymore, it's afternoon, I think.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair, Board, thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Robert Dugan, I'm the Senior Vice President of Public Policy and Economic Development for the Sacramento Metro Chamber. We're here today on behalf of our member businesses, civic organizations, and their employees throughout California's capital region, and we're here to urge you to stay the course on your historic efforts to provide steady support for the organizations that are making a difference with some of our most vulnerable populations in the homeless sector. We know there's a lot of issues facing our region, you've got your hands full on a number of fronts, but we know that homelessness is one of those extremely complex, extremely difficult issues that affects so many people in so many different ways. At the same time, you've all rolled up your sleeves, you've all worked hard on this issue over several years, and I'd be remiss if in this statement we didn't at least stop and acknowledge the fact that you and your colleagues, and some of your colleagues with other jurisdictions, are working hard on this issue, because it's not going to be solved overnight, and it's not going to be solved in an easy fashion, otherwise we'd be done. From the Chamber's perspective, we see that this issue has to be tackled on three fronts. First, we have to make sure that we're honoring the human needs of our region's homeless population, you guys have certainly been focused on that. Second, we have to address the root issues that are contributing to or exacerbating the homeless situation, those are issues like the economy, available housing, certainly the mental health and substance abuse issues, domestic violence, et cetera. And then, of course, finally, we have to work to help every jurisdiction adopt some level of uniform enforcement ordinance, so that we can ensure that our community, our businesses, and our open space corridors are safe for everyone concerned, because we need those folks to support us as we try and come up with a solution to this difficult challenge. We know it's hard, if it weren't, you'd be done by now, right? Because you've certainly put in the midnight oil, burned the midnight oil trying to come to a solution. Relative to today's budget and the reason we're here, we would encourage you to find a way to stay the course. Don't be distracted by the whiplash of rhetoric, which seems to be all around us right now, there's a new solution, a new idea for almost everything, the shiny penny syndrome, and often that leads to a drop in productivity as we reboot things. We know that the comprehensive solution is elusive and is going to require a lot of different approaches and a lot of different steps, but we can't afford not to support those solutions that you've already fueled and are showing measurable results. So, to that end, you've played an important role in helping our most vulnerable homeless populations, mothers and children, get off the streets, work to transition from tax consumers to taxpayers, which is, you know, it's a key element, it's one, there's a lot, I understand, but it's one element where we know it's working, and because of your support, historic support, that steady support, that has actually flourished, that's one area we're doing great in, we would encourage you to find a way to maintain that steady support. And I also want to make sure, you know, we put it on the record, you also need to take a moment to take a deep breath and be proud of the efforts that you've put into this, even when it's difficult, because all too often, folks are standing here saying, you got to do this next, right? And a lot has been done. So with that, the Chamber stands with you in support as we continue to address this challenging issue, and if there's anything we can do to support, let us know, but we're wading deep into this issue, just addressed it with our exec comm and our full board this last two weeks, and we'll be here to support you as you do this hard work. Thank you.
Thanks, Robert, appreciate your comments. Okay, Michelle, then Kevin Ramos, and then Braden Murphy.
Hi, I'm Michelle Wong, Director and Owner of Synneur Jackson, President and CEO of Clean World. I'm here as a business owner today to support the use of county funds to provide women and children the opportunity to escape poverty permanently. It's much more practical to allow women to become self-sustainable and raise their children themselves, rather than to simply provide temporary shelter. St. John's Women and Children's Program for Change has a history of success with women such as Nicole, and I think being able to provide women the tools and the resources to allow them to become self-sustainable not only provides jobs for them, but also provides the children an opportunity for a stable environment and an education, and will avoid them going into that same poverty situation. So overall, I believe that this is the most practical way to spend the money for ending homelessness on a more permanent situation. Thanks for your time.
Great, thank you, Michelle, appreciate it. Okay, Kevin, and then we have Braden, and then Dave Klanger, and Phil Tengloff. Hello. Hi, Kevin, good to see you.
Good afternoon. I'm Kevin Ramos, I'm on the executive team of the Buzz Oats Organization locally. I'm on the Board of Directors of St. John's, I'm the Chair of their Finance Committee. So my comments there are going to pertain to numbers, mostly. But as you know, the county has contributed to St. John's operations for some 15 years at an average of $700,000 to $750,000 per year. And I'm here to show you today what a great deal you guys have been getting, and what kind of leverage you get out of those funds. But as, I'll start with, you know, St. John's used to go by St. John's Shelter. We've now changed the name to St. John's Program, because we think it's much more than a shelter, it's an actual program in which people go through and become self-sufficient. But to give you an idea, I mean, Michelle mentioned in her presentation, I think some of the initial budgets were under $2 million, a million and a half, $2 million. I just took some numbers from our financial statement the last couple of years, you know, our budget in 2014 was $3.6 million. Government assistance was about $700,000 of that, which was the county, which was about 20%. That grew to $5.4 million in 2016, government assistance went to $1.5 million, county being about half of that, so overall government assistance was 27%, county share was about 13%. And this year, our budget is about $7.5 million. Again, government assistance about 1.7%, I mean, $1.7 million, or about 20% of the overall budget, with the county being, you know, about a third of that. We've also attracted new funds to the operation over the last few years. We identified the USDA SNAP funds, brought that into the organization this last year, about $1.1 million in our operations. It's great to see that's expanded to other county programs also now that are taking advantage of that. We're also finalizing, or I finalize, and are ready to implement a program with the State Department of Corrections to further expand our program and offer those services to the state. And so to do this expansion, it's required new facilities over the years, and that's kind of how I got involved with St. John's back in 2010, 2011, they were searching for a facility. We got engaged in that and helped into that process. So, in 2014, they expanded and opened the new facility on Jackson Road, about a $3.5 million project. In 2017, this last year, a month or two ago, we just opened the new project right next door, another expansion about $2 million, 90 additional beds. And then we're also doing the CCTRP program with the State Department of Corrections, which is about another $500,000 investment in our old shelter on Power and Road. About $6 million in capital investments over the last five years, pretty impressive, all done with either government grants from the state and feds and private sector money. I'll wrap this up here, but we've had real property donations in excess of $1 million, Federal Home Loan Bank and two different, you know, zero-interest loans to $1.9 million, Housing and Community Development Loan, $600,000, actually $1.1 million. City of Sacramento threw a loan in for $600,000 for the shelter we just opened, and we've had private financing, below-market financing from private donors in excess of $1 million. So over, you know, $5.5, $6 million of private capital or government, federal, state grants have gone in to expanding this program. So, yes, you know, the county $700,000 may not be that significant portion of our budget, but it's very important in our underlying operations, and allows us to leverage these other proceeds to deliver these services. So, we think it's a great use of government money, where you can get this level of leverage out of your proceeds, and quite frankly, we think it would be, you know, just a shame if the county pulled these funds and what that does to this operation with the success and growth it's had over the last, you know, five to 10 years. So we thank you for your commitment over that time, appreciate you listening to us today, and look forward to your future deliberations. Thank you.
Good, thank you, Kevin, appreciate you sharing that with us. Okay, next, got Braden, and then Dave Klanger.
Yes, thank you, I just, I wanted to quickly circle back to the IHSS. When I walked in the room, there's not even a color coding for IHSS, which is too bad, and a lot of the reason why more people can't come to these things is if you're somebody who needs IHSS care, it's very hard for you to get out and get to a meeting like this, and then on behalf of the caretakers, they're giving in-home supportive care 24 hours to disabled people that need care, so that's why more people can't advocate for themselves, and I just really hope you guys do something about the nightmare that is the low. I couldn't disagree more with the guy that spoke from the chambers. It is our job to come tell you guys how bad you're doing. And you could celebrate your little successes in your home if you want to. There's thousands of people out on the streets. And the solutions are simple for a lot of them. I'm a homeless advocate, and I actually think the homeless benefits are too much. Homeless people are getting around $1,000 a month, and then they're spending it on the fourth day, and then they're broke. What they need is a place to go. They need somewhere to take their dog and their shopping cart where they're not going to be rained on. And like I've said over and over, we need to open up some tent city. People get scared of the concept of tent cities, but the reality is that thousands of homeless people are still around, they're still lurking in neighborhoods, they're creating their own unregulated tent cities. What we need is to open up a tent city, bring three meals a day, have porta-potties there, and have police regulating the tent city so it'll be safer for all residents, and it would be better for these people that are suffering. It would also be a lot cheaper than anything that's being advocated for. The fiscal irresponsibility of this county is unbelievable, with the exception of Sue Frost. I thought the way that she explained it was really good about, "We're not just going to spend more and more money. We've already spent numerous amounts of money." And what, when we, I'm talking about the American River Parkway where we just, where you guys voted to spend $5 million to displace homeless folks. So it's not about, for me, what's in the budget for the homeless people. It's about what are we doing right now? Phil Serna is so disingenuous when he tries to point out the shelter for 75 people, "Oh, let's make sure we point out it's 300 annually." Well, that shelter, Phil Serna's own words, are not going to be opened until a year from this summer. So people that are getting pulled off of the parkway, they're are going to suffer, it's going to be pushed down to the city. We need to end anti-camping ordinances, and we need to create low barrier to entry places where the homeless people can go. Then send your navigators there, and then with the people that are succeeding there, that's where you take people to permanent housing. The answer is not permanent housing for everybody, but we cannot allow people to just suffer on the streets. So at the cheapest possible way it can be done, we need to get people off the streets and get them what they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Braden. Okay. Thank you for your comments. Okay. Next, Dave Cloninger, followed by Mike, Mark Weiss, Andrea Anderson, and Phil Telgenhoff. I may have got those out of order a little bit. I think I called Phil a little earlier, so sorry about that.
Thank you very much. My name is Dave Cloninger. Day job is Vice President with Merrill Lynch here in town. My passion is actually St. John's. So I've been on the board, one of the longest-tenured board members at a little over eight years. I'm turning off. They're, I'm trying to get off. No, I'm kidding. They're trying to kick me off. I'm kidding. But I'm, I'm more of a storyteller, though. I just want to give you just a slight, just a brief historical perspective on St. John's. So when I joined the board, it really was that 30-day emergency shelter. And I remember one of the first board meetings, I asked Michelle, I said, "Michelle, so tell me what the recidivism rate is." So, you know, they go through the 30 days, they try to find, you know, job programs, slight job program, get them employed. And she came back the next board meeting and she said, "88%." So 88% of the gals that were coming through the program felt right back to where they came from. And that's unacceptable, obviously. So you look at the work, you fast-forward to today, and the shelter becoming a program, and you have the Plates Cafe and the Work Program, and yes, it's a six-to-nine-month program. But you look at the success rate, because now we have the gears under our belt to measure that, and it's now well in excess of 90% success. So you go from almost 90% failure to 90% success. That tells you right then and there that it works. So me being a private citizen, you know, I pay my taxes. I don't give up my dollars willingly. I give my dollars to St. John's in a heartbeat because I know it works. I've seen it firsthand, I've seen gals like Nicole, time and time again, get through the program, become employed, stay employed. So as far as, you know, excuse me, the government dollars, and you can see that we went, we also went from 80% government-funded down to less than 30, as Kevin pointed out. So as far as knowing where the dollars and cents are going, it's going to a good place that's going to work now, you know, for us being tax-paying citizens, but for all Sacramento, it's just going to make Sacramento a better place. So really, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Appreciate your comments. Okay. Mark, Andrea, and Phil.
Good afternoon, Chairman Natoli, members of the board, Mark Weiss. I'm President of Pacific Housing, a nonprofit affordable housing development provider, but we're also on the board of St. John's. I want to reiterate what everyone said behind me, and I'll be brief, but, and add a couple of things. But in, I believe it was in February, I was here with Michelle before you when we were discussing RFPs and funding actions for these funds coming out where the Housing First Model was promoted heavily, which is a program that works in some capacities, but it isn't 100% program with all these funds. We stood before you and, and I basically said, you know, "Share, share what you have a little bit." We have an ongoing program at St. John's that has utilized these funds. Don't completely cast it aside. That seemed to happen, and here we are before you. We're looking for resources that you are offering up, or hopefully going to be offering up, to balance that back out and backfill it. So with that, this $730,000, it's, it is, as Kevin reiterated, it's 10% of the budget, but it's not simply cutting costs by 10%. Figure this is 10% of an engine. If 10% of an engine isn't there, it doesn't work. So that's where we're at. Thank you very much.
Good. Thanks, Mark. Thanks for your comments. Okay. Andrea, and then Phil.
Good afternoon, Chairman Natoli, members of the board, Mark Weiss. I'm President of Pacific Housing, a nonprofit affordable housing development and provider, but we're also on the board of St. John's. I want to reiterate what everyone said behind me, and I'll be brief, but, and add a couple of things. But in, I believe it was in February, I was here with Michelle before you when we were discussing RFPs and funding actions for these funds coming out where the Housing First Model was promoted heavily, which is a program that works in some capacities, but it isn't 100% program with all these funds. We stood before you and, and I basically said, you know, "Share, share what you have a little bit." We have an ongoing program at St. John's that has utilized these funds. Don't completely cast it aside. That seemed to happen, and here we are before you. We're looking for resources that you are offering up, or hopefully going to be offering up, to balance that back out and backfill it. So with that, this $730,000, it's, it is, as Kevin reiterated, it's 10% of the budget, but it's not simply cutting costs by 10%. Figure this is 10% of an engine. If 10% of an engine isn't there, it doesn't work. So that's where we're at. Thank you very much.
Good. Thanks, Mark. Thanks for your comments. Okay. Andrea, and then Phil.
Good afternoon, Chairman Natoli, members of the board. I'm the Director of Marketing at KVI Public Television. I am, along with Dave, have been on the board now for eight years, still can't get away. I believe passionately in this program. It's part of the reason that I joined initially with the program. I've been the head of the Marketing Committee. I've been involved in a lot of the name changes and the branding that's gone on with this organization. And what you guys are seeing nowadays and what you're hearing from the number of business people that have gotten up here and talked about is, is the result of a lot of work over eight years to figure out a problem that we all grapple with here in this community. And that's how to do, address and deal with homelessness and the root causes. And St. John's is a program that has proven success with that. When I joined this board eight years ago, I saw this program as a proven public-private partnership that was working, because we had the support of Sacramento County and have had that the entire time I've been on the board. When I went out and did firsthand interview with folks around the community asking about the St. John's program, it was always recognized the support that we did receive from the county, but also the support that we had from the private sector as well. And I think this is an excellent example for our community of a public-private partnership that has been working. The women like Nicole that come in, those is what keeps us, the members of the board, going and hearing those stories every day. We know we have a proven model for success here and would really appreciate your consideration in continuing that and seeing that move forward.
Great. Thank you, Andrea, for your comments. Okay, Phil. My apologies, I called you earlier, then you got shuffled back by my error. So anyway, thanks, Phil.
No problem. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Phil Telgenhoff. I'm the Senior Vice President for the Allstate Insurance Company, and my role is, I get to lead the state of California for Allstate. We happen to be headquartered, our state headquarters, in Rancho Cordova. In Sacramento County, we have about 25 agency owners, and we insure over 40,000 households in the area. I've served on the St. John's Board now for three years. And at St. John's, think about our mission, our vision. It's, it's to break the cycle of poverty, abuse, and dependence, and it's one family at a time. And I think that statement, the breaking the cycle, is the key statement in our mission. We've been, we've been highly successful at breaking that cycle. And we've enabled self-sufficiency for so many women and their children, as evidenced by Nicole and her amazing story in her truck-driving business. Today, I want to urge the supervisors to restore the funding, ask the county to restore the funding levels for St. John's, not only because it's the right thing to do, but also because it is a strong return on investment for the county. The impact on families is even more compelling. It's vital also that we understand how shifting these funds away from St. John's can create an unsustainable financial domino effect into our system, which is, again, as you've heard, the largest shelter in the county. We've helped a lot of families in Sacramento County, and we want to help more. There's a lot more work to do, and we want to get started doing that, and we don't want to put these services at risk. So, thank you.
Good. Well, thank you, Phil. Thank you for your comments. Okay, those, the speakers I had on the homeless programs, any others on that? All right. If not, then I've got two other speakers for other funding areas, and I'll take those two. I have Mary Lou Powers and Emily Butler. And we'll hear from them, and then I think, get any board comments before we go into, you know, the noon recess, and we'll come back for deliberations this afternoon. So, but we do want to hear from folks. And so I'll invite Mary Lou, and then Emily after her. And for those that may leave on St. John's, we're going to take that into consideration. We just aren't going to make any determination right yet, so, okay.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and other supervisors. Thank you very much for having me. My name is Mary Lou Powers, been here many times before. I am the Director of South County Services. We're located in Galt, and I like to consider ourselves the last fort in Sacramento County, helping at-risk homeless families, low-income, whoever's down there that we can help with a need. We have been receiving funding from the Department of Human Assistance for over 20 years, usually in the form of an RFP for $300,000. In 2008, funding kind of went a little sideways, and we received less than that, but we were fortunate enough to get CSBG funding funneled through CalWorks, funneled through SEDAT down to us, so we could still sustain working for a full year. Some of the services that we do down in South County Services, although we're located in Galt, we serve the River Delta area. We go all the way to Ileton, we're there one day a week. We're in Walnut Grove one day a week. We serve all the areas down there, from Cortland down. We also go out to Wilton, Harold, and Hood, anything in between. We service a wide area. And there, I wanted to introduce to you my whole facility, and that's me and my three employees here. So four of us do all of that on a basis for a very long time. We're very proud of the numbers we do. We are consistently okay with our numbers down there. Since we've gone back down into Walnut Grove and Ileton, I've noticed that we are really funding a lot more money for food. And I said to Maria, "Jeez, Maria, how come, you know, the food is going up so much down there?" And she said, "Well, Mary Lou, you don't realize that there are about 20 mobile home areas down there for low-income people, and a lot of people are living on their boats, and they have no way to get to the store or anything. So their food stamps or whatever are used at the local market who charges, you know, three times as much for a quart of milk. So they're constantly running out of funding because they're, you know, stuck between a rock and a hard spot." And I just wanted to let you know, this is some of the things that we do at South County Services. We provide food, eviction avoidance assistance, utility assistance. We have a gentleman that comes in twice a month for immigration services. We give gas vouchers to people that need to go to the doctor or have to go to a job interview. We also do translation services to our 43% of the population which is down in our area. We have two bilingual staff. We have a clothes closet down there which is used more than I can even tell you. We have people in there every day looking for, for clothing. They just, even clothing to get their children to school, they just, they don't have that, the wherewithal to get any of that, or the money. We do eye exam referrals. We've done it to over 25 people last year. We work with the Lions Club. We do all the paperwork for them. We have a doctor down there that will do exams, and we do charge $20 for the eyeglasses. We also do diapers and formulas through the church. We give the Catholic Church down there. We have funding with them to supply diapers and formula to a lot of the women down in our area. We have Brown Bag, which is for senior citizens. We have about 250 families that we serve food to once a month out of our community center. Other things we do is outreach. We're always trying to outreach and let everybody know where we are and what we can provide. And we do a lot of referrals by phone, and I'm just going to put a little dig in here and say that we are one of the few organizations that do answer our phone every day, so we are available when anybody wants to talk to us. And I wanted to introduce the girls to you because I think that it's important that you know how committed the staff is. You know, we can look at numbers all day, and these girls look at people every day, and they know a lot of the hard times that go on wherever it's going on. So I'd like them to stand, and I'd like to tell you about Maria. Maria is a total advocate for all of the Delta area. There is not one person in Ileton, there's Maria, not one person in Ileton, Walnut Grove, anywhere up and down that area doesn't know Maria. She is an advocate for everyone down there. She uses her phone all the time. She will go out at night or on a weekend if somebody is desperate and needs something. So we're not just eight to five people. She's out there all the time. Then we have Gloria, and Jennifer, who pretty much manned the Galt office. Gloria's bilingual, and there is not another person in town that doesn't know Gloria. So Gloria's had to take to going shopping late at night so she could get her groceries and get home. Jennifer is one of our wonderful success stories. She started off young. She was a welfare-to-work employee, and now she mans our food closet. She's rushing out twice, three times a month to go to Rayleigh's in an old van that we have to pick up all the pallets of food that we have to distribute. And she's gotten very good at breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and also ordering produce now and meat. So they get a great variety of food when they get a bag that Jennifer's put her love into. We've, like I said, we've been lucky enough to always get $300,000 funded from the county. This year, unfortunately, the RFP was only for $161,000. We're short $130,000. We need that to sustain us. We've, we've been living on the same budget for
Ages.
Ages. And so I'm asking you, if you could please find it in your hearts to keep us going down there. If not, and I've been here a couple of times before to tell you, the sad news would be, we would have to close our offices in December, and you would have a huge influx of people trying to get their way up here to get their services. So I just want to thank you for your time. Thank you for all the times that you've committed to us, and hope that you will continue to support us in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary Lou. Thanks, ladies, for all your good work, too, so. Okay. And then we have one other speaker, that's Emily Butler. And thanks, Mary Lou, and thanks, ladies, for being here. Okay, Emily. And it's related to the Splash program and a contract we've had, but again, have not put it up for renewal, and so I will hear from Emily, and then we'll take all this under advisement during the noon hour. So Emily.
Good afternoon, Chairman Natoli, members of the board. My name is Emily Butler, and I am the Executive Director of Sacramento Splash. We are a local nonprofit dedicated to building a generation of children who take an active role in protecting water and habitat. Splash exists thanks to the extraordinary leadership of Sacramento County Department of Water Resources, City of Sacramento Department of Utilities, and Regional SAN.
Some people will say that the Splash Elementary Program is an expensive way to achieve outreach, and they might have a point. The truth is, you can produce a lot of brochures for the cost of deeply educating one child. But the relative value of different outreach strategies is a debate for another day. Right now, we appreciate the priorities are shifting, and the appropriate level of investment in community-based stormwater education will be an ongoing conversation, one in which we hope this board will engage. Given that the details of the county's public outreach program have yet to be worked out, it seems premature to eliminate a highly successful stormwater education resource that the county has been building for nearly two decades. At the request of DWR staff, Splash has agreed to make modifications to the elementary program curriculum in order to help the county refocus its stormwater messaging on new priorities. We are also excited to pilot a new leadership lesson in the elementary program that gives classes the tools they need to engage their families and communities in preventing water pollution. But in order to move forward, we need some certainty. Splash requests an approximately $114,000 contract with DWR to fund those 32 county classes who are hoping to register tomorrow morning. They rely on this program to meet their science standards, and the consequences of letting them down at this late hour are very serious. Beyond that, we merely request the opportunity to offer our expert team of educators and outreach coordinators to work with the county and its co-permittees during this fiscal year. Together, we can update stormwater education objectives to reflect new realities and work to ensure that Splash programming executes those objectives at the highest level. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Good. Thanks, Emily. Thanks for being here today, and off your comments. Okay, so, did anyone else wish to address the board on any item that's on the budget and/or any other item? Okay, if not, then we have three requests for board consideration. If I can summarize those, we have St. John's, obviously, full funding for the remaining portion of the year would be about $540,000, if I do the calculation correctly. Okay, well, if somebody can, I guess somebody up there's crunching numbers, but, and I think, and there is emergency to that one, not unlike the other two, that one, I think their current contract with the county will expire at the end of this month, about 24 days, and so, I think that discussion needs to come back this afternoon, as to both maybe bridge, as well as long-term funding prospects. $130,000 for South County Services, which, again, was a loss of the CSBG funding, and that would provide a full-year funding, as I understand it. And then, $114,000 Splash, that's stormwater utility funding, as I understand, so that may not be general fund, unlike the other two. So, those are the requests that I at least have. And if there are other board members that want anything else on the docket for consideration this afternoon, we need to come back to those, so.
So, if I could just rephrase that a little bit.
Sure.
On the first item with St. John's, basically, what the question in front of you then is for more temporary housing, emergency housing, whatever category
Transitional.
Transitional housing. And the issue there becomes that you can appropriate the money today, then there's a contracting issue that we've got to work out with county council, on what the contract will look like, what process we'll go through, which also applies to South County, which also applies to Splash. So, I just want to make sure, as we break on that, we'll work with county council to get some more guidance on, and we've been working with them for the last couple of weeks, on how, once the board makes the appropriation, the budgetary appropriation, how does then the money flow from the county to these agencies, or is it an RFP? What's the contracting process?
And we have existing contracts. These are set to expire and/or in place. Actually, for South County, as I understand, that's a contractual for the remaining portion of the fiscal year. For St. John's, obviously, we expire September 30th, and the Splash is currently out of contract, but I think that question's important for us, relative to our deliberations this afternoon, so.
It is important that this board set policy based upon the powers that come to the county as a political subdivision of the state. You are empowered, as a board, to make those policy decisions, and then it's for the purpose of performing state services or acquired services. At this point, we have a contract with South County for services that is accomplished. You know, it's at the end of its contract period.
No.
No, no.
That's incorrect.
No, no, I think
South County is not
Couple of things. All right, South County, the issue there is that we let out a RFP, and South County, one RFP with the board's approval for, I might be off on the numbers, 140. So, the legal question that we're working on is, if the board were to augment services for not South County, the entity, but South County, South Sacramento County, how do we then perfect augmenting that budget? Is it an RFP?
Right. To just give more money would be a gift to public funds, absent an increase in the amount of services performed.
Is that the same for all three requests?
It's very similar, in that we've done a request for proposals. We've set a contract term of services for a dollar amount. That's the policy that this board set. Then you had a fiscal analysis and program review, and the department had verification of the recommendation, and now we're at a point where no more services can be performed for the contract amount. So, it's a renegotiation process that we're looking to the board for a policy. When that wall is hit, is it in an increase of appropriation, or is it a process of fair, transparent, and good stewardship to make a fiduciary decision on how to reallocate more money?
So, if I could, Mr. Chair, the way I'm understanding our discussion this afternoon, we have an appropriation question that we're going to go through, if we're going to augment for these different components.
Correct.
Part two of that, what Mr. Vaughn and I are grappling with, is, once you do the appropriation, then what's the process we go through in acquiring the services that are required? For example, with Splash, that contract's expired, but there's an education component. How do we then go through a process to get those services into the county that is an RFP? What's the process we go through? That also applies to South County, which is a situation that there's a, whatever the dollar amount is, once you appropriate more money for services in the southern part of the county, how do we then augment or do something different?
Does that account, though, for a loss? I just want to be clear, where they had a funding that was actually another county source, that was, and I think Mary Lou was very clear about that, and I think that's been made known to you, that that, we funded it through a transaction with SETA that then awarded in exchange. So, they were receiving county funds from another source, and we knew the program costs $300,000 a year to administer the program for the services provided, so that hasn't changed.
I know this contract was a set amount. There was, in this process, there was an identified contractor willing to perform this set of services for this contract amount, and South County entered into this contract for this set amount.
I don't know what background's been provided, and we certainly can talk more about that, but I, but set amount or not, that there was, it was understood, the county was providing funding the time that contract was awarded last year, that, from another source. That money has dried up.
I think, Supervisor Natoli, if I just could jump in again, I don't mean to debate it at this point.
No, I know, but I'm making sure it's clear, you're making it clear, understood.
I just wanted to highlight that you have part one and part two of this. We're going to continue working on part two. Whatever decision we get this afternoon, I just wanted to highlight that I did not want folks to break, that there's a clear expectation that once you say that you want to do XYZ service, that automatically funds are going to flow to a particular contractor. We have to work that out. How do we set up the legal structure, and what do we need to do? I just, that was my sole purpose on that, as we break.
Well, that's fine. And maybe just bring to St. John's, and I got, and Supervisor Serna's punched in as well, that, yeah, if we've had a relationship with St. John's for a number of years, and it may be an emergency shelter, it may have been more recently for what's been transitional shelter, nonetheless, it's been over a number of years under contract. So, if we said we want to continue to be a partner with St. John's in their effort, and they've expanded that effort, we know what services being provided, then this board cannot make that determination to continue that relationship? We have to go back out to an RFP in order to do that?
The legal requirement for expenditures is providing those services. We don't, we don't make loan payments. We don't, your board
I'm not suggesting that, don't, I didn't say that.
I'm, they were compelling needs on their part, but we are legally bound to do a purchase in exchange for services, with the consideration as for services performed.
I understand that. Okay, Ms. Serna?
I just, to the point of clarification, I want to, I want to hear from our CEO before we break here. So, what I'm hearing is that, well, using St. John's as an example, if it was the will of the board to express an interest in augmenting the budget to keep them whole for another year at the requested amount, that the only action I'm hearing county council says that we can take is you can compartmentalize that amount, but by law, there would have to be a competitive bid process, similar to the one that they just went through, essentially, to determine the beneficiary of those public funds. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, there's no, in other words, there's no guarantee, is what you're saying, that the folks that have been advocating for the augmentation of the budget for their purposes would actually acquire those funds?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, maybe just take one more dive into this. We're going to have this on our agenda properly next week, but we know, in that particular process, that we had two qualified proposers. One is being recommended for the award over the other, but we had a limited amount of money. So, if we made the decision to buy those additional services under that particular umbrella, and again, I have not talked to you directly about this, Robin, but it would seem to me this board would have the ability to augment, to buy additional services. You're not taking them away from the potential awardee, and whether it was St. John's and/or the other party, if we wanted to supplement that. Again, it seems to me it's a break from past practice that we couldn't do that. You're saying that we have to go out to a total RFP. There's a cost associated with it. Obviously, there's a factor for competitive bidding, but it's not like it's not transparent. Everything we do right here is open to the public. There's not, you know, there's nothing in secret that we're doing in this discussion or anything else about this. And so, again, as I've gone through budget processes in my years of experience on this board, we've had requests from the audience, as long as it met criteria, and there were some performance measures there, and we had a contract, this board could do that to purchase those services. And we've supplemented folks who've had a longstanding relationship with this county as well, where we were satisfied those services have been delivered. It seems to me now we're getting to a point that if it hasn't got to that exact dollar amount, then, sorry, you're done, board. You've got to go back out and do it over and over and over again. And so, I guess that's part of the frustration that you're hearing from me today, is that, and I've shared this with Mr. Gill, is that, basically, then we're to a point where every time we want to augment something, we've got to go out to an RFP. Now, that seems a bit, I say, a break in practice, but I, you know, I'm not the legal authority. Certainly, I've sat in this board long enough to have an exchange with you and your predecessors, as well as those who have sat in that seat, and I think we've always found, you know, a certain level of confidence in taking advice from our council, but it seems to me that we're going in a whole different direction, and maybe there's been changes in the law, or maybe we've been doing it wrong all these years, but I can tell you that, you know, this is a different approach than what I would characterize as being at least past practice by this board, in public session doing that. Again, there's nothing been secret about it, so.
And in discussions, and my advice, it's following a process that's transparent and provides this board the full understanding of the capabilities and the functions and the services that the department will receive.
And I, yeah, I get that. I mean, that's, that's quoting law, but I, again, I just, I'm, you know, we can come back this afternoon, and maybe we need to keep this discussion going, because it's important to not just the appropriation, because what I think, in response to Mr. Serna's question now, is saying that we have to go out to an RFP. If we chose to, to either work with South County Services, or St. John's, based upon their request, or I guess Splash even, you know, we've had multi-year, if not decades-long relationships with them. They provide the services, help thousands of people in this community to their respective programs. Not that others couldn't do that, I guess, but, so, we're saying, we could set the money aside, but so sorry, you, you, and you, you're going to have to go out to bid again. We just did, we just did what was RFA, then ended up to an RFP that was frustrating enough last October for South County Services, and now here we are again. I guess I don't get if you lose money, or we appropriate more money, we have qualified parties that are participating in a process, either one that was just very recent, within the last 11 months, or one that is going to be coming to us next week, that we can't somehow supplement that.
Supervisor Natoli, I think, let's take South County first. There's a dollar amount that we put out. So, that was the dollar amount that folks bid, and we made a recommendation to you, and the board took action on it. The issue that we're running into, that's why we're working with county council, is that the augmentation is twice the amount that was in there. I understand the history that it could have been 300.
A little less, a little less, a little more.
Rough numbers.
Yeah, rough numbers.
Rough numbers. I'm talking rough numbers. So, the issue we're running into there is that we have, we did an RFP, we went through a public process, and now the question in front of us is that additional money's needed. How do we, how does that transaction work? So, that's the South County issue. St. John's issue is, we set out an RFP, we're going to be coming to you next Tuesday with a recommendation, which is no secret, I think
Right, right.
Everybody knows what that is. And the question there becomes is that if there's a desire by the board to have more units, whatever you want to call, the advice is that we have to go through a process to get there. So, that's the issue with St. John's, if you will, the request on that. The third one, Splash, it's an expired contract, but based on, on the board, in my estimation, question in front of you is that, is there a desire by the board to continue an educational program in May 3rd? And if that is something that you're desirous, then we can appropriate the money, and then we've got to go through a process to find somebody in there. That's how we're breaking those three components down. I think where the past, if you will, it's been different, is that some of these items might not have had an RFP. I don't know. I wasn't here. And if some of them did have an RFP, the augmentation happened, and particularly on South County, it wasn't to the magnitude, the guiding light, or the guiding principle that
Just so I understand, it wasn't to the magnitude?
The magnitude we have for South County is pretty big, the dollar amount. That's one of the things that we're getting tripped up, but
But we had funded them $300,000 general fund in years past. I mean, before the recession hit, we were funding them nearly at that level.
But the, the issue we keep running into is that the contract that we did was for 140,000. That was the document that was used to come back to you with recommendation. We didn't go out with the 300,000. If we'd have done the 300,000 in a perfect world, we would not be having this conversation, because that, it's an appropriation point at that point. That's what we're getting tripped on that. So, that's what we're working with county council. That's the advice we've gotten. What I was offering is this afternoon, we do need some more time to continue working with county council. When the representatives from St. John's spoke today, they introduced more facts in there. Now, we're hearing that this is not just about 19 beds, it's much broader than that, it's backing up their loans, there's a lot of information that's coming through. We need to get a clear idea that if you do augment the budget, what is that we're augmenting the budget for, and what are the services we're getting? So, those are the policy questions that we look at, and we can come back next week and let you know where we are, but based on what we've been hearing for the last couple of weeks into the month, in consultation with county council, that's the advice we're getting from county councils, that you can augment the budget, but if you want to appropriate, if you want to give somebody the money, you've got to go through a process. Robin, is that fair?
That's fair.
Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Serna?
I just, just for a point of order, because I don't mind getting into all this now, but we did talk about deliberations in the afternoon, in light of the fact that it's 1:00, and we do have closed session, so are we going to continue? Because this is, as far as I'm concerned, this is deliberation now. Are we going to deliberate now, or are we going to break, go to closed session, and come back and deliberate in the afternoon?
Good question.
We schedule a break.
Yeah, this is deliberation.
Yeah, we're deliberating now.
Yeah.
I just, I have one question for, quick question for county council that I don't need the answer now. Give her the question, get the answer, and when we come back.
Okay.
If you indulge me. So, my question is
It depends.
My question is, how much discretion does the board have today in the context of final budget deliberations to associate criteria with compartmentalized augmented funding? In other words, can we be extremely specific about criteria that might be used in a process with direction to staff, if it's, if there's a majority of interest by this board, to not only not only just to, let's use St. John's, to set aside 700,000, but also say, here's the very specific criteria that should be used in a process for a competitive bid? Do we have that? I don't need, I don't need the answer now, think about it over lunch, but I want the answer when we get back.
Okay. But that, we'll break and return probably around 2:00 or so. So welcome to stay with us and come back. Thanks. Good afternoon, want to call back into session, the segment of County Board Supervisors meeting for September 6, 2017. And we'll call the roll, reestablish the quorum, and then we'll go into board reports back and deliberations. Want to thank the audience too for being with us throughout the morning and afternoon. And with that flow, I'll turn to you to go ahead and call roll, please.
All righty, Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natali?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Gill.
I think the three items that you identified as we went to break, those are the items that are in front of you, and your deliberations, any other questions you might have on the budget?
I think we did have a question Mr. Serna had asked as we were breaking, so I feel like so you punch up. So, Mr. Vaughn, you may want to respond to Mr. Serna's question.
Yes, the board can be very specific in a request for interest, or a request for qualifications, or just a generalized request for proposals.
But we can do that on the spot today.
Sure.
Sorry, could you repeat it? I couldn't hear what you said.
You can, you can give direction to staff to prepare a, a request for interest or qualifications very specifically. That's, that's done with some frequency in, to what your interest is, whether the, it's capability, or financial wherewithal, or, or past practices, or prior audits, all those things.
Thank you.
So is there some distinguishing factors between an RFI, an RFA, RFQ, and so requests for interest? Because we got into that, Robin, as you may recall, last year, on RFA, then turned into what basically equivalent to an RFP. So if there's RFI, and, you know, there may be some timing and some other sequencing, and I don't know if the law makes distinguishing elements between, between those, because again, I think that your answer, Supervisor Serna, seemed to open the door to the ability to make a decision as it relates to setting money aside, and then giving specific direction regarding looking at a specific set of services, whatever criteria it might be. It might be geographical, it might be service-oriented or whatever. So I guess some help with, with that as we deliberate.
At the moment, we don't have any money for either, any of the three. So do you appropriate the money first?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, but I just wanted to be clear on the process. I agree, it may be a moot point.
Pardon me?
I also agree. The, the question was about process, not about funding.
Well, I just, I thought Don was asking for steps on how to go through it, so I wanted to make sure that got in the mix.
Okay. So there are different levels of which requests could be made if we find the money.
Yeah. I think that once we get to that, you give us direction, we can come up with the appropriate tool to use, if you will.
Okay. All right, thanks. Okay, was there any report backs then before, how'd you get away without any report backs, Brett? That's probably a first, first in history.
I think we set a record, there's none that we got.
Okay. All right, then I'll turn to my colleagues, and then we'll just open it up for discussion. We know some of the requests, we have the recommendations before us. There are three outstanding programmatic requests, there's the, what to do as it relates to any future workshop on Mather related items, and then anything else that we want to, we had, we had some other correspondence too that people want to talk about that came in during the course of the last few weeks. So, Mr. Serna?
So just a point of order with our county council, I just want to be careful on behalf of my colleague, Ms. Peters, about any motion that's made that has as part of it some interest in having a future workshop on May 3. Does, do we need to separate out the, the motion, so to speak, to avoid conflict, or?
Yes, we do need to, to separate out Mather specific, but on whether the, the board wants to put some, a calendar item on for a Mather workshop is, is something that is.
Are you talking about what we talked about earlier in the day?
Yeah, when you were.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just because there was.
I thought, so you mean to get a specific date in October, or some other time to come back?
The direction I was looking for is just come back sometime, no later than second meeting in October, that's all.
Okay, so that doesn't sound like that's.
No, that's not a problem.
Be a conflict. So I guess, Mr. Chair, just for the sake of getting through this afternoon, I'm not sure how you want to do this directing traffic, but maybe find out what the level of interest is by board members on, on the three requests first, so that we don't go too far down a path by one or a minority of us.
Okay.
When there's not enough interest to, to fulfill a desire to seek augmentation of funding in a process.
Okay. No, I think it's fine. So if you want to weigh in, again, I don't, I'm not necessarily seeking a motion at this point in time, but just general thoughts about, and I certainly can express mine, but I wanted to give my colleagues a benefit too, so we can work right to left, or start with whoever wants to punch up.
Well, I, I would just go first and generally say I have, I hold in high esteem and value all three organizations that have made, I think, in their own ways, strong cases for us to, in our deliberations, find creative ways to consider augmenting their ability to continue to perform in the ways that they, they have served this county in the past. And so I, you know, I'd, I'd be interested in hearing others, of course, but I would like to, to see all three funded. And, you know, if that means that we need to get into a little bit in the weeds today, so be it in terms of process.
Okay.
But, I mean, that's my general position.
Good, good place to start. Mr. Kennedy?
I, I guess one of them that I'd like to point out, and again, I preface it with, as Supervisor Serna said, there's not a, I mean, they're all great organizations that do good work. There's, no one is arguing that at all. But I'd like to point out South County Services' request, and just kind of walk through it just a bit, just so you get my point of view. And that's that, you know, I, I'm, I've always been in, in this subject area, which we went through months ago, when we did the RFP, interested not in so much who gets it, as I am that the services are provided for the people in the south part of the county who need these services, and also a transparent and clean and deliberative process. I think we went through a deliberative process when the staff evaluated RFPs back when. And it was the board's decision, though I was a dissenter in that decision, to not follow staff's recommendation. And I said then, it has nothing to do with South County Services and their abilities, and not from my opinion, because I don't have an opinion, being that I sit here and I don't have the expertise that our staff had when they actually evaluated the RFPs. I am a, as most of you know by now, a stickler for following processes that have been laid out and not changing the rules of the game late in the game. And I felt like we did that. I, I feel like that perhaps one of the criteria that staff was probably considering, if I remember right, for making the recommendation that they did to the Salvation Army was financial wherewithal. And I think here we find ourselves in a position that, you know, had we followed staff recommendation, we probably wouldn't be having this discussion right now. So, you know, there's that part of it, and also, other than maybe the, the Florin Road project, I don't remember doing 100% change order. That was facetious, by the way. That was for Phil.
I twitched.
But, I mean, so it's a small amount of money relative to our budget, sure, but it's a large amount of money in relativity to the contract itself. And I think we are taking what I believe we did as a smelly process and making it smellier. If, if we do in fact need to allocate these dollars to the South County folks who, who need these services, and we can identify the funds to do that, and that, I'm going to preface everything I say, all three of these, I want to identify the funds to do that, then at the very least, I think that instead of quote unquote "augmenting" to the tune of over 100,000, I mean, 100%, a contract, I, I could not support that. So I would at the very least ask that we go out and do a, a fair competitive bidding process on that one.
Okay. Other members of the board want to weigh in, any, any thoughts?
I guess I can.
Yeah.
Are you, are you going? On, I'm, I concur with Supervisor Kennedy in that I don't have knowledge of some of these organizations, others I do. I think Splash has a wonderful program, but my understanding is that there was a specific contract for a specific period of time, and the contract ran out. And so my thought is.
The contract didn't run out, they ran out of money before the contract was finished.
No.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, Splash, the contract's over.
Oh, I thought she was talking about, okay, different, different, pardon me.
I was talking about Splash.
Okay, sorry.
I don't know if those kind of services are needed somewhere else, or if we're required to, to have those kind of educational services somewhere else, where we can include Splash in the, in an RFP for those kind of services to, to, to get another contract consummated. I, I could say, you know, I've been out to Splash, and I think what they're doing, their work is good work. And so, but I don't know if we're, if that's, is that a program that we are required to fulfill, or what, what were we fulfilling with, with that contract with Splash?
I want Michael Peterson to answer that question.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Michael Peterson, Water Resources. In terms of the, the most recent Splash contract, and the requirement to carry out that specific service with that entity was cited in our stormwater quality permit. We had a, we were awaiting renewal of our stormwater quality permit, but from the state. So we had an extension of our prior permit, and one of the extension requirements was simply that continue with the current outreach education programs that we had in place. Upon receipt of our new permit, we don't have that requirement. We have the discretion to identify the outreach education programs necessary to meet the, the basic criteria for the permit. We do already fund a program called Splash in the Class, which is a classroom-based creek education type program. And we're, we've been doing that for a number of years, and we're going to continue to do that. And that is where we will meet our general outreach to education requirement under our permit. With our new permit as well, we have a, a requirement to remove 100% of trash from critical portions of our storm drain system. This is trash five millimeters or larger, 100% removal, or the equivalent. We're going to be spending the next 18 months trying to figure out how we're going to do that, and we don't even know yet how much of that's going to cost. So part of our determination in reprioritizing programs for the stormwater quality program is, how are we going to reassign funding to those new requirements that we're going to have to attack over the next 18 months? Absolutely agree that, that Splash is, is a, a great program. The reason we're not pursuing a new contract for the field services is that it's not necessary. I mean, so it's been, it has been a great program, we have supported it, and we do still support Splash in the Class, which is a, an adjacent program. But really, we've got additional priorities weighing on the stormwater quality program that are requiring us to reprioritize funding.
And are these contracts, like, everyone's here on the last day, but did they know their contract was coming up, and so they had time, so they had time to plan their new streams?
Well, clearly, the, the contract had a termination date, and the prior amendment to the contract, we'd indicated that we, looking ahead, we were going to be reprioritizing and determining how to prioritize funding, because we knew that there were additional requirements that would be coming with our stormwater quality permit. But again, Splash is a good program, but we do have in place what we need to meet our requirement for outreach and education, and we really are concerned with the additional costs that we're going to be facing with this trash amendment to our permit.
Okay, thank you. And then on.
So before, can I just ask a question?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, just, Michael, the, what you've just explained, obviously talks looking forward, but I don't know how much dollars in that overall stormwater utility, this is not a general fund activity.
Right.
It's, it's stormwater charge, it has to be a nexus there, and obviously you get advised on that. But the request is for $114,000. I don't know what sort of physical infrastructure improvements might be contemplated. I do think that one of the focuses needs to be is that keep trash out before it ever gets into the waterways, because clearly, trying to get 100% of anything is, you know, nearly impossible. But that's, the state's pretty good about telling us how we ought to do things and how much percentage.
Right.
But I guess my point being is that there is funding available for it, if we chose to fund it, you know, because you're still looking at a, a window of 18 months or longer. You know, things are maybe years in the making, as far as I know. I don't think, you know, what you can develop in 18 months is going to get 100% of the trash out of the waterways. Maybe you got, you, you hide some designs. So I guess my point being to the, the question though, is that there is funding available if we choose to, again, it may not be your recommendation, or it might be, but nonetheless, there is sufficient funding available if this board chose to do a contract for another year, so to speak, basically what, what was outlined by Emily in her request, so.
Right. And, and, you know, it's, I think it's good to understand that historically, the Splash field program has been a Vernal Pool-based program. Relative to our stormwater quality permit, we look at creek-based education programs. You know, at a hot, much, a very high level, it's general watershed education. But when it comes to considering whether to enter into a contract, I, I really do have to consider the nexus related to just the source of funding and what it's intended to do, as well as using that, that funding effectively. And we, we have been in discussion, is there a way to tweak the program to make it more creek-based? But that aside, is that still a service that we actually need to take on relative to our permit needs and our, and our overall program priorities? So that's, that's where we are right now. Yes, there's funding there. I mean, we have funding within the stormwater quality program, but it's a matter of how are we prioritizing that looking ahead.
And so just to finish with Splash, I guess, my thought, and I know it's a wonderful program, I've been out there and I've seen the, it impacted me the way I think about water drain off, you know, stormwater drain off. But, but I also have to say that I, you know, I don't know the intricacies of Michael's budget and, and what he's looking at moving forward, and those, those new requirements that are, were continually having to do, go, jump through different hoops. And so we don't have the luxury to, to always fund programs because we think they're great. We, we have to use the money in every way to maximize what we can get out of it. And so my thought on that is deferring to staff's recommendation is probably what I would have to do, based on just they're the ones that know what they need in order to meet their budget requirements. On South County versus Salvation Army.
Well, it's not actually, it's not actually that, let's be clear. It's.
Okay.
That was in the past. Decision was made, yeah.
Okay.
Salvation Army doesn't play a role in this, I was just giving historical perspective.
So South County is, lost the, lost the contract, right?
They didn't win the bid.
Or they did not win the RFP, the bid?
They, they won the RFP, came to the board, board made the decision to award the RFP, South County. The issue in front of you is that what the RFP was for, and what it takes for South County to run the operation are two different numbers. So the augmentation that's being asked is.
They won it, but they won half of what they wanted, basically.
But they got, they got what we had put out on the street. So we put out 140,000, that was the discussion we had with the board members, and they, they won that RFP. that RFP.
And when was that, when was that finalized?
October of 2016.
October of 16. What has happened since then is that South County was receiving additional funding through SETA for another $160,000. That funding has dried up. So the question that's coming back to us is that we have a contract with South County and to run the program as South County does it, there's a need for the additional $160,000.
So they're asking for new money from the county?
Correct.
I see.
That money...
You know, and they're asking us to fund 100% of their program?
Pretty close.
Ninety to 100%.
Correct.
So, I mean, I, my thought on that is that that's difficult to fund 100% of any program. I'm not sure we have that luxury and, and I don't know if I could support that. And then regarding St. John's, I have concerns about what our county council has mentioned and so the impression I have is that we don't have a choice, we have to go out for an RFP, we can't just hand money to an organization. Is that correct? Or we're making ourselves liable for problems?
It can't be sole sourced, and for the protection of spending that kind of money, you need some kind of process, and a competitive process would be the most transparent.
So I will say about St. John's that that is an organization that raises a lot of money outside, they are using a lot of private funds. So we're maximizing, you know, what we get out of what we put in, it seems like, and the number, in the number of beds and the low number of recidivism. So they're actually taking people from homelessness that aren't going back to homelessness. So it seems like they're doing good work, and I hate, I hate to leave them, I'm not sure we left them stranded, I think they might have known that this was coming, I'm not sure. I think that there's been a timeline and that there was question, but for us to just not try to figure out if we could help in some way, even if it's with an RFP, I would probably want to support what their work and find a way to give them a bridge to some other, to the next year at least, so they can figure out different funding. But I want to do it, I would want to do it in a way that makes sure that we're doing it the right thing. So those are my comments.
Okay, thanks. Supervisor Kennedy, I think you had a question back on Splash.
Michael, can you come back up, please? Thank you. I just want to be crystal clear on this. So the, what Splash has done in the past was necessary at one time, based on requirements, and it no longer is. But that's, and you're kind of, you know, still formulating your plan of moving forward.
Correct.
Okay, so for all you know, you know, once you have that plan and you've thought it out long-term, there very well may be an opportunity or a need for these types of services in which Splash could then apply.
Conceivably, yes. There's nothing precluding that, you know, the future requirement or need might be fulfilled specifically by these services. However, or I guess what, more to the point, those services, if they're revised towards being creek-based, which is what the focus of our program is rather than vernal pool-based, it, yeah, it's not precluding that there might be an opportunity in the future.
So, but again, fine point on this. In your opinion, at this time, those types of services that have been provided in the past, you just don't need them?
That's correct. And even moving into the future, where, the question you raised, it's unclear. As we understand, some of the future rules that will be in place for school districts, they'll have to craft their own stormwater quality education programs, which really would usurp the need for us to do that, and they would have to be more or less carrying those out more directly.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Peters?
Thank you. I'm not going to address Splash because I won't be able to vote on it. South County Services, I feel similar to Supervisor Kennedy, that there was another nonprofit that was selected in a process by staff, and we had a discussion here at the board and overturned the staff recommendation, if I remember correctly. So I would have trouble making an outright award, and I think it would have to go out to competitive bid again. On the services that they provided and the term, and if you could help me understand some of it. So the, what they spent the money on was nine months of services or six months of services for a one-year contract, something?
I want to have Ann answer, and she has specifics.
They're not out of money right now, they're going to run out of money in December, so they're funded through December. But when they lose half the money, they're going to run out half a year, so they're not out of money yet, they're still in business.
Okay, so I guess I need some dates as to when the contract started and how much work was done and...
It comes in.
And I think if there's specific questions too beyond staff, Mary Lou's still here too, but...
Well, I want to keep this at this level.
So the contract was effective on July 1st.
Of 2018?
Of this year.
Or 17?
Yes. And expires June 30th of next fiscal year.
Okay.
I am awaiting staff that are going to send me a report of all of the services provided to date, but it's my understanding that they do have money through the end of December, roughly.
Okay, so they would have spent all the money that the county provided them within a six-month term of a 12-month contract?
Right.
Is that...
That's correct.
So are they at any legal jeopardy of signing a contract for 12 months and not having given the services, and would they have to repay the money? Or, I mean, how does that all work?
That's problematic. Yes, they're, they entered into a contract for 12 months for a set amount of money. I don't know any, if there's any leeway in that for extending the time or shortening the time, but it would be the subject of negotiations to change it from what it is.
And to be...
Go ahead, Ann.
To be completely clear, Ms. Powers made it very clear when she signed the contract that with the loss of this money, she would not be able to make it for a whole year. She was worried about her current cash flow at that time, and I recommended that she sign the contract so that we could get money flowing to her and that we would have to then address it as we are today.
And the other top process, Ann, was to at least get six months' worth of services in that area.
Yes.
Yeah, I got the six months of services. My question was more about when you sign a contract that says you're going to provide a year's worth of services and you spend all the money in six months, are you liable in some way for the six months you didn't provide for? But there's a confusing element here, Ann said, you know, the county recommended that she sign the contract.
If we were in dispute, that will be something we will look at. We knew when Ann had the conversation, that was a known fact that she didn't have enough funds. We were expecting her to have the funds to do the full year. So we will now go back and try to address that issue. We, we're interested in getting six months' worth of services. Then the issue becomes on January 1st, what do we do?
So if, if the group were not to get funded, who would provide the services for January 18 to June 30th, 18? Or would they just not, there not be any?
There would not be any. I mean, we would probably have to...
Otherwise, you're paying for it twice, sort of. And what was, were these RFPs that, where the money became unavailable to balance out the contract, or contributions from the private source, or what?
No, it was money that, that the provider received from SETA. And I do believe that there's still an opportunity for them to apply from some of the CDBG money, or, I'm not using that term, can't remember which one it is, but for some additional funds through SETA. But we flowed some money from Cow Works to SETA that allowed them to free up some money for South County services, and the Cow Works money is not available this year. We had a $12 million reduction in our Cow Works allocation this year.
Is there any opportunity that they've explained to you that there's a way, they still have a couple of months till the end of the year, that they're going to get any money for the last half of their contract?
I have not had that conversation with them, no.
And how did we come about the amount of money for the RFP?
We did a needs assessment prior to issuing the RFP and then based the amount of funding based, that we would put in the competitive selection process as a result of that needs assessment.
And that's where the 140 came from?
Correct.
Well, no. Not right now. Thank you. Well, that one's a struggle for me, sorry. And then St. John's, you know, I agree, good work, they have a good board. The problem with the process, they lost a competitive bid, and to my knowledge, they did not protest the RFP, which seems like the time you would, you know, you would address losing it. I'd also like some clarification on how they are using the funds based on the letter that came in front of us during the presentation, and if that use is appropriate.
We would like to have that discussion too, because based on the information provided, I need Ann down here again, I think there's questions that we were having over break two, or lunch break. Ann?
Why do you always sit in the back row? She wants her steps.
She's hoping she would be called on.
He's exercising her ankles. And I apologize, I didn't hear the question.
Go ahead.
I wanted some clarification on how St. John used the funds as portrayed in the document that they gave us today, or they gave us yesterday, but that was in the presentation, if the use of the $700,000 is appropriate.
Well, it's, I just saw that today for the first time, and it's hard to tell. What we are funding is children and families stay in a shelter bed. The letter made it look like there, that we were matching some other funds, and I'm not sure if that's accurate or not, we would need to dig deeper into that. Our contract does not allow that our funds be used to match, to draw down other funds without express permission, and we haven't had that conversation. But I don't know for sure that that's in fact how it's being used, but it would certainly be something we'd have to look into. We pay for families to stay in a shelter.
Do you pay for services?
Yes.
Not matching other funds or...
That is correct.
Leveraging the money?
Correct.
So they do that at their own peril, basically?
If that's in fact what they're doing, yes.
So, I'm sorry, but Nav, are you saying you have some question if that's what they wrote in the letter is actually what's happening?
Well, that's what we want to figure out, is based on what Ann, we don't, that's not permissible under our contract.
So it's, that's our language in the contract, that's not the federal government or, you know, the pass-through, the agency where the money comes through?
That's our language.
That's our language. And what would be the reason for that language?
That's a good question, I'm not sure. I have to get to that.
Basically, well, we're buying a certain level of services. So if we have a contract with you, you said you're going to do...
Well, just like South County, in that sense.
If you're going to do ABC, we expect you to do ABC. But if you end up backing our money for loans or anything else, paying for debt service, again, that's what was on the slide today, we want to verify that, I don't want to go too far into it. That is not permissible, that's not what we contracted with you.
Per the existing contract?
Yes, the existing.
The history of contracts with St. John. Doesn't mean necessarily that a fresh contract couldn't be redesigned so that we understand, for instance, that, yeah, maybe the money is used for match, or maybe the money is used to securitize other funding, as long as that total assemblage of commitment is used for the intent to provide the services, right?
It's what services are we getting? And I think the caution we will have there based on what happens today is the public purpose behind it.
Sure.
And the public purpose question with the county council that we've been talking about, if it gets into matching our, our funds or matching loans, what's the public purpose that the county got out of it?
Right, so that it's not a gift to public funds, right?
Yeah, rational nexus we got to create.
Right.
Well, so that, that letter or document that came in, was that, was that referring to this, this particular RFP, or was that referring to what money, how the money's been used in the past?
The impression is from what we saw today in that letter is that how the money was being used in the past, how the money is leveraging more money. And that's the dialogue the department needs to have with the provider, is that just an illustration of what, what's the purpose behind that? Our contract is for 19 units, not to backstop or do anything else that we saw this morning on the screen.
Could I just ask a question? So, but if you buy 19 beds and they provide the service, however that money goes into it, and how it may show up on their sheet, the net effect is the same, that we buy the service for the women and children, so you get 60 or 50 or 60, and then you, they may show that it's over on their income sheet, but I mean, it's revenue for services provided, so they have a loan. But I mean, if they don't have that income and can't provide those beds, then it, then other things fall out. But I didn't get that they use that for the back of their loan. I mean, Michelle's here, but I didn't read that the same way as it's been interpreted, I'll just say.
I was very careful, Supervisor Nolte, what I said is what's been represented to us. It appears that way, we need to sit down and figure out what that really means. If it's on surface, it's being put up there, our money, our county money that's going in, if that money goes out, there's a loss of 3 million. We just need to be very clear that that money is not being used to backstop anything else. And if it is, then the contract provisions that Ann said kick in. Again, I want to be very careful, I'm not saying that's what's happening, that's what's being represented, and we need time to understand what that is. And then the number of units we have, there's a, more information's coming in, that's all we're getting at. I think that's what Ann's saying too, is that we just need to understand what that number is and...
And there is an audit, performance audit component in the contract, allowing for a review of things like that.
Well, how would, how would you, if we put together another RFP, how would you review in advance? I mean, isn't that a little strange?
If there was a question of the performance of these contracts, and my understanding is that has been undertaken on the South County.
South County, we're not talking about South County.
I'm sorry, what's that? You've already done an audit of the past contracts, or it's in process?
No, but that's, that's a component of the contracts that were entered into, that if, if the past performance is a question, we have that ability.
I just...
You're probably thinking the same thing I am, a little chicken and egg kind of...
Yeah, yeah. And, and how do you structure an RFP and tell them how to answer it? You know? That doesn't seem quite right. Go ahead.
Okay. I want to weigh in, I know Supervisor Frost, you wanted to, I'm just giving general thoughts here and then we can come back to the specifics. I'll just start with, with the St. John's. I think that certainly some of the questions raised have already kind of addressed some of the points, but in my view, we've had with all of these organizations, a longstanding relationship, they've endured audits, they've had to meet contract requirements and may have competed in processes either that they were prevailed in or not. But I, I think that, you know, for me, again, you want, you know, wise use of public dollars, and you want to be able to track those dollars and make sure that the public is insured, that they get the value for those dollars to the discretion that we have as a board and as a county to, you know, contract for certain services and program elements. With St. John's, it's clear to me, as it is with the other two, and I'll speak to those in a moment, that we've had a very strong partner, one that's been able to grow their support base dramatically over the last few years, and that may be reflected even some of the conversation that we, you know, a moment ago about taking on debt that allowed them to expand. But when I think about 270 beds for women and children in this community, and I even reflected when I saw the point in time count, which, you know, that has all the elements that people can talk about and agree or disagree on, but that was the one area where we were actually showed a bit of improvement. But that was the one area where we were actually showed a bit of improvement as related to, you know, at least addressing some of the, the needs in that point in time count, year, you know, two years over, 15 over 17 calendar years, but, or point in time counts. But I think that what we have with, with, with St. John's is a program that certainly has grown and it's grown in a way that I think has proven results. It certainly has benefited many women and their, and their families. I think there's cost savings associated with it and whether people can track those directly or not, but when I think about what we spend in the children's protective system and in the foster system and the reunification alone, if you can shortcut some of those stays, better quality for the children and hopefully for the families, but certainly, you know, just cost savings alone. And the fact that we're, you know, 24 days out really is of concern to me, I think that provides a level of urgency here and however we figure out to do this, I, I think that there needs to be at a minimum some ability to bridge this over while we figure it out. I mean, you know, typically, we don't just end contracts and leave people on the lurch without at least telling them that, that that's, that's coming. And in this case, obviously, we told them in the sense that we went out to an RFP for transitional housing, but that was a choice this board made and I guess I want to come back to the point anticipating next week's discussion. It still hasn't been demonstrated to me that in a competitive process, the transparent process that we went through, that's going to come to this board for consideration next week, that if we supplement the amount of money and we have two qualified proposers, why we can't choose to fund both of those proposers? If you don't, you know, in this case, you know, we know as volunteers American in, in St. John's Shelter, and I, to this very moment, I, respecting what council says, I still understand, we have a process. We said we would go out to the marketplace, we put a certain dollar amount to that, we wanted, say we want to double that dollar amount, we want to fund both of them. The record could bear this out, I believe that in the past, we've been able to do that, that if we found more money or decided to put more money, we could do that. And so I guess I'm going to suggest very strongly that looking towards next week, that if this board is inclined to supplement, that we look at doing that and buy those, you know, again, you have to have the performance, you buy the beds and so forth, however, we tailor that and I don't know if that allows enough time Nav, to your point about looking at those aspects. But that seems to me to be a clean process, it's an open process, it's one where you have both of the parties that proposed, the only two parties proposed for it will be before us. And so I guess I would, again, bring it back to that point, that seems to me to be, now, if that's not a path, then we got to go out in some other way. But I do want, I'll just say, I'm very supportive of finding funding for a partner that I believe delivers and is a part of that continuum or that spectrum of what we provide for services and it gets people out of homelessness and actually into self-sustaining situations in many cases and deployability and to hear Nicole's, you know, comments here today and Sheila two weeks ago, there are more stories and they're not the only provider that can bring people and tell good stories, but I just think, I think a mechanism is there, that's my view and there may be disagreement between our top staff and I guess if so, but I, in my view, we have a process that we've gone through and if we want to supplement that process for people who met the minimum qualifications, and I, and so I don't know, I guess Nav or Robin, is that being looked at for next week?
We've had numerous discussions with county council on it and the issue that we keep coming back to is that when the RFP was sent out, it's the one provider. So that's what's going to come to you is our recommendation on one provider. And if we go in a different route, and I'm looking at Robin to make sure I'm saying this the right way, is that that's a different process. If we put more money into it, we can reject all at that point and put out for the bigger amount and then put, don't put a number limit on it.
Is there, is there a built-in appeal process to that?
There was a built-in appeal and we did not get an appeal.
And there's a very clear window of time that is prescribed for that appeal?
Yes.
Okay.
So to your other point about what we can find out is if it's the board's desire to augment this component and whatever RFP ends up, and I'm just pre-assuming for discussion purpose, that St. John's is the one, I think there's enough information that's been thrown into this mix today, yesterday, last couple of weeks, that we do need our staffs to sit down and figure out what exactly, if that's what the board desires, what is it that we're purchasing? And to have clean audits, not get into the back and forth that I've observed this summer that we got into. So that's, so I, the reason I share that is whatever way you go on this, but if you go in the process of funding and then St. John ends up with it, there is that cleanup component we got to do.
Is it possible, if I may?
Sure.
Is it possible to just act today to rope off, if it's the will of the board to rope off a chunk, 700,000 that just sits there while, while you engage the kind of process you just described?
Absolutely. And I think to your point, we did go back and look at, I think you're right, the number that you threw out was 540,000, that's nine months to...
That's for the rest of the fiscal year.
Yeah, rest of the fiscal year.
Okay, well, just hold on that for a moment then and then I would just go to the other two requests before, so I would just, when it comes to South County Services...
Oh, Sue Frost had something, her name's on the board.
I know what she is, but I hadn't finished talking.
Oh, I thought she was on there before you started talking, so...
Well, yeah, because we're going down the line though and I thought she was going... Sue Frost, go ahead.
I just have a quick comment and that's relating to South County and the, the staff's recommendation that, or they're, they clearly were not able to fulfill a contract with us and, and we made a recommendation to go ahead and sign and then we'll figure it out later. But I think on any contracts that we do, we not only need to vet those companies and know that they are financially qualified to deliver on the contract, but if they say they can't, we shouldn't sign a contract, we should go back to the RFP and pick the next person down. We should never get in a contract where we don't feel that they can fully fulfill that contract. And I, I hope we won't do that ever again.
Understood.
Okay. Being that we're on South County, I wanted to comment on that, that when we awarded the RFP last year, and I appreciate Ann's explanation because I think it highlights the point you made just a moment ago, maybe in a different way, Superintendent Frost, but that there was, this county provided, DuCal Works, and again, I want to thank certainly Paul and Ann because they were creative during the recession and we worked to maintain services and said it was cooperative. It wasn't, you know, it wasn't a perfect fit as far as the process, but that funding was in place. When we awarded the RFP last October, that money was in place. Nobody, we had signals that that money might be in jeopardy relative Cal Works, but certainly that's what came true. And there was a hesitation, I will just say that, you know, Ms. Powers, who's been before this board before, expressed serious reservations and I think Ann, you know, doing her best to exercise some discretion, recognizing that services were in jeopardy right at that very moment and recognized the board would have this before, as, you know, they conferred and, and obviously executed the contracts. So I would just want to make it really clear, there was, there was no bait and switch here on behalf of the, the, the service provider. And the other thing is, and to Superintendent Kennedy's point, and yes, you know, we had a disagreement this board and we made a determination to award to South County, you know, whether it's the four people that are here in the audience to provide this service or not, there's been an organization, and again, they've had to compete over time, that has been basically the, the outpost in the South County for provision of services. They've enjoyed the support of the community in many different ways. They don't go out and raise a lot of money because as you can see, there's four of them that provide those services. They're open five days a week, they have to be, today they're here, they're down in the Delta, they're out in the Herald area, they're out in the rural portions of the county and they also serve people who, again, they don't close their doors, the people come across the county line that, you know, associate with Gault, that they're going to do their best to, to serve those folks. There are other organizations that do that through this county, but I would just tell you that, that I know, I know personally and doesn't count for what we're going to do here today necessarily, that they've helped numerous folks, people who were in threat of losing their housing, who couldn't get gas to get to work, who couldn't fill out the forms that, you know, would help them qualify for DHA benefits or at least get, you know, as a matter of record in consideration for whatever might, might they qualify for. And that makes a big difference. It really does. And it does in all of our communities, but I would tell you that this organization has been, you know, a strong, strong part of the fabric of that community for many, many years. Now, if they go away, will somebody else not reappear? I don't know. I mean, we had Salvation Army and again, a good organization, but they had the umbrella that allowed them to bring national or international organization the support. Would have been the same level of services? I don't think so, but, but maybe they would have been able to serve X number of people and meet the data requirements. They have a very personalized service, it makes a difference in lives of people in that community and it's people that, you know, I know have been helped, will continue to be helped. And I feel really strongly that if we can't find a way to do this in an existing contract, then we need to tailor something that allows us to have that before us for consideration. This county has been a, a partner, we provide a support and yes, we provide probably 85% of the support because they have an office with four people that do all those services to hundreds of miles of geographical area, small populations. They maximize by working with the churches, again, they work with the local city and, well, two cities, cities of Iltin, city of Gault. And I just, again, to see the discussion, well, you know, we didn't do this, we didn't do that, okay, then let's, you know, take the time out we need to do. But I just believe that if they go away, that our community will be far less for it in those areas of the county. And so, you know, and I would just say this too, because Nav knows this as well as anyone. We've had this conversation of, of course, and Susan's certainly been here a good deal of time, we've had a conversation almost every year about South County because we never figured out from the time we've generally funded this at about $300,000 about 15 years ago, and then, you know, when things got tight, we found, got creative and people worked to find the funding to provide those services and we've done that. They've maintained that same amount, they haven't really increased, but it's to keep the organization in place that provides that service. And they're the linkage to, to, to lifeline for a lot of people and I feel really strongly about that. And I think, you know, whatever we do today, we do, but I for one think we'd be defacing the community in a great way if, if, if that organization has to close its doors. And again, I, but I want to make it clear, there was no attempt to deceive the county or to switch, you know, bait and switch or something like that, you know, they knew they were going to run out of money, that wasn't the case at all. And if they're out of money and, and we can't find another way to address it in December, then I think it's a sad day, but it was not because they deceived this county. I want to be very clear about that. I want to thank Ann and Paul for their work because again, they've had to struggle with this and, and again, this has been something this board's talked about for many years. I guess lastly, I just would go to Splash, an organization that likewise, you all said it, has been a strong partner with this community. I think they provide something that's very unique. We have a treasure in this community with the mates of Vernal Pools, they were a partner with the county, county actually helped to establish Splash with the sanitation district and the city of Sacramento, I think was some of the funding early on. And so things have changed, maybe there's not a need for that particular element any longer, at least in the eyes of some. But I would say at a minimum that when they got teachers coming tomorrow, and that wasn't our doing, that are going to sign up for the classes, that bring those children and teachers out to the classroom that's out there in the field, they see Vernal Pools, they appreciate nature, but they also understand about water quality, about watersheds, what it means to be a good steward of the land and of our earth. I, I guess I would just hate to see us to, to, you know, basically say the rug slipped out and too bad, you're on your own and, you know, maybe we're going to build a, some more trash traps at our waterway entryways and that's going to be how we're going to spend the money. I think we have the money there, I think it's good stewardship of the money and if we need to look at a transition, and I would advocate very strongly that we consider, you know, Splash, if you have to go out to the RFP again, then we do that. I don't think anybody else does it like Splash and they have the support of cities, of school districts, not necessarily financially to the degree that they need. And for 114,000, I think it's a great value as well. So clearly, I feel pretty strongly about all three programs and think that within this budget framework, we certainly have the ability to set the money aside, I guess charge you with figuring out how we're going to, you know, move next on this, Mr. Gill, but that's my, my view on it. So Superintendent Frost?
I just, I want to say, I, I don't mean to, I want to give you some advice, South County and any other nonprofit organization. The county isn't an endless funding source, so, I mean, we, we all wish we could fund everyone, I know I do. But there's other ways to raise money, you can do GoFundMe, there's a big day of giving in the spring. I know people that have made tens of thousands of dollars with big day of giving. Your city council, Rotary, Lions, Kiwanis, partnering with other larger organizations to be an extension of them in your community. Chamber businesses, you could have a spaghetti feed, you could launch an, an ongoing campaign to raise money and when you do that, you, you raise, you raise your presence in the community, you let everyone know they're a part of you and it actually strengthens you and it also gives you an opportunity to learn about what the real needs in your community are and how you can change and shift because no business can stay the same and be successful, you have to change with the times. So I just wanted to say that, just to kind of get your minds thinking about that moving forward, whatever happens here, because that, those kind of things can strengthen you and help you survive any loss of any funding. So I just wanted to say that, thank you.
Superintendent Kennedy?
Yeah.
Hey, Brayden, please.
So I, I made my, my points on South County services pretty clear and again, it's nothing against us and county services, it's just more process than anything else. And I still was pretty strongly about that. On Splash is a little different, I'm a big fan of Splash, Emily, you know that. And, but I feel like we're, you know, in, in order to, to help an organization that we all like and that we know does good work in certain areas, that we're trying to thrust upon a department head a contract for services he says he doesn't need. That's just not our role as, as county government. I mean, do I want to continue a relationship with Splash on the road? Absolutely. Do I think they do great work and I hope we have opportunities to continue to work with them? Yes, but we're, we're creating work. And it's, it may make someone feel good, but it's just not good governance, not good public policy.
Okay.
Well, it sounds to me like if I had to pick one area where there's some common interest in perhaps doing what I suggested earlier, at least to identify some funding set aside, for lack of a better phrase, for St. John's, of the three challenges here, that might be the one that we try and tackle in the form of a motion first. I don't know if you want to, Mr. Chair, separate them?
That's, that's fine, we can take them individually.
Well, I mean...
Okay, so you're suggesting that we set aside...
Yeah, set aside the 700,000.
Well, define the 700,000 and Nav's saying 540.
I think 540 is what Superintendent Tolle you had mentioned.
It'd be three quarters, whatever three quarters they, their fund is through September 30 or so.
And I think to the, the statements made by our CEO about wanting to take some time to better understand exactly what it is they're asking for is wise because it seems like there's been some wires crossed here, at least in the last 24 hours with some communication from St. John's. So I think that's a fair exercise while we at least just kind of put in, put in escrow for the time being for final budget, this, this amount. But I, you know, I would move that we do that. I, I do think there's some merit in, if we're going to go down this path, figure out a, set a criteria for a service provider, realizing that it's clear from the guidance from county council that we really cannot say St. John's today, we have to say funding that may be used for a competitive bid process criteria has yet to be determined, that we make it clear that there's obviously an audit component to this. My understanding generally of St. John's is that there's been some reluctance to have DHA, have some immediate DHA assistance and perhaps even onsite oversight to some degree and maybe I'm confusing apples and oranges here in terms of different parts of their mission, but that, that's something that I've always kind of scratched my head about as to why there's a reluctance, if in fact there is. So there's a lot that I think needs to be, a lot of homework, I think, that, that staff needs to do. And then I'm not sure what the timeframe would, appropriate timeframe would be to come back to the board with an alternative in terms of, you know, putting out there the, the question of, do we want to establish a, a new competitive bid process with a set of criteria? of, do we want to establish a new competitive bid process with this set of criteria? But I'm going to guess that that could be done in a couple of weeks' time?
Yeah. I would just weigh in that, I would ask, because we're going to have, back before us next week, the item that relates to transitional housing, that we have an answer next week?
Want to do it at the same time?
Yeah, I think we ought to have an answer.
As long as we can have that, you know, all those questions asked and answered.
Of the endeavor to get those questions answered, we can give you a report. If we can't answer them in timeframe, what's the timeframe for us to get them done?
So I'm hearing a preference for the 12th.
Or 12th.
Of what?
Of just, of September.
To at least give you an idea what, Paul, is that? I want, I'm putting Paul out there. Let me make sure.
That would be extremely fast to bring people together to get those questions answered.
Okay, I'm hearing-
Well, they're in the audience, and so they're, I think they're probably understanding the sense of urgency here.
If I could just leave, and we bring the other RFP, I know these are two different things.
Yeah.
If I can just have the ability to report back on where we are, give you the status, and come back to you as many times as we need to answer those questions. So I think we'll start the process to get something to you on the 12th. If we can't flow 19th to the next meeting? 12, no, what's the next meeting after 12? 26? No later than 26.
Yeah, well, I think endeavor to get back here on the 12th, fast or not, is an important issue and clocks ticking.
They'd have to have the staff report in tomorrow.
Yeah. Well, yeah, and I'd like to add, if we go that way, you know, I'm going to be a broken record and again ask, I need to see where the money's coming from. Because the last time I checked, you know, all due respect to the chair, wanting, you know, that we'll just fund both, you know, there's not $540,000 sitting around in my sofa cushions.
So if that's the desire, we're waiting till the end, I mean, we will lower the contingency at this point. And that's where we'll take it out and not get into making programmatic cuts at this point.
So that's a declaratory statement at this point, right? That's a declaratory statement at this point by you?
Correct.
Okay. At least we go into this with that understanding.
Okay.
So that would-
Be your motion?
That's the motion.
Okay. I second the motion.
I'd like to hear staff comment on, what is it you're going to find out and report back to us on?
We want a very clear picture of what the county has been purchasing and what is it that if we move forward with $540,000, what is that we will be purchasing? Realizing that we cannot predetermine St. John's as the bidder on it, but some of the same questions we were asking about debt service, leverage, those kind of questions, and then access to the facilities, stuff that DHA needs. We just need to have a clear understanding, what is it this engagement will look like? So then we can come up with a scope of service that we can then do an RFP based on that.
Okay.
By no means implied or expressed in the motion is there, on my behalf, an assumption that this is in any way sole source. It can't be. I'm going into this with that legal opinion clear in my mind.
So another organization could potentially come in and answer the RFP and win it?
Yeah, depending on how the criteria ultimately would be set, assuming there's satisfaction by executive staff and us at the report back that we would, I mean, that's one fork in the road. The next fork of the road is you go implement a competitive bid process.
And if you could, because again, we're going to have this matter properly before us next week, I'd like to see in writing, again, you've been kicking it around, but as to why, and again, maybe spend some time talking about how this board, when it's had similar matters before and they've chosen to supplement, and maybe it's never been as exact circumstance where we said, one, we decided we wanted to fund another one and we had two qualified proposers that we couldn't make that choice. Because I guess that needs to be, a question needs to be answered. I've heard it answered, but I guess I want to, you know, have folks take a look at, you know, the way we approached that in the past and, you know, maybe it's crystal clear to some folks in this room, but it's certainly not crystal clear to me, having been on this board for some time. So that'll be part of the report back. So the motion is to appropriate-
To do what?
To appropriate $540,000.
To set aside?
Set aside.
Yeah. And then with the understanding, I want all of us to nod yes at the same time, that it's, if we decide to do this, whoever the successful-
Bitter.
-agency that would come in to satisfy the criteria of a competitive process, that's coming from contingency.
Okay. Okay, I'm moving, moving seconded. Anything further? Okay, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, and clear. Please.
I don't think it- You need to vote again?
Yeah, sorry about that.
Then I would move to the next item, and that is, is that I do believe that the level of service in the South County would dictate to an amount that would, I guess, about $280,000 to $300,000. And I heard my colleagues that, you know, they're concerned about that, but maybe have to go through the same process. But I guess I'd like to set that money aside and then have you figure that out and get back to us with the same information, that if we can't extend under the current situation and we know we've got a bit of time, that if we need to go out to some RFI to approach that. But I do believe that what it takes to provide that service has clearly been $300,000 plus or minus annually for the last 15 or 20 years. So whatever amount we had appropriated to contract, I'd like to supplement it so that it would, basically we rope off the additional, is it $140,000?
I think I heard $130,000, but what did you have?
They're funding for $160,000, are they not? I don't know, the number's been floating around here.
$130,000 is what we understood.
$130,000?
Additional.
Okay, all right. And my motion would be that we set that aside, you can come back to us with a report as, because if it can't be done with South County, we go out to our RFI and, do you think, tailor, if I understood correctly, council, that we could, you know, tailor the service in a way that it would be at least understood by this body and would, you know, be clear what we want to purchase with those dollars, right? Okay. Okay, Mr. Kennedy?
Just clarification, is, are you, RFI, RFP, RFQ? You've said RFI, is that what you're, because in the past, we've done RFP, I believe.
Yeah, RFI is what I would said, request for interest. RFA, RFQ, I think so is in the whole, you know. I thought there was a distinction without a difference, but there is a difference, I think, so. And if you have RFI, it's okay, it's a simpler process, as I understand, is that?
I don't know that that gets you where you want to go.
Right.
So what, I was going to say RFQ?
Yeah.
RFP.
See, he does it.
RFP. RFP. RFP is what we've done in the past in this type of contract.
If I could just offer, let's do RFP because we get into Q and the I, there's different-
Don't forget the A.
Not a middle room.
Right.
All right, I'll second the motion.
So started, say it again. You're going to send an RFP, you want an RFP for the services, and then anyone can respond? Is that what you're saying?
I wanted to rope the money off. I did, I wasn't set on the RFP, RFQ. I would ask you to come back and tell us what's the most appropriate method.
I can tell you, it's RFP. That's what we will do at this point.
That's what we did before.
That's what we did.
No, it was RFA before.
Yeah, but I understand that, but I mean, lesson learned, it would be RFP.
Is it contingency funds?
Yeah, absolutely. Whatever we're discussing here went into the contingency.
Everything here, yeah. For the balance of the contracted year, so from January 1st to June 30th.
Right. And that would give you the entirety of the funding source, then it would be available for, then we would know what it costs to provide the service for a year.
And part of the report back then will be, is that we'll gap from January to June, but next spring then, whatever the new dollar amount is, we need to do another RFP to make sure that we're-
Understood.
That we have that done for the next fiscal year or a couple fiscal years.
Why don't you just annualize the amount? Why don't you do one RFP and do an annualized amount, if you know that's what it's going to take? It's going to take $300,000, that's what it takes.
Well, we don't have 300.
We've spent, we already got $160,000 on the table, we're putting $130,000.
$160,000 is going to be gone by January 1.
Right. And then $130,000 to finish it out.
$130,000 to finish it. So whoever the successor is going to be, that's what we need to decide when we come back to you, is this a, get them till June 30th? Is this a one-year, two-year contract? What is it that we're doing with this? Because part of the issue that we're going to run into Supervisor Nattoli is, I think, is that the department determined the needs assessment was 140,000. And that's part of the conversation we've got to go back and have with them. So what is the real amount, realizing that the past has told us 300, that's what South County had. So that's part of the report back is what's the need assessment on it? And then if we do an RFP, what does the RFP look like?
You've got me puzzled.
Okay, let me start over. So we're going to be out of money come December 1 if we stay with this contractor.
January 1.
January 1.
Whenever.
We have to do, if we separate the money, we got to do something to get us to the end of the fiscal year. So part of what we're evaluating is that, is this RFP just from January to June? Or is this multi-year RFP that we're going to do?
Okay.
That's what we're going to come back and report to you. I'm not predetermining, it's only six months.
Okay.
Okay, so you want to come back on the same date as the previous?
Yes.
26.
Okay. 26?
26, we're back at 26.
Yep.
Okay. And so the amount is 130 to supplement to 160, so it's 290 total in a calendar year for this fiscal year.
Fiscal, fiscal year.
For this fiscal year. It's going to be there for this fiscal year.
But you're going to come, but you have already evaluated that you didn't anticipate it should require that much funding. So you're going to come back and recommend for next year what next year should be, and we're just going to look at seeing how we can take care of the rest of this year.
That's part of what we're going to evaluate.
Declare to the board.
Yeah, we need the votes.
Please vote. So let me ask for purposes of discussion here that, I don't know that I concur with Supervisor Kennedy about telling somebody that they don't need, forcing them to have something they don't need. I think that they're still evaluating what they're going to do and the permit, Michael, if you could come forward, I want to get something answered, I don't want to state this directly. We didn't get the new permit conditions until very recent, so it wasn't like we knew what that was going to contain. We had an idea, but that permit was given to us when?
It came to us within the past year, and we had an idea what it was going to include and what it wasn't going to include. So we knew that the, on the outreach education aspect, that it was, is not going to be as specific and stringent. We knew where the new permit was focusing, and that was in areas such as trash elimination.
Okay, but we've been sorting this out, again, and certainly appreciated in the spirit of cooperation that you and folks that work underneath you, I mean, there've been discussions over the summer about whether or not we could get into a contract. We hadn't drawn the bright line that said, "No, we really don't need those services at all." We were looking at how we might incorporate, at least for this year, incorporate some aspects of creeks and stream, you know, stewardship into that, recognizing that long-term, you might be going in a different direction.
We have been discussing that, but I will say that at a staff level early on, we did understand that to meet our obligation under the new permit, our splash for the class addresses it.
Right, okay.
Separate program.
It's a separate program, it's not field-based, it's in the classroom, it's-
Right. Well, and I guess I would say that if Water Resources has either discomfort and/or they fill the nexus, well, the demand that we have to do it is gone. I don't know if the nexus is gone, I wouldn't even argue that. But that if we have an asset out there and we're trying to grow appreciation for it, we're going to invest millions of dollars in restoration and in preservation of the Vernal Pool Preserve. We've got an organization that's been working to establish a science center that hopefully will be internationally renowned someday, and that was, and that's assisted us with some of the things that we want to achieve out at Mather. It would seem to me that we want to work with that partner over the long term to make sure that we, you know, one, grow the awareness and appreciation for that asset, but also that hopefully some of the folks that would go through that program, and it's not solely our responsibility, but that some of the folks who go through that program would be, you know, the future scientists and the, you know, the mentors and the stewards, the teachers in this community. And we have some of those, I know that Emily's documented that. I guess I just, I see us, you know, basically kind of taking the carpet out because now we aren't required to do this, and I'm not putting this off on Michael, but that, I guess I would put it in the category of some of the things that we want to do, we think we should do, and it makes good sense. That asset is ours to preserve and maintain. It's not just about putting a fence around it and saying, "Well, there's the Vernal Pools." It's about building some appreciation. So I'm going to argue that we ought to find $118,000, $114,000, bridge it for this year and let's come back and take a look at this over the course of next year. Emily's offered to do that with her curriculum, and I think certainly maybe Michael's department being a key part of that, but I think that this county ought to find wherewithal to do this. And so I'm going to move that we, you know, do that. And if you want to, Nav figured out with Michael as an apportionment of that or whatever, but I'm going to move that we support this educational program for, you know, if you need to go out to, you know, RFP, then, you know, but I think part of the problem we have here is we had an existing contract, we've got teachers showing up tomorrow. I think that presents a real problem. So I guess I'd ask, is there a creative way to address this under the umbrella of things that we do, having had a contract and we've been in discussions with them? Could you extend those services over a period of time, bridge them for?
It would be similar to the prior contract. That's all I can suggest.
Okay. Well, that's what I'm asking you, so that's helpful.
When you enter a contract, it has a beginning and an end, so this would be no different.
Okay, Robin, let me ask you, because this has been bothering you often. Is there no way under a contract that two parties can extend a contract, that a public agency can extend a contract with a private contractor if the money's there, the desire's there, and you do it in a public process? Or when the end date is the end date and it's all over with, game over? Because I've seen contract extensions, I see in some of the bodies I sit on, we go 14, 15 times contract extensions.
Well-
You know, I would use, the sanitation district's a good example.
Contracts have those terms. Contracts have those terms that allow for amendments, extensions.
Right, that's my question, yeah.
Certainly, you can build in those terms. Or by ongoing provision of services, you can have behavior extend until a recommitment. That's not my understanding of what took place here.
I think the contract's expired. I think that's the issue here. Contract's expired.
It's a dead contract.
Dead contract.
So we would have to enter into a new contract.
Right.
And that's the issue at hand, getting into the new contract, this previous conversation we just had.
Okay, I'm going to go back over ground with just cover. So then why, when we have a contract with St. John's or South County, you couldn't extend or redo the terms? St. John's, for example, why couldn't you extend that contract? Why do we have to, I mean, knowing that you may have to go out to RFP, ultimately, I get that. But again, I'm not a lawyer like Mr. Kennedy or you, but I'm just going to say that, okay, say you're under contract, why can't you then, if there's willing parties, as long as no prohibition against extending that?
Both parties have to change their position. If a contract, if money has ended, the ability to perform the services has exceeded the funds allowed, to grant more money, you have to increase services.
Well, yeah, you buy it for another year. That's what I'm saying, so you increase services, so you buy, that's why I say extend it, you buy more services.
But we're rebuying.
Huh?
You already bought it for a year.
We already bought it. It's bought and paid for by the end of December.
They're saying they can't deliver.
They're saying they can't deliver those services.
Okay, no.
So that's the decision for the board. So that's the decision for the board.
I'm asking about, I said St. John's, with St. John's, okay, I got it with South County. So with St. John's, why couldn't we just extend with them?
I think the analysis of staff had been that there were other providers that were providing, Paul, I'm turning to you, for the decision and recommendation of staff.
The issue with that one is that there's an RFP that was done, it's not that we cut their funding, that's not what happened here. There was a decision that we did an RFP, and I understand that it is where we are, and the RFP process, they're not getting the new contract, that's what the recommendation is. They're approaching the county now saying, yeah, we get it that we're not going to get that, but you still got to continue contracting with us. That's the issue at hand.
And the issue, frankly, the issue of a formal appeal versus personal plea, and whether there's a majority of board members who want to put this into a process that meets legal muster.
Okay, so then I want to ask one other question, and I'm going to go back to you, Splash. We never had an opportunity to even revisit this then. I mean, basically, contract expired, there've been discussions with staff and the provider of service throughout the summer, good faith, but there's a time sequence to that relative to teachers and to enrollment and such, and, but we never had an item before, it's in June, that said we're going to reconsider this or the contract. It's basically, it's been this discussion, there's been a different direction, new permit conditions, so now, when do we consider this?
Well, if I could say to that, which is similar to the social services department this morning, staff in the last budget year were given a budget and parameters and direction, and they, this board in its direction empowered the CEO to supervise department heads to maintain their performance within the budgetary constraint of the last budget year. And that's when those decisions were made in their experience and expertise through fiscal analysis and performance analysis and the department head's discretion and recommendation by the executive staff. That's when those decisions were made. I don't believe that the governance is performed on a task-by-task basis at the department level every time a contract expires.
Well, if I recall, that in the contract that was approved a year ago, in the...
An end date.
Huh? With an end date, but it said, there may be revisiting of it, it didn't say that we weren't going to bring you a contract any longer. That wasn't what was said, that wasn't a board action, and there's been discussion over the years for, you know, we're going to use a program that's in question right here, with Splash, where we've provided that support. We were never given the opportunity in the context of deciding in the governance whether we wanted to continue that or not. It didn't come to us in May or June or in the budget, it basically expired and went away.
So when we entered the contract, I'm looking at Michael to help me, I didn't, I'm not intimate with the contract, but it has an end date to it. That's what we brought to you last June, said this is the budget that we're doing, here's the contract behind it. So the contract's expired for the last couple of months.
I know, I'm aware of that.
So, go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, the contract did have an expiration date. The staff report did reference that we would be looking at the possible reprioritization of our needs, and that's what we did, but that wasn't carried out in the context of bringing that contract back to the board prior to its termination, so...
So, and the point is, is that we've ended the support for the element, the outdoor classroom for Splash. Now, that may be a very prudent decision or not, but we never really had a chance to discuss that. I guess that's where this whole thing about policy getting ahead of it, because again, I for one wanted to have that conversation, we're having it right now, this very moment, but you know, now we're out of contract, it requires doing this and that, then, and I don't want to review every contract that is entered into by departments in this county, I respect your authority, Mr. Gill, and yours, Mr. Peterson, everybody else in this organization. But I'm telling you, this really feels a lot different than any other budget cycle I've been in, in my 23 years on this board, I'm just going to tell you that, very frankly. That whether we vote something up or down, is whether something I support or not, I want the opportunity to have that discussion before this board with my peers. You know, whatever our decision is, I respect that, and I also know that during budget, that when it comes to matters of fiscal importance, three of us can act on it where any other timeout context is going to require four of us, and that's fine, that's the way the rules are written. And so now, basically, you know, teachers are going to show up tomorrow, they're out of contract, I don't know what Emily's going to tell folks, and again, that's not my problem, but I feel badly for the students and for the teachers and anybody else who at least was under the premise that we were going to continue this. May have been a false assumption, but this feels a whole lot different than any other budget session I've sat in in all my years on the Board of Supervisors, and I'm just going to say that, it doesn't count for anything, but it counts for enough to say that I'm a bit amazed that we don't have, within the realm of what we're talking about here today, and now we're to have that conversation, and you know, we've got all these, we're going to go in and have a lot more process, and we're going to spend a lot more money, and things that we've done in budget, I believe, at least in the past, and again, whether there's differences or not amongst this board, that is lesser concern to me than, because I guess what I need to be on is an alert, then when somebody comes to me in the springtime and said, you know, something's going to, with a contract that, well, we're not going to continue to work at this level, we're going to get on the board agenda for the conversation. Because if that's the trap we get into, that this is it, that's what the contract says, you're done.
Supervisor Natale, I think in my 10 years here, this is different, I'll give you that, but this is the first time we've gotten into contract-level discussions, because previously, when contracts issues will come up, they will come up through the department, there will be some resolution, there would have been a process, something would have been done, and it was complete. This year, the three items that are here didn't really come up to us in the context to resolve them.
I talked to you with South County in the spring.
But, hold on a second, let me finish my thought. South County, we did an RFP, we made a recommendation, we executed a contract on what the good faith was that we thought. It's an augmentation, we don't have the authority to augment any of it. This is the place to talk about it. Splash, I don't know, whatever process that they go through signing teachers, contract expired in June. But for the conversation, I'm looking at Michael, there's now been a whole lot of conversations about it. If there was a desire not to have the contract extended, it never came up to us. In the past, it would have come up to us.
Who's "us"?
In the executive staff, or even to Michael.
Well, Michael, and Michael Penrose knew too, I mean, Michael Penrose briefed me on this.
Then it's a communication problem on our side. What I'm getting at is, all these items that you have here, they all became somehow, there was no appropriation for us. Department heads were out of money. Michael had no appropriation. That's why we're sitting here, because somehow this communication's gotten sideways, is that it became political. St. John's became political. Rather than coming, there's an RFP process, didn't do whatever needs to be done, and now the ask is, I know I'm not going to get that money, I need additional money to continue the program. That's what's being asked, that's why this is so different. We didn't believe, and talking to county council, that we had that kind of authority to look at somebody and say, we can fund you for X, Y, Z. We don't have that authority. Then even if we were to fund it, we don't have the authority to let out an RFP at this point. That's why this is different. Previous years, a couple of other contracts, by the time it came to you, we already worked that out, and how we worked that out, there would have been a process. That's the difference. We got, we ran out of money, we didn't have the budgetary authority, then we got into the procurement issue that county council's brought up, is that we didn't have the authority to do the procurement. So this actually starts the process of fixing this. I understand the teachers are there, I know that risk, but I do believe this is a positive thing, that we actually have a process set up in motion, and if there are contracts that are expiring, and we can set up a different process on that, we can come back to you. There's no reluctance on our part to do that.
So, when it comes to, if we want to do an educational program...
You tell us that. I mean, if you want an educational in the South and Mather, you tell us that, and I think Michael's indicated that there is some funding, and we can do a process to avoid that and problem solved.
We just treat it as new, right?
Correct, yeah, it's a new contract.
Yeah. If I might add, I think there's a question on the table regarding Splash in regards to, the county isn't the only funder for Splash programs. There are other, there are private sector, as I understand it, and other jurisdictions within the county that provide funding to Splash, and this conversation is focused as if the county was the exclusive funder for Splash programs. There are other sources of funds there, so when it comes to the continuation of programs, while whatever process is playing out, I think there's a broader question perhaps directed at Splash in terms of funding beyond the county to support ongoing activities. Just wanted to add that to the discussion.
And I think that they've been doing some of the outreach, Rob, I think you're aware of that, Michael is, that they've reached out to some of the school districts and so forth to broaden their funding stream, but I think, you know, the piece where we actually have the physical locale and part that goes to the transport of the kids to get them actually to that, you know, classroom, because a lot of the school districts, whether that's the choice they make or not, I don't think that they don't fund that, and so they have to arrange this part of that, I think, assist, both in the curriculum and the classroom, but also what goes on in that field experience for young people. I mean, and again, we don't, we're not the only ones, but the classroom piece of it, granted, there are other funders, but that's a 90-minute, you know, presentation in the class. And so, again, I just think that the Vernal Pools and Hightown Night is important enough, and I would say that I think we should tailor a program, and I'm prepared to move that we set aside the $115,000, and, you know, you can come back to us next week with the rest of the stuff and tell us how you're going to go about figuring that out.
I don't even think I need to come back on that. I mean, if that's what the board wants to do, it's an RFP at this point, we'll issue an RFP. The only reason the other two are, because there's questions about, the first one, St. John's, there's questions about what facts we have, I think we need to have that clearing of the air out, and the same thing goes for South County. Need assessment said 140, they're running it at 300. That's a discrepancy there, we need to answer that back to you. This one, I'm not hearing anybody say it's not 114. I respect what Michael said, that from their vantage point, permit doesn't require it, it's going to become a school function next school year, so how far do we go into this? This could be a one-year contract.
Could be.
And that's it. But again, the understanding again, Supervisor Natale, is we had an end date to this contract. This wasn't like we didn't put an end date, there was a beginning and an end to it.
Right, no.
Again, when this contract comes up, again, there's going to be a beginning and an end to it.
Sure, there will be, exactly, there's no arguing that, but my point being is that then if we were going to have a conversation about what might come next, that, you know, both in the realm of the stormwater permit and program, and maybe there's going to be a workshop before this board, but also as it relates to, you know, what happens out at the Vernal Pools, then we should have been able to have had that, you know, either coincidental with the contract expiration or in advance of that. That's what I'm saying, and I'm not talking about every contract in every department, but there are certain aspects of what we do publicly in engaging young people, people of different ages, people who are in need, that I think that we ought to have that ability. And so that, maybe that's part of what you're going to parse out over the course of, you know, and we didn't have a lot of appeals here today, but this is one, I think that, you know, requires our attention and probably should have been here for that conversation, but now it is, it's properly...
And it is, and again, I'm going to make one point, and I'll be quiet about it. The contract bears some responsibility too.
Sure do.
I mean, if you know your contract's going out on June 30th, this shouldn't be a September 6th or September 7th conversation. I'm just putting it through my prism. If I was running that organization, I'd have been in Michael's office beating down the door, maybe she did it. I've been down there in February, and then our system then should have picked it up, and we should have had a conversation about it.
And there's been a lot of conversations.
And I'm not saying that it did or did not happen, but I just wanted to make that clear, that this is not just the county didn't do something. We honored our contract, we made the payments timely, we did everything we were supposed to do.
All that's accurate, but there were people that made it into, yeah.
I'm prepared to second, but I want to, I want to restate. Well, I think, I thought...
Yeah, I, you know, move that we allocate $115,000 for an educational program, and you can come back with this, the particular funding sources, I think some stormwater utility should go into it, but you can make that determination, and that if you need to go out to an RFP, then I'd give you that direction, and then go with it. That's the motion, so.
I want to hear from Supervisor Kennedy, I think he's pumped up.
Yeah, I just, I'm not going to support the motion, and it's not a thing that I'm doing easily, but because I believe that we're looking for a place to spend money rather than waiting for a proposal to come before us that we deem as necessary and responsible and helpful. Because we have a good relationship with an organization in the past, I don't find that justifies doing this from the dais. I think that this is the type of decision that should culminate from a supervisor to staff or staff to the board, but we're doing this from an organization coming to us where there's no identified need. Good to have, yes. Need to have, no, and we are kind of circumventing process in order to help someone, an organization that we think is a good organization, and that to me just is not good governance.
Okay, Ms. Ross.
I'm going to concur. I think Splash is a great organization, but we have to have, we have to substantiate a need for every dollar that we spend, and I can't support this for the same reasons. Sorry.
Okay.
I'll second the motion, and the only statement I'll make is that in my six and a half years on the board, I've become pretty intimately familiar with the good work that Splash does. Do we need them? In my opinion, I think we do. I think they serve a very valuable purpose here in the community, both from the perspective of being good stewards of the land, but being good stewards of young minds too, to help groom them, to appreciate the fact that we do have dwindling resources, namely in the form of our wetland complexes in that part of the county, and they go over and above in my estimation, so I'm prepared to support the motion.
Okay. All right, nothing further, please vote.
It's a tie vote, so the motion...
Fails.
Fails, sorry.
Okay. All right, those were the pending requests that were outstanding, and I guess that brings back to budget wrap. Mr. Ferguson, you've stayed out of the crossfire pretty well since earlier this morning, so... Do we have budget resolutions?
So, Mr. Chair, there's no actual resolutions at this point. The resolutions will come back to the board at the end of September for formal adoption. At this point, we're requesting that the board approve the attached budget schedules, which are part of the budget document, the state schedules, which would amend the 2017-18 approved budget as revised by the board, including supplemental adjustments that were proposed by the county executive. Direct the Department of Personnel Services to prepare an administrative salary resolution amendment to reflect the positions approved by the 2017-18 adopted budget, including any deletion of positions. Direct the Department of Finance to prepare the 2017-18 budget resolutions for board consideration on Tuesday, September 26, 2017. And then approve the list of project, CIP project changes that are attached to the agenda item in your budget, in your budget packet that reflect mostly things like incumbents' carryforwards and other adjustments.
So, if I could?
Yeah, sure.
So with the only adjustment to that, knowing that that would be what's referenced in a motion, would be the Mather...
Right.
Correct.
Schedule of the Mather workshop, or whatever.
That's incorporated?
Coming back on that.
That's in it?
That's in it.
Okay, yeah.
And then this also does take care of the two items for St. John's and South County by reference, we'll come back to you no later than '26 on what process we'll follow. And it reduces the contingency, at the same time, we'll up DHA's budget for that, reduce contingency.
Right. What was just read into the record by our executive staff is my motion, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, Phil, I have to make the motion, I think, to, in order to drop out the Mather stuff.
I think it's just a scheduling issue, isn't it?
No, this actually gets...
She's other items, CIP, so...
He's got...
I've got CIP and budget.
Oh, right, okay. Do you want to take that first, and then we'll...
Yeah, what he said, move to adopt the recommended amended fiscal 17-18 approved budget and schedules except for the following items on the screen. Need a second for that.
Second.
Okay, it's moving seconded, to approve the budget schedules with the exclusions of those that showed on the screen, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
No, then I'm going to abstain on the next motion for the balance of the items.
So I moved the balance of all the items.
Okay, moving seconded, for the balance of the items, please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Peters recusing, abstaining.
Okay. Is that in on the budget?
That's it.
So you don't want to do number two, three, and four?
So you don't want to do number two, three, and four?
CIP. Then...
That was part of the recommendation. Do you want to take separate actions? I see you're doing them all at once.
Yeah, on the CIP, I have to have separate actions. So I guess by my previous motion, it included two and three.
Correct.
And then on item four, the capital improvement plan, I'd like to move approval and note the exceptions on the screen from the capital improvement budget.
Second.
Okay. Moving seconded to approve the CIP with the noted exclusions as projected on the screen. Please vote.
And then I'll be abstaining on the second motion.
I'll move the balance.
Unanimous.
Okay, so the balance of CIP, those that were on the screen, is now in the motion. Please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Peters abstaining.
Supervisor Nattoli, members of the board, I just wanted to take this moment very quickly to thank the board members. All of the budgets prepared, and I think I agree with Supervisor Serna. This was the toughest summer we've had, but I think we're in a much better spot. We got a lot of stuff funded that we need to start implementing, and I'm looking forward to working with you and with our staff to get that implemented. And I can't thank you guys enough. Thank our executive staff, department heads, and everybody that participated on this. That's a job well done.
Thank you to all the staff.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Supervisor comments? I do have an adjournment, and I don't know, Mr. Executive, anything else you, for the record?
I've done enough.
Said enough.
Hey, Supervisor comments? All right. With that, again, expressing thanks to all who worked on the budget. Want to today adjourn in honor of Deputy Robert French, Sacramento Sheriff's Deputy, who was some 20 years with the Sacramento Sheriff's Department. Last week this time, obviously, was involved in a very serious incident in which he lost his life. There were other officers from the California Highway Patrol that were wounded. Quite a chase that ensued, but the, obviously, suspect was apprehended and subsequently passed away as well. But today, we certainly focus our thoughts and our prayers on the fact that we lost a deputy who, again, who had sworn his, I take his oath of office and sworn his allegiance to serving the public in a way that put his life on the line every day. And unfortunately, he perished, and I know this community certainly grieves along with his family, his children, and other significant members of his family. And so with that, would note that today, we're going to adjourn in memory of Deputy Robert French. The services are tomorrow, and I know that a number of us will be attending those services